Agenda City Council Regular Meeting Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers. First Floor 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630. February 11th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Welcome to your city council meeting. We welcome your interest and involvement in the city's legislative process. This agenda includes information about topics coming before the city council and the action recommended by city staff. You can read about each topic in the staff reports, which are available on the city website and in the office of the city clerk. The city clerk is also available to answer any questions you have about city council meeting procedures. Participation if you would like to provide comments to the city council, please fill out a blue speaker request form located at the back table. Submit the form to the city clerk before the item begins. When it's your turn, the city clerk will call your name and invite you to the podium. Speakers generally have three minutes unless the presiding officer, usually the mayor, changes that time. Reasonable accommodations in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. If you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at 916-461-6035, 916-355-7328, fax, or City Clerk Department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. How to Watch the City of Folsom provides three ways to watch a city council meeting. In person, online, on TV. City council meetings take place at City Hall, 50 Natoma Street. Watch the live stream and replay past meetings on the city website, Watch live and replays of meetings on SAC Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. More information about city council meetings is available at the end of this agenda. One Page 1. City Council Regular Meeting Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers. First Floor 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630. Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Mike Koslowski, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino, Mayor Barbara Leary, Councilmember Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Agenda Call to Order Roll Call. Councilmembers: Rathal, Rohrbau, Koslowski, Leary, Aquino. The city council has adopted a policy that no new item will begin after 10:30 PM. Therefore, if you are here for an item that has not been heard by 10:30 PM, you may leave, as the item will be continued to a future council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance Agenda Update Business from the Floor. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Folsom City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are generally limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Consent Calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. One Approval of January 14th, 2025 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes 2. Approval of January 23rd, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes 3. Approval of January 28th, 2025 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes 2. Page 24. Resolution Number 11,326. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract Amendment with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point/US 50 On-Ramp Improvement Project. Project No. PW2203, An Appropriation of Funds New Business. Five Resolution Number 11,327. A Resolution Adopting the 2024 Local Road Safety Plan. City Manager Reports Council Comments Adjournment Notice. Members of the public are entitled to directly address the city council concerning any item that is described in the notice of this meeting, before or during consideration of that item. If you wish to address council on an issue, which is on this agenda, please complete a Blue Speaker Request Card and deliver it to a staff member at the table on the left side of the council chambers prior to discussion of the item. When your name is called, stand to be recognized by the mayor and then proceed to the podium. If you wish to address the city council on any other item of interest to the public, when the mayor asks if there is any business from the floor, follow the same procedure described above. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Notice Regarding Challenges to Decisions Pursuant to All Applicable Laws and Regulations, Including Without Limitation, California Government Code Section 65,009 and/or California Public Resources Code Section 21,177. If you wish to challenge in court any of the above decisions regarding planning, zoning and/ or environmental decisions, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, s, described in this notice/agenda, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at, or prior to, the public hearing. As Presiding Officer, the mayor has the authority to preserve order at all city council meetings, to remove or cause the removal of any person from any such meeting for disorderly conduct, or for making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, using profanity, or becoming boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing said council, and to enforce the rules of the council. Persons interested in proposing an item for the city council agenda should contact a member of the city council. This meeting of the city council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV/U-verse Cable System, and will be shown in its entirety on the Friday and Saturday following the meeting, both at 9:00 AM. The recording will also be video streamed at Metro 14 Live dot SAC C C O N T dot government. The city does not control scheduling of this telecast and persons interested in watching the televised meeting should confirm this schedule with Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. The City of Folsom provides live and archived webcasts of regular city council meetings. The webcasts can be found on the online services page of the city's website, In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at 916-461-6035, 916-355-7328, fax, or City Clerk Department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. Any documents produced by the city and distributed to the city council regarding any item on this agenda will be made available at the city clerk's counter at City Hall located at 50 Natoma Street, Folsom, 3 Page 3 California and at the Folsom Public Library located at 411 Stafford Street, Folsom, California during normal business hours. 4 Page 4 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025 GD Council Special Meeting Minutes Tuesday. January 14, 2025 5:45 PM. Call to Order. The special city council meeting was called to order at 5:45 PM with Mayor Aquino Presiding Role Call. Councilmembers present: Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent: Michael Koslowski, Councilmember, arrived at 5:46 PM, Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember, arrived at 5:46 PM. Adjournment to Closed Session for the Following Purposes: One Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54,957.6. Agency Negotiator: Vance Pigott. Employee Organization: Folsom Police Officers Association. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, second by Councilmember Leary to adjourn to Closed Session. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino Knows. None Absent, None Obstain. None Regenveen City Attorney Stephen Wong announced that no final action was taken during Closed Session adjournment there being no further business to come before the city council. The meeting was adjourned at 6:35 PM. Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 5 Poach 7 Attest Sarah Aquino. Mayor February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025 Submitted by Krista Fremantle. City Clerk Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 6 Page 2 File 03042/1211/22052-50I TE1M Number 1. Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025 GD Council Regular Meeting Minutes Tuesday. January 14, 2025 6:30 PM. Call to Order. The regular city council meeting was called to order at 6:36 PM with Mayor Sarah Aquino Presiding Role Call. Councilmembers present: Michael Koslowski, Councilmember Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent: None Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance was recited. Agenda Update. City Attorney Stephen Wong advised that there was additional information for items 16 and 17. Business from the Floor. The following speakers addressed the city council: One Larry Lad 2. Branda and Dan McNeil Consent Calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. One Approval of December 9, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes 2. Approval of December 10th, 2024 12:00 PM City Council Special Meeting Minutes Draft Not Official L I Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 7 Page 7 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January L 4, 2025 3. Approval of December 10th, 2024 Special, Regular, and Joint Meeting Minutes 4. Approval of December 16th, 2Q24 Special Meeting Minutes 5. Resolution Number 11312. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Amend I H E 2024 Contract Between the City of Folsom and the Sacramento Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals (SPCA) for Shelter Services 6. Resolution Number 11,313. A Resolution Authorizing Submission of Folsom Transportation Development Act Claim for Pedestrian and Bicycle Facilities Fiscal Year 2024 to 25 to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments 7. Resolution Number 11,314. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Amendment to the Agreement with William Scotsman (LNC). For the Lease of the Modular Building Occupied by the Waste and Recycling Division B. Resolution Number 11,315. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Construction Agreement with Precision Empires LLC. DBA Precision Concrete Cutting for the District 4 Sidewalk Offset Repair Project G. Resolution Number 11,316. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Schaefer Plastics North America (LLC). For the Purchase of Residential Solid Waste Containers 10. Resolution Number 11,317. A Resolution Approving a License Agreement Between the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor Joint Powers Authority and the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad (LNC). For Excursion Rail Operations 11. Pulled for Discussion Motion by Councilmember Rohrbau, second by Vice Mayor Rathal, to approve items No. Minus 10 of the Consent Calendar. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino Knows. None Absent, None Obstain. None Consent Calon D A R Items Pulled Discussion: 11. Resolution No. 11321. A Resolution Litiating Proceedings for the Formation of a Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District to be known as the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District. No. 2025 to One. Councilmember Leary stated that she would be recusing herself from this item since she lives within the subject district. Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 8 Poach 2 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January L 4, 2025. Loraine Poggian requested this item be pulled to speak in support of the resolution. Motion by Councilmember Rohrbau, second by Councilmember Koslowskito Approve Resolution Number 11,321. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino Knows. None Absent, Leary, Acusital Obstain. None Public Hearing. 12. Alder Creek West Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map Project. Vicinity of White Rock Road and Oak Avenue Parkway in the Folsom Plan area. Subm 24-00233. I Resolution Number 11,318. A Resolution Determining that the Alder Creek West Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map Project is exempt from CEQA and approving said large lot tentative subdivision map community development principal planner Jessica Brandt made a presentation and responded to questions I Rom the City Council. Community Development Director Pam Johns provided additional information. The public hearing was opened at 6:56 PM. The following speaker addressed the city council under this item Patty Solzby. The public hearing was closed at 6:57 PM. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, second by Councilmember Leary, to approve Resolution Number 11,318. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino Knows. None Absent, None Obstain, None New Business. 13. Resolution No. 11320. A Resolution of the City Council Appointing Brian Witteimer as City Manager and Approving an Employment Agreement for Said Appointment. City Attorney Stephen Wong made a presentation to the city council. Motion by Councilmember Leary, second by Councilmember Koslowskito Approve Resolution Number 11,320. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino. Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 9 Page 3 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025. Knows, Absent, Obstain, None None None. 14. Resolution No. 11319. A Resolution Receiving Report from the Community Development Department on the Approval of a Parcel Map Waiver for the Sanderro Residential Condominium Project. Community Development Principal Planner Jessica Brandt made a presentation and responded to questions from the city council. Motion by Councilmember Leary, second by Councilmember Rohrbau to approve Resolution Number 11,319. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino. Knows, None Absent, None Obstain, None. 15. At Large Appointments to the Arts and Culture Commission, Historic District Commission, Landscaping and Lighting District Advisory Committee, Library Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Traffic Safety Committee, and Utility Commission. Mayor Aquino thanked all the applicants for applying the following. Speakers addressed the city council under this item 1. Mark Menz City Clerk Krista Fremantle made a presentation explaining the open ballot process for making commission appointments and distributed ballots to each council member. Planning Commission, Two At Large Seats. Councilmember Leary voted for Justin Hurst and Tonya Morales. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Jim Ortega and Rachel Williams. Mayor Aquino voted for Justin Hurst and Jim Ortega. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Tonya Morales and Anthony Nicolai. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Justin Hurst and Tonya Morales. Justin Hurst and Tonya Morales were appointed to the Planning Commission. Bill Barcelona Leary Direct Appointment Diana Laney Rathal Direct Appointment. Parks and Recreation Commission, Two At Large Seats. Councilmember Leary voted for H L A L K Tib and Elena Wagner. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Jim Ortega and Elena Wagner. Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 10 Page 4 File 03042/1211/22052-50E1M Number 1. Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Aaron Silva and Elena Wagner. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Joanne Brous and Kevin Goddard. Mayor Aquino voted for Jeff Kernan and Elena Wagner. Vice Mayor Rathal, Mayor Aquino, and Councilmember Koslowski switched their vote to Jim Ortega. James Ortega and Elena Wagner were appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Dean Williams Leary Direct Appointment Sandy Econome Rathal Direct Appointment. AFS and Culture Commission, Two At Large Seats. Councilmember Leary voted for Julian Sarafian and Lucinda Windward. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Mark Alaman and Lucinda Windward. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Mark Alaman and Robert Sumner. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Robert Sumner and Lucinda Windward. Mayor Aquino voted for Mark Alaman and Lucinda Windward. Mark Alaman and Lucinda Windward were appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission. Alexis Goddard Leary Direct Appointment. H Historic District Commission. City Clerk Krista Fremantle confirmed with Mayor Aquino that they are voting for the Historic District Commission Architect and Business Representative outside Sutter Street. City Clerk Krista Fremantle also explained that the Planning Commission has a meeting tomorrow night and they will nominate commissioners to serve on the Historic District Commission and those nominations will come back before the city council at the January 28th meeting. Councilmember Leary voted for Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts. Unanimous from Everyone, Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts were appointed to the Historic District Commission. Landscaping and Lighting District Advisory Committee. There was one applicant for each of the Landscaping and Lighting Districts and the following applicants were appointed. Alan Brown was appointed to American River Canyon North. Lan Cornell was appointed to Willow Creek Estates South. Lexington David Doty was appointed to Cobble Ridge. Mark Cloughy was appointed to American River Canyon Number 2. Benjamin Maddox was appointed to Prospect Ridge. Robert Mills Tray was appointed to Willow Springs. Patty Solzby was appointed to Blue Ravine Oaks. Joanna Stanfield was appointed to Sierra Estates Hills. Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council. Page 11 Page 5 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025. Motion by Councilmember Rohrbau and second by Mayor Aquino to approve all applicants under the Landscaping and Lighting District Advisory Committee. Motion passed by the following E N G Roll Call Vote: Eyes. Koslowski, Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino. Knows, None Absent, None Obstain, None Library Commission, Two At Large Seats. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Robert Deucha and Sarah Norberg. Councilmember Leary voted for Catherine Alaman and V J Jonalagata. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Catherine Alaman and Benjamin Osipov. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Catherine Alaman and V J Jonalagata. Mayor Aquino voted for Catherine Alaman and V J Jonalagata. Catherine Alaman and V J Jonalagata were appointed to the Library Commission. Bonnie Landon Leary Direct Appointment. Traffic Safety Committee. Mayor Aquino confirmed that they are voting for one bicycle and pedestrian safety representative and two citizen representatives. City Clerk Krista Fremantle Futhr clarified. Councilmember Leary voted for Joanne Brous, Kevin Goddard, and Anthony Nicolai. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Joanne Brous, Rick Coghill, and Kevin Goddard. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Joanne Brous, Raymond Garcia, and Kevin Goddard. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Joanne Brous, Rick Coghill, and Kevin Goddard. Mayor Aquino voted for Joanne Brous, Rick Coghill, and Kevin Goddard. Joanne Brous was appointed to the Traffic Safety Committee as the Bicycle/Pedestrian Safety Representative. Rick Coghill and Kevin Goddard were appointed to the Traffic Safety Committee as citizen representatives. Utility Commission, Two At Large Seats. Mayor Aquino stated that Amy McBride was listed on the master spreadsheet but not listed on the ballots. City Clerk Krista Fremantle confirmed that her email went into the city's spam filter, but she did apply before the deadline. Mayor Koslowski commented on the importance of attending the Utility Commission meetings. Councilmember Leary voted for Mark Menz and Jag Nagendra. Councilmember Koslowski voted for Mark Menz and Julian Sarafian. Draft Not Official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Page 12 Page 6 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 1-4, 2025. Vice Mayor Rathal voted for Mark Menz and Aaron Silva. Councilmember Rohrbau voted for Mark Menz and Jag Nagendra. Mayor Aquino voted for Mark Menz and Amy McBride. There was no quorum for the second seat, and Mayor Aquino explained why she was voting for Amy McBride. The Vice Mayor stated his direct appointment will be Aaron Silva, so he switched his vote to Amy McBride. Councilmember Koslowski also changed his vote from Julian Sarafian to Amy McBride. Amy McBride and Mark Menz were appointed to the Utility Commission. Aaron Silva Rathal Direct Appointment. Vice Mayor Rathal made the following as his direct appointments. Robert Sumner, Arts and Cultural Commission Solomon Kais Library Commission. City Clerk Krista Fremantle thanked all the applicants and everyone for their patience. Councilmember Rohrbau thanked the applicants, spoke about the number of applicants, and asked them to reapply or apply again and to also meet with the council members. Councilmember Leary spoke about the number of applicants and thanked everyone for applying. She also encouraged everyone to get engaged in organizations. 16. Consideration of Draft City Council Travel Policy and Direction to Staff. Mayor Aquino presented the item for council consideration. Finance Director Stacy Tomagna provided additional information. The council requested that this item be returned at a future meeting for approval, with the inclusion of language relating to per diem reimbursements. 17. Appointment of City Council Representatives to Regional Boards/Commissions. Mayor Aquino presented the item, and the council members agreed to the regional assignments. One Change was made as follows regarding the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Vice Mayor Rathal Primary Representative Mayor Aquino Alternate Representative City Manager Reports. Landrum City Manager Dan Haverty recognized the Environmental Water Resources Department for working during the weekend to find a water leak. He spoke about the Water Vision Project Meeting, and the Folsom T I N A T 1 S Minute Service. Also, he recognized the Folsom Police Department and Communications Director Christine Brainard and staff regarding the e-scooter, e-bike, and e-motorcycle public education in partnership with Folsom Unified School District and the meetings with businesses and faith-based groups in the community. He acknowledged those who obtained 20 years of service for the city in 2Q24, starting with the police department, including Warner Herndon J R, Gina Marand, Roman Kem, Andrew Bates, Lou Wright, and Police Chief Rick Hillman, who celebrated 30 years of draft not official L Jane Till Approved by the City Council. Poach 7 Page 13 February 11th, 2025 Item Number 1. File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes January 14, 2025 Service. L N the Environmental Water Resources Department, this included Chris Robinson, and Glenn Caldwell. L N the Public Works Department, this included Greg Baughan, Sandra Munoz, and Tim Jones. L N the Fire Department, this included Bill Woody Woodward. He also spoke about the State of the City for 2025 that will be held at Lakeside, the CAPS, and CERT volunteers that the city is seeking, and the Police Department Foundation's donation of $3,000 to fund a new fireplace in the children's reading area at the library. He also mentioned that he will be reading a book to the children at the library in the upcoming week. Council Comments. Councilmember Koslowski had no comments. Vice Mayor Rathal attended the State of Public Safety held by the District Attorney's Office regarding the fentanyl program and thanked the Folsom Police Department and Sergeant Canepa for their work in that area. He also spoke about the homeless crisis and thanked the hot team and police department for cleaning up the homeless camps. He thanked Heart for the winter shelter, and spoke about the Folsom Athletic Association crab feed, and thanked those willing to serve on the commissions. Councilmember Rohrbau acknowledged former council member Callum Carello in the audience and congratulated him on the swearing-in with the school board. She also spoke about asking the Community Development Department Director Pam Johns regarding the building of condos. She thanked Landrum City Manager Dan Haverty for his work, the homeless encampments on fish and wildlife property, and setting up another meeting in the future with Josh Hoover's office, an upcoming economic development meeting and revenue options for the city. revenue options for the city, and cap two cap in May. Councilmember Leary thanked the Police Department regarding the youth on motorcycles and snatch-and-grab crimes, and she also thanked all departments for their work. She wants to hear from departments to see what kind of volunteers they can use. She spoke about Hart and Jake's journey home; she also attended the State of Public Safety held by the District Attorney's Office regarding the fentanyl program and thanked the Folsom Police Department and Sergeant Canipa for their work in that area. Slora thanked Mayor Aquino and staff with issues in her district and the Lndrum City Manager for his guidance. Mayor Aquino spoke about Milton Nechek, who passed away on January fifth at ninety-four. Mick was the man who brought Kikom on to Folsom and opened the Folsom factory with twenty-nine employees in nineteen ninety-eight. Mayor Aquino extended her condolences to Mick's wife Nancy and the entire Nechek family. Adjournment there being no further business to come before the City Council, the meeting was adjourned in the memory of Milton Mick Nechek at eight fifteen P M submitted by: attest, Krista Fremantle, City Clerk Sarah Aquino, Mayor draft not official El Jane till approved by the City Council page fourteen poach eight February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number two. File zero three four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-three comma two thousand and twenty-five City Council Special Meeting Minutes Thursday, January twenty-three comma two thousand and twenty-five twelve fifteen P M call to order the special City Council meeting was called to order at twelve point one five P M with Mayor Aquino presiding roll call. Councilmembers present Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Roorbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent, Michael Kozlowski Councilmember Special P entation, one mayor's two thousand and twenty-five State of the City address. Mayor Aquino presented the two thousand and twenty-five State of the City address adjournment there being no further business to come before the City Council, the meeting was adjourned at twelve thirty-five P M submitted by: attest Krista Fremantle, City Clerk Sarah Aquino, Mayor draft not officiate all I Jane till approved by the City Council page fifteen page L February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number two. This page is intentionally dot L L Y left blank to facilitate double-side de-printing Q and D minimize paper T R S E. F O L S O L backslash City C F distinctive B Y nature page sixteen February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number three. File zero three four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five G D Council Special Meeting Minutes Tuesday, January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five five thirty P M call to order the special City Council meeting was called to order at five thirty P M with Mayor Aquino presiding roll call. Councilmembers present, Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Roorbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent, Michael Kozlowski, Councilmember, arrived at six ten P M, adjournment T to closed session for the. Following purposes: One conference with labor negotiator, pursuant to Government Code Section five thousand four thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven point six. Agency negotiator, Vance Pigott. Employee organization, Folsom Police Officers Association motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, second by councilmember Roorbau to adjourn to closed session. Motion passed by the following roll call vote: Eyes. Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Aquino knows. None absent, Kozlowski abstain, none reconvened City Attorney Stephen Wong announced that no final action was taken during closed session adjournment there being no further business to come before the City Council, the meeting was adjourned at six thirty-one P M draft not official El Jane till approved by the City Council page seventeen poach one attest, Sarah Aquino, Mayor February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number three. File zero three four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five submitted by: Jennifer Jimenez, Deputy City Clerk draft not officiate all El Jane till approved by the City Council page eighteen page two file zero three zero four two slash twelve eleven slash two two zero five two dash fifty I zero T E one M number three. Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five G D Council Regular Meeting Minutes Tuesday, January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five six thirty P M call to order the regular City Council meeting was called to order at six thirty-one P M with Mayor Sarah Aquino presiding roll call. Councilmembers present Michael Kozlowski, Councilmember Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Roorbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent. None pledge of allegiance The pledge of allegiance was recited. Agenda update City Attorney Stephen Wong advised that there was additional and revised information for item six business from the floor; the following speakers addressed the City Council: One Y K Callum Carelaw Two. Naomi Machado Three. Lisa Lad Four. Orin Heat Live Five. Scott Machado Six. Sarah Norberg Councilmember Kozlowski made a brief statement under this item scheduled presentations: One recognition of the two Q two four Folsom Holiday Lights Contest Winners draft not officiate all I Jane till approved by the City Council page nineteen poach seven February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number three. File Q thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five Mayor Aquino introduced this item on behalf of the Communications Department. Folsom Times Bill Sullivan thanked Communications Director Christine Brainerd, Communications Officer Chris Shepherd, and the business community. Also, he thanked City of Folsom and the community for decorating for the holiday spirit. Mayor Aquino announced the winners and thanked those who participated in the following categories: Clark Griswold Use of Holadav Liatz Brian Moss at fifteen thirty, Freswick Drive selected by Mayor Aquino but he was not present to receive the award, so she took a picture with Folsom Times Bill Sullivan. Hovwood Christmas Best Use of Theme and slash or fictional characters Jillian, Dale, and Bentley Gonzalez at one oh five, Legmont Court selected by Mike Kozlowski but they were not present to receive the award illuminate the block, Best Multi-House Displave the Escamillas and Roger and Diana Curtis at seventeen thirty, Darvel Court selected by Vice Mayor Rathal and he presented the award. Hovjolv Residence Best Overall Residente Ashley and Johnny Brown at five thirty, Flower Drive selected by Councilmember Leary and she presented the award. Mayor Van Brick Business Festive Commercial Business Displave, Moods Window Painting, Judy Collinsworth, Mike Dickinson, Joan, and Kevin McGinnis, Roberta and Larry Lawman, and Jim Snook at Sutter Street, Historic Folsom selected by Councilmember Roorbau and she presented the award. Consent Calendar Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. Two Mayor's Appointment and Confirmation by the City Council of Planning Commissioners to Serve on the Historic District Commission Three. Resolution number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-three A resolution approving the preliminary engineers repoft, declaring the intention to order the formation of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. two thousand and twenty-five to one, to levy and collect assessments, to provide notice of public hearing and direct the mailing of assessment ballots within the proposed district in the city of Folsom four. Resolution No. one one three two four A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Barnum and Cellulow Electric for the replacement of the existing electrical service panels, two, at the Folsom Rodeo Grounds five. Resolution No. one one three two five A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Capra Environmental Services Corporate for managed grazing services within the city of Folsom draft not official until approved by the City Council page twenty page two February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number three. File zero three four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five motion by councilmember Kozlowski, second by Vice Mayor Rathal, to approve items No. two to five of the consent Gale N D A R. Motion passed by the following roll call vote: Eyes. Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Kozlowski, Aquino knows. None absent, none abstain, none public hearing. Six Folsom Town Center North L L T S M I resolution number one thirteen twenty-two A resolution determining that the Folsom Town Center North L L T S M project is exempt from CEQA and approving said large law tentative subdivision map Community Development Associate Planner Josh Kingcade made a presentation and responded to questions from the City Council. Community Development Director Pam Johns provided additional information. The public hearing was opened and closed at seven P M being no requests to speak under this item. The following speaker addressed the City Council under this item after the public hearing was closed one. Greg Stoser Councilmember Leary thanked staff for answering questions and addressing the email regarding this item. Motion by Councilmember Kozlowski, second by Vice Mayor Rathal, to approve resolution number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-two. Motion passed by the following roll call vote: Eyes. Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Kozlowski, Aquino knows. None absent, none abstain, none City Manager Reports Lndrum City Manager Dan Haverty thanked and congratulated Mayor Aquino for the State of the City event and her speech; he also thanked the communications group and the police and fire staff members who are developing an outreach program to raise awareness of wildfire risks; he spoke about the fire department's acquisition of two Bronn. Ambulances, the kids' play park new play structures that should be completed in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-six, the Owl Be Your Valentine event at the Folsom City Zoo, and the Lego building contest being held at the library. Council comments Councilmember Kozlowski congratulated Mayor Aquino for her State of the City speech. Vice Mayor Rathal spoke about the SAC sewer board meeting and the latest update on the Capitol Project and thanked his mom from Goodyear, Arizona for coming to the council meeting. Councilmember Leary spoke about attending an opening of a Kaiser and Pace facility. Draft not official El Jane till approved by the City Council page twenty-one page three file zero three zero four two slash twelve eleven slash two zero two two five five dash zero eight zero E one M number three. Folsom City Council minutes January twenty-eight comma two thousand and twenty-five Councilmember Roorbau spoke about Mercy of Folsom celebrating thirty-five years, attending a SAC RT meeting, and an upcoming meeting regarding issues on South Lexington. Mayor Aquino thanked the communications staff including Communications Director Christine Brainerd, Communications Officer Chris Shepherd, and Social Media Coordinator Andrew Eggers for helping her prepare the State of the City speech. Adjournment there being no further business to come before the City Council, the meeting was adjourned at seven colon fourteen P M submitted by attest Jennifer Jimenez, Deputy City Clerk Sarah Aquino, Mayor draft not officiate all T Jane till approved by the City Council page twenty-two page four February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. I L and I L I R L Folsom City Council Staff Ort Meeting Date, tool to two oh two S Agenda Section, subject: Consent Calendar Resolution Number one one thousand three hundred and twenty-six A resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract amendment with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, an appropriation of funds from Public Works Department Recommendation slash City Council Action The Public Works Department recommends that the City Council pass and adopt Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, an appropriation of funds. Background slash issue in January two thousand and twenty-four the City Council approved Resolution Number one L L five two A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, an appropriation of funds Subsequently, the city of Folsom entered into an agreement with Girardelli Associates to provide construction management services for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvements project as the project progressed, unforeseen delays occurred, primarily due to pole manufacturing lead times. Additionally, Caltrans encroachment permit and oversight requirements necessitated an additional electrical inspector to ensure proper compliance with ramp metering installations. These factors resulted in a longer than anticipated construction period and an increased need for inspection services. Consequently, the originally allocated budget for construction management services has been fully utilized. One page twenty-three February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. Currently, the project is in the closeout phase, with remaining tasks necessary to ensure final project completion. To cover the additional hours expended due to the prolonged construction period and the required inspections, an amendment to the original contract is requested in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. This amendment will cover the added services rendered as well as the original closeout activities required to bring the project to completion. Approval of this amendment is necessary to finalize all project-related work and to ensure full compliance with Caltrans and city requirements. Policy slash rule Section two point three six point zero eight zero, Award of Contracts of the Folsom Municipal Code States, in part, that contracts for supplies, equipment, services, and construction with an estimated value of seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by City Council. Analysis City staff has reviewed the Girardelli Associates scope and fee to provide additional services to cover the additional hours expended due to the prolonged construction period and the required inspections. Staff will use the city's standard construction agreement in a form acceptable to the city attorney. F I N A N impact The original contract with Girardelli Associates was authorized for seventy-five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Staff is requesting an amendment to the contract for the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents for an updated total not to exceed contract amount of ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Staff is also requesting an appropriation of funds in the amount of dollar I seven comma two twenty-four point eighty-eight dot sufficient funds are available in the Transportation Improvement Fund, Fund four hundred and forty-six, for the appropriation. Environmental Review This project has been deemed categorically exempt from environmental review. Attachment Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six A resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, an appropriation of funds two page twenty-four submitted, Mark Rackoven, Public Works Director February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. J page twenty-five February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S O on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, an approper taton of funds whereas, construction on the East Bidwell and Iron Point Road slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project is completed and required full-time construction inspection staff and materials testing, and whereas, staff previously selected Girardelli Associates, in based on proposed project staff, project understanding and experience with similar types of projects, for a not to exceed amount of seventy-five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents, and whereas, additional inspection services were required to. Finalize all project-related work and to ensure full compliance with Caltrans and city requirements due to unforeseen delays occurring, primarily in pole manufacturing lead times, and whereas, Caltrans encroachment permit and oversight requirements necessitated additional electrical inspector to ensure proper compliance with ramp metering installations, and whereas, sufficient funds are available in the Transportation Improvement Fund, Fund four hundred and forty-six, in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents to be appropriated for. An updated total not to exceed contract amount of dollar ninety-two comma three sixty-seven dot I seven, and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore, B I T resolved that the City Council of the city of Folsom authorizes the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Girardelli Associates for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, in the amount of dollar I seven comma two twenty-four point eighty-eight. B I T further resolved that the Finance Director is authorized to appropriate five hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-four point eight-eight in the Transportation Improvement Fund, Fund four hundred and forty-six, for the East Bidwell and Iron Point slash U S five zero on-ramp improvement project, project No. P W two two zero three, for an updated total not to exceed contract amount of ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars point one seven. Passed and adopted this one L T H day of February two thousand and twenty-five by the following roll call vote: Eyes. Knows. Absent. Abstain. Councilmember. S Councilmember. S Councilmember. S Councilmember. S Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six page one O F two Sarah Aquino, Mayor page twenty-six attest, Krista Fremantle, City Clerk February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six P A G two O F two page twenty-seven February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number four. This page is intentionally left blank to facilitate double-side de-printing and minimize paper T S E. Fols. L backslash City of distinctive B Y nature page twenty-eight February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five item number five I L J I colon backslash L T and R L T R R R one point four oh one, T R R I Folsom City Council Staff Re R T Meeting Date, two T R U two zero two five Agenda Section, New Business Subject, Resolution Number one one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven, A Resolution A Resolution Adopting Twenty Twenty Four Local Road Safety Plan From Public Works Department Rico. On slash City Council Action The Public Works Department recommends that the City Council pass and adopt Resolution No. Two-three twenty-seven A Resolution Adopting Twenty Twenty Four Local Road Safety Plan. Background slash Issue LN two I nine The Public Works Department applied for and secured a Dollar-seventy-two comma zero-zero-zero grant from the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, to develop the city's first local road safety plan, LRSP. The LRSP is a data-driven approach that identifies high-risk intersections and roadway segments with the highest incidence of fatal and severe injury collisions. It also analyzes the contributing factors to these collisions and recommends corrective measures to enhance roadway safety. The City Council formally adopted the previous version of the LRSP in June of twenty-twenty-one, and the plan served as the foundation for submitting grant applications to Caltrans under the Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP, during Cycle Ten. As a result, the city successfully obtained three HSIP grants totaling Dollar-two-point-nine S million. These grants funded critical safety improvements, including the Folsom Lake Crossing Median Barrier Project and the Traffic Signal Safety Project, furthering the city's commitment to enhancing traffic safety for all road users. The city routinely updates the local road safety plan to reflect evolving traffic patterns, emerging safety concerns, and the latest best practices in roadway safety. These updates ensure that the city continues to identify and prioritize high-risk locations and proactively pursue funding opportunities for necessary safety improvements. By maintaining an up-to-date LRSP, the city won Page twenty-nine, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five, strengthens its ability to secure additional grant funding and implement effective measures to reduce collisions and enhance safety for motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians. The City Council approved a consultant contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. on March twenty-six comma twenty-twenty-four, as authorized by Resolution Number eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight, to develop the Twenty Twenty Four Local Road Safety Plan. The firm prepared the draft LRSP, solicited input from the public, and received a recommendation to approve the LRSP from the Traffic Safety Committee. Staff is seeking approval from the City Council to approve the final plan. Policy slash Rule Caltrans requirements for a local road safety plan include a requirement that the local governing body must adopt the plan before it can be considered final. Analysis The LRSP is a data-driven, analytics-based tool for identifying the location, associated factors, and potential corrective measures of fatal and severe injury G and S D collisions. The LRSP relies on data contained in the traffic collision reports prepared by local law enforcement, which is then submitted to the California Highway Patrol for inclusion in the statewide integrated traffic records system, SWTRIS. Using SWTRIS, the consultor analyzed four years, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, of collision reports to determine collision trends in high-risk locations. Some of the key trends that were identified in the analysis were: Of the two comma zero-seven-six total collisions reported between January I, twenty-twenty, and December third one, twenty-twenty-three, thirteen were fatal and fifty-four were severe injured dot Y crashes, F and S I. Top causes of all crashes: Unsafe Speed, twenty-seven percent, red light running, I four percent, DUI, ten percent, O peak crash times, four PM to six PM O most crashes occur at intersections, eighty percent, with the remaining twenty percent O occurring along roadway segments O two-eight Y O of total collisions involved fixed objects or parked cars O two-zero Y O of the F and S I collisions involved bicyclists or pedestrians O aggressive driving was a contributing factor for forty O slash O of all crashes in the study period, eight hundred and thirty-five total, resulting in three, three fatal crashes and twenty-three, twenty-three severe injury crashes. Aggressive driving crashes include behaviors such as unsafe speed, following too closely, or disregarding traffic signals and signs. Aggressive driving crashes occurred most commonly at intersections. The analysis of the City of Folsom's fatal and severe injury, F and S D crashes compared to statewide data has identified key areas where the city experiences higher or lower crash rates. This data-driven insight will help guide safety improvements, funding applications, and strategic interventions. Two, page thirty, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Areas where Folsom has higher F and S I crash rates The following crash types occur at a higher rate in Folsom than the statewide average, indicating areas that need targeted interventions: One aggressive driving, fifty-three point five percent in Folsom versus thirty-three dot Lio statewide, plus twenty point four percent. Two impaired driving, three hundred and ninety-five percent in Folsom versus twenty-five point three O slash O statewide, plus I four point two percent. Three lane departure crashes forty-nine point seven O in Folsom versus forty-three point three Y statewide, plus six point four percent. Four young driver involvement seventeen point two O slash O in Folsom versus thirteen dot Low statewide, plus four dot I percent. Five intersection crashes, twenty-six point eight percent in Folsom versus twenty-three point six percent O statewide, plus three dot L percent. Six aging driver involvement seventy-three point four Y in Folsom versus I two point four Y statewide, plus one point zero percent. Seven. Distracted driving, five dot Lio in Folsom versus five point zero percent statewide, plus zero point one percent. Implications and Recommendations A focus on aggressive driving and impaired driving through enforcement strategies, public education campaigns, and roadway design improvements. Address Lane Departure Crashes With Countermeasures Such as Rumble Strips, Enhanced Lane Markings, and Shoulder Widening. Improve Intersection Safety Through Signal Timing Adjustments, Enhanced Crosswalks, and Sight Distance Improvements. Implement Educational Programs Targeting Young and Aging Drivers to Improve Safety Awareness. Public Outreach Summary For the LRSP Public Engagement For the LRSP was conducted through a multifaceted approach, ensuring broad community participation. Outreach Efforts Included Discussions Held During Regularly Scheduled Traffic Safety Committee Meetings, in-person engagement at the Folsom Farmers Market, and online surveys to collect input from residents and stakeholders. THE two zero two four outreach effort resulted IN four-three-seven survey responses AND three-eight-two mapped public safety concerns, reflecting a substantial increase in public participation compared to the twenty-twenty-one effort, which received sixty-two responses from fifty-four unique respondents. The expanded public outreach has provided valuable insights into community priorities, ensuring that the LRSP remains data-driven and responsive to the transportation safety concerns of residents. The most frequently identified safety concerns from the responses include: AJ Page thirty-one, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Aggressive Driving, Speeding. Red Light Running O distracted driving O pedestrian and bicycle safety O East Bidwell Street Traffic congestion. The city completed this local road safety plan, LRSP, to guide future transportation safety improvements for years to come. Through a data-driven analysis, the city has identified crash types, primary crash factors, and high-crash locations. Additionally, key emphasis areas have been established to inform further safety evaluations of the city's transportation network. These emphasis areas will help shape corridor improvements, education programs, and capital projects aimed at enhancing transportation safety. With the insights gained from the LRSP, the city can pursue grant funding across the city, apply for future grants to support infrastructure improvements O secure additional funding, actively seek alternative funding sources to enhance safety for all road users. Enhance Collaboration, Work with Stakeholders, Safety Partners, and neighboring municipalities to create a cohesive and safer transportation network. Continuously Evaluate and Improve Iteratively Assess Current and Proposed Safety Programs and Capital Improvements to Refine the City's Transportation Network. Next Steps. City Council Approval Formal Adoption by the City Council. O Plan Updates In accordance with Caltrans Guidelines, the LRSP will be reviewed and updated within five years, by twenty-twenty-nine or earlier. Implementation of Safety Improvements. The report identifies three categories of safety improvements: Near-term improvements, zero to three years, midterm improvements, three to five years, and long-term improvements, five-plus years. Near-term improvements consist of improvements that are relatively low-cost and can be implemented most readily. Midterm improvements are higher-cost improvements, while long-term improvements are the highest cost and may require engineering design and permitting to implement. Some examples of these improvements are near-term improvements O install retroreflective backplates and slash or additional O install pedestrian countdown signal heads. Implement Leading Pedestrian Intervals O implement always-stop control at intersections O install dynamic speed warning signs signal heads. Four, page thirty-two, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Midterm improvements O install raised median O install rectangular rapid flashing beacon at pedestrian crossings O install rumble strips, edge line and center line. Long-term improvements O convert high-risk intersections into full roundabouts O construct pedestrian bridges or underpasses at critical crossings. Implement Road Diet Strategies to Improve Multimodal Safety O install high-friction surface treatments, HFST, on curves O install separated bike lanes. This structured, multifaceted approach will ensure a safer, more efficient, and well-connected transportation network for all road users in the city. The Traffic Safety Committee discussed the draft LRSP at their December twelve comma twenty-twenty-four meeting and recommended that the LRSP be adopted with additional revisions included in the final draft before the City Council. Financial Impact There is no direct financial impact associated with adopting the LRSP. Environmental Review None Required. Attachments One. Resolution Number one thirteen twenty-seven A Resolution Adopting Twenty Twenty Four Local Road Safety Plan Two. Draft two zero two-four LOC AL Road Safety Plan Three. Meeting Minutes Traffic Safety Committee, December twelve comma twenty-twenty-four Submitted, Mark Rackoven, Public Works Director. Five, page thirty-three Attachment One, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Page thirty-four, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Resolution No. II three-two-seven A Resolution Adopting the two oh twenty-four Local Road Safety Plan. Whereas, the City of Folsom has prepared a two zero two-four Local Road Safety Plan, LRSP, and whereas, the LRSP analyzes traffic collision data to determine the causes and solutions for fatal and severe injury collisions, and whereas, the LRSP has identified the highest priority intersections and road segments and the corrective measures that could reduce collision frequency at those locations, and whereas, the LRSP is integral to successfully applying for funding from the Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP, that is administered by the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, and whereas, Caltrans requires that each public agency's LRSP be adopted by the agency's governing body. Now, therefore, BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom hereby adopts the Twenty Twenty Four Local Road Safety Plan. Passed and adopted this one LTH day of February twenty-twenty-five by the following roll call vote, Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Councilmember, S, Councilmember, S, Councilmember, S, Councilmember, S. Attest, Sarah Aquino, Mayor Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. Page one of I Page thirty-five Attachment Two, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Page thirty-six, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. At 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 Page thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Loke Road Safety PI dot AN February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. GURY of Folsom Local Roadway SNFET Y Prulinuri twenty-twenty-five Copyright at twenty-twenty-five Kim Tehorn and Associates, LNC. Page thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan Local Roadway Safta Plan Prepared For City of Folsom Fatsam City Hat Fifty Natoma Street Folsom, California, nine-five-six-three-zero Prepared by Kim Tehorn and Associates, LNC, five hundred and fifty-five Capitomath Suite three hundred Sacramento, California, nine-five-eight-one-four-ninety-one-six dash eight-five-eight dash fifty-eight-hundred. February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. This document, together with the concepts and designs presented herein, as an instrument of service, is intended only for the specific purpose and client for which it was prepared. Reuse of an improper reliance on this document without written authorization and adaptation by Kim Lee Horn and Associates, LNC, shall be without the ability to Kim Lee Horn and Associates, slash NC. At January twenty-twenty-five Folsom LRSP zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs. Page two, page thirty-nine City of Fatsam, Anuri twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety PN February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Act Tollegments The City of Fatsam Employs and Partners Were Instrumented in the Development, Review, and Refinement of this Technicat Memorandum. The City of Fatsam's Engineering Department and Kim Tehorn laud type to express their appreciation to the supporting staff and partners for their partici potiana N D contributions. City of Fatsam Zach Bosch, Senior Civit Engineer, Traffic. Ryan Chance, Engineering Manager, Matt Washburn, Traffic Safety Committee. Scott Beatty, Traffic Safety Committee. Kevin Goddard, Traffic Safety Committee. Matthew McGee, Traffic Safety Committee. Tim Gatavich, Traffic Safety Committee. Joanne Brousse, Traffic Safety Committee. Brett Bodinger, Senior Traits Planner. Consultant Team Robert Paderna-Mattweir Luke Lotzarene Zachary Ramadingham Brandy Chick Dress Kristen Mace Reruro R Y Ortke S U. TVCVS Notwithstanding any other provision of A, Reports, Surveys, Scheduets, Lists, or data compiled or collected for the purpose of identifying, evituating, or tanning the safety enhancement of potential accident sites, hazardous roadway conditions, or railway highway crossings pursuant to Sections one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty-four, and one hundred and forty-eight of this tit or for the purpose of divotoping any highway safety construction improvement project which may be implemented utilizing federated highway funds shall not be subject to discovery or admitted into evidence in a federal or state court proceeding or considered for other purposes in any action for damages arising from any occurrence at a location mentioned or addressed in such reports, surveys, scheduets, tests, or data. FOSAM LRSP underscore zero one point one four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs. Page three, page forty City of Fatsam January twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety PN Tale E of Contents one one point two. Commute Patterns one point two point one. Commute Modes one point two point two. Commute Travestime. Two, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Item Number Five. Three, three-three. Three point one Guiding Mate Riats. Three point one point one Loke Roadway Safety Manual three point one point two. Highway Safety Manual I three point two. Analysis Techniques. Three point two point one Crash Analysis three point two point two. Network Screening G Analysis. Three point three Critical Crash Rate, CCR, Analysis. Three point four Equivalent Property Damage Onti, EPDO. Four point one Severity Levit. Four point two City of Fatsam Historic K and SL Crashes Compared to Statewide. Four point three Office of Traffic Safety, OTS, Rankings. Four point four Primary Codizion Factor. Four point five Highest Occurring Crash Types four point six. Aggressive and Lombard Driving Crashes four point seven. Vodnerapdi Road User Crashes. Four to seven point one, Pedestrian Crashes. Four point seven point two Bicycled Crashes four point eight. Crashes by Lighting Condition four point nine. Crashes by Time of Day. Four point one zero Crashes by Year. Five Publik Eric four Erveruti. Five point one Introduction five point two. L N Person Event Summaries. Five point two point one Historic Fatsam Farmers Market, September seven comma twenty-twenty-four five point two point two. Historic Fatsam Farmers Market, October nineteen comma twenty-twenty-four. Five point three Ontine Community Survey Responses five point three point one. Ontine Map and Survey Engagement Folsom LRSP zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs. Page four, page forty-one twenty-five comma dot twenty-six, comma thirty-two 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 thirty-four thirty-four thirty-five thirty-seven point three seven point three nine point three nine point three nine point four zero point four zero. City of Fatsam, Anua, Y twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four. Anua, Y twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokal Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Six Goruer Measures six point one. Engineering Countermeasures six point one point one. Crash Modification Factors and Crash Reduction Factors six point one point two. E N G I Neering Ku Intermeasure Residential Tootbox. Six point two Non-Infrastructure Countermeasures. Seven Project Locations. Eight Implementa-Floen Guide eight point one. Evituation. Eight point two Impmentation eight point two point one. Near and Midterm Focus Areas eight point three. Poteki Update eight point four. Updates to the Local Road Safety Ten. Eight point five Funden nine. Eight point five point one Highway Safety Improvement Program, H S I P, eight point five point two. Cat rounds Active Transportation Program, A T P, eight point five point three. State Transportation Improvement Program, S T I P. Eight point five point four California Senate Bit One, S B One. Eight point five point five California Office of Traffic Safety, O T S, Grants. Nine Next Resro P S, forty-seven, forty-seven point four seven point four eight fifty-two T R O, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-one, point sixty-two, comma, point sixty-two, sixty-three. Sixty-three, sixty-four F O Summ L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page V page forty-two City of Fatsom January twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Appendix A Appendix B Appendix C Appendix D Appendix E Appendix F L R S R or Aperuats's Intersection Network Screening Reset Segment Network Screening Reset Online Survey Comments L N Person Tabting Map Comments Project Sheets Poteki Update L R S R or Frakunis Figure One. Location of Fatsom Figure Two, Citywide Crit I Cat Crash Rate Map. Eleven Figure Three, Citywide Intersection Roadway Segment E P D O Map fourteen Figure Four, Crashes by Severity, Faded and Severe. Sixteen Figure Five, Crashes by Severity, Other Injury, Comp Taint of Pain, and Property Damage Onti. Sixteen Figure Six, Injury Crash Map. Eighteen Figure Seven Injury Crash Heat Map. Nineteen Figure B, Faded and Severe Injury Crash Map, comma point twenty Figure Nine, Crashes by Primary Codizion Factor point two three Figure Ten, K and S L Crashes by Primary Codizion Factor. Twenty-four Figure One One, Crashes by Type. Twenty-five Figure One Two, K and S L Crashes by Type point two five Figure One Three, Aggressive and Lombard Driving Crashes. Twenty-six Figure One Four, Aggressive Driving Crash M A P. Twenty-eight Figure Fifteen, Lombard Driving Crash Map. Thirty Figure One Six, Vulnerable Road User Crashes. Thirty-two Figure Seventeen Vulnerable Road User Crashes. Thirty-three Figure Eighteen, Crashes by Lighting Condition. Thirty-four Figure Nineteen, Crashes by Time of Day point three five Figure Twenty, Crashes by Year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Thirty-five Figure Twenty One, Crashes by Year, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-three. Thirty-six Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page six City of Fatsom, Anuri twenty-twenty-five page forty-three twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P T A N Figure Twenty Two. Societ Pinpoint Website Statistics Figure Twenty Three. Societ Pinpoint Community Map Ontine Interface Figure Twenty Four. Publici comments compite with crashes. Figure Twenty Five, C M F Cat Cutation Figure Twenty Six. C M F Methods Amped Calculation Figure Twenty Seven C R F Cat Cutation Figure Twenty Eight, Case Study Locations. Figure Twenty Nine, Case Study Locations and Publici Comments L T S R or Tales Tabdi One, Crashes by Severity. Tabdi Two, City of Fatsom K and S L Crashes Compared to Statewide K and S L Crashes. Tabdi Three, Folsom O T S Ranking, twenty twenty-one. Tabdi Four, Fatsom Engineering Ku Intermeasures Tootbox. Tabdi Five, City of Fatsom Non-L N F Ra-Structure Countermeasures Tootbox. Tabdi Six, Project Locations Tabdi Seven, Near Term, Mid Term, and Long Term Improvements. February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Forty A A, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-four, fifty-five Osh To Ad T Ride Cat Round C C R C H P C M F C R F D R E P D O F H W A G I's L R S R or Acno N V M S American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials Average Daily Traffic Advanced Roadside Lombard Driving Enforcement California Department of Transportation Crit I Cat Crash Rate California H I Way Petro I Crash Modification Factor Crash Reduction Factor Drug Recognition Expert Equivalent Property Damage O N T Y Federate H I Way. Administration Geographic Information System Fatsom L R S P dash zero one. One four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page seven page forty-four City of Fatsom, Anuri twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Loke Road Safety P N H F S T H S M K and S I N H T S A P D O R R F B S H S P Swittrus High-Fricction Surface Treatment Highway Safety Manual I Fate Otan Severe Injury Crashes N A Shonit H I Way Traffic I C Saf Eddy Administration Property Damage Onti Rectangle Rapid Flashing Beacon Strategic Highway Safety Ten Statewide Integrated Traffic Records System February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Fatsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page eight page forty-five City of Fatsom, Anuri twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokal Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. One Rar Nu Kla and the City of Fatsom Loke Roadway Safety Ten has several notab purposes. The first is to identify traffic safety improvements based on a review of crash data and input F rom city staff, stake hotders, and the community. This project etso provides the city with a foundation for a decision-making F rhyme work so that it can identify, prioritize, and impment proven safety countermeasures F rom the city S Tootbox in the Fatoing years. This report can also serve as an ongoing resource as city staff identify and pursue funding through various programs to impment the identified safety improvements. This Loke Roadway Saf Eddy Ten summarizes the existing safety context F or the City of Fatsom based on crash records obtained from the California Highway Petrot, C H P, Statewide Integrated Traffic Records System, Swittrus, Database. This data has been used to identify citywide safety trends, high-crash locations, and locations with unusual crash patterns or high-crash severities. The analysis was conducted using a network screening process F or the city-maintained roadway system using crash records spanning a four-year period from January one comma twenty-twenty through December thirty-one comma twenty-twenty-three. Section three of the report describes the analysis techniques that were used and why these methods were chosen. One point one Background The City of Fatsom is Tokated in Nothurn, California and is in northeast Sacramento County, see Figure one. Situated east of Sacramento, Fatsom residents Tiv within twenty-five miles of California's Capito. Fatsom is home to over eighty-four thousand residents, as of Judy one, twenty-twenty-three. There are two high schools serving Folsom residents, Fatsom Highscut and Vista Det Lago Highscut. Major retail destinations within the city Inkshud the Patatio Outdoor Mat, Fatsom Premium Outettes, the Fatsom Central Business District, and the Fatsom Historic District. Fatsom is home to many jobs, with the largest employers being M Det, California L S O, and Micron. Fatsom has an extensive transportation network that ranges from O C A access via neighborhood streets and cotectors, to regionate access via highways through the city. U S Highway fifty, U S fifty, runs east-west through the southern half of the city and connects Fatsom to rest of Sacramento County tothust and D T Dorado County tothiest. East Bidwet Street a Samaj or Afterial they truns east-west through Fatsom, connecting the Fatsom Centrat Business District to the rest of Fatsom, and continues to the new divotopment on the south side of U S fifty. Due to its tication and broad connectivity, East Bidwet Street Corridor is often congested during peak periods of travest, resuting in vehicle queues and dida e onto adjacent city streets. Other major afterial roadways in Fatsom providing connectivity Inkshud to Ravine Road, Oak Avenue Parkway, Folsom Bout Everd, and Laurin Point Road. Addition Attorney, Major Divotopment on the south side of U S fifty within Fatsom is expected to increase muddy modee traffic I C. Major roadways in this area Inkshud East Bidwetl Street, Attor Creek Parkway, Mangini Parkway, Prairie City Road, and White Rock Road. For Public Transportation, Sacramento Regionate Transit, SAC R T, operates tight-rate service at Tong Fatsom Bout Everd Corridor from the Fatsom Historic District to the Fatsom Premium Outettes. The tight-rate line continues into downtown Sacramento. SAC R T etso operates O C A bus routes within Folsom. Fatsom L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page one page forty-six City of Fatsom, Annuity twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Figure one, Location of Folsom forty-fourth and Rav N L S N N Placer F L W County Trills J I Bo S R ninety-nine G C F five I eighty plus T R, L number one a six renite eight A Y L D Gira Duane County Oran thirty H fourteen Durat on Elts dot dash. I T Y of L S B U S fifty Blom and S P R L N nine S C O A R five U S fifty to C O S R T six S R ninety-nine dot J V A Eli Amador F K Dunti Fatsom L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page two page forty-seven City of Fatsom January twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. One point two Commute Patterns Based on the U S Census Bureau American Community Survey, A C S, Data T R O M two zero two-three, The City of Fatsom Has the Fatoing Commute Trends, one point two point one. Commute Modes Mode of Travest o slash o biking o point four o slash o taxi cab, motor site, or other o point sixty slash o public transit one point three o slash o walking one point three o slash o auto passenger, car put, six point forty slash o worked-from-home twenty-five point eight o slash o private auto sixty-four point one o slash o source, U S Census Bureau A C S five y two thousand eighteen to twenty-twenty-two The Majority of the Working Poputation in Fatsom Drive-to-Work A Tone. An additional twenty-five point eighty slash o of the working population work from O M E N six point four o slash o old working population car put. Therefore Teslon four o slash o of the working population with use alternative modes of transportation to driving a car, both alone and car put. One point two point two commute travel time commute time taro o slash o less than ten minutes thirteen point sixty slash o ten to fourteen minutes fourteen point eight o slash o fifteen to nineteen minutes twelve point nine o slash o twenty low twenty-four minutes fifteen point four o slash o two-five one o two nine minutes seven point two o slash o thirty to thirty-four minutes twelve point four o slash o thirty-five to forty-four minutes eight point five o slash o forty-five to fifty-nine minutes seven point eight o slash o more than sixty minutes seven point three o slash o source, U S Census Bureau A C S S year two oh eighteen dash twenty-twenty-two S hound above the mean travet time it taro for Folsom residencies twenty-six dot L of residents having a commute travet time of less than thirty minutes minutes with over sixty-three percent Fatsom L R S P underscore zero one point one April twenty-twenty-five. Docs page three page forty-eight City of Fatsom January twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four C W of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. This report is organized into the Fatoing Sections. R Section One presents an introduction to the Technicae Memorandum. R Section Two presents the data sources used in the analysis. R Section Three describes the guiding mate riats and analysis techniques for the data analysis. I Section Four provides a summary of safety trends. Section Five provides an overview of the public engagement process and community feedback R Section Six includes potentiate engineering and non-infrastructure countermeasures. Section Seven tests the project locations identified and the recommended countermeasures R Section Eight describes how safety plan can be impmented and monitored. R Section Nine describes next steps for the safety ten. Appendices Fatsom L R S P underscore zero one. One four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page four page forty-nine City of Fatsom January twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Two Deris Sources The Fatoing Data Was Obtained F rom the city for use in crash data analysis. Two point one Roadway Network The Crash Analysis, which is described in detail in Section Three, Data Analysis, Used California Department of Transportation's, Cat rounds, Roadway Taxification System. The roadway network taxification was assigned to each corridor roadway segment as either a major arteriat, minor arteriat, coltector, or tokat road to divotop crash rates specific to the function I design and capacity. Comparative Statistics Were Stratified by Roadway Taxification, I E, Onta Major Arteriates Are Compared to Major Afteriates. Two Comitul Intersections Intersections Throughout the City Were Grouped by Contrat Type as either signatized or non-signatized The Safety Analysis is Simitardi Stratified with Simiter Contrat Types, I E, Signatized Intersections Are Onta Compared to Signatized Intersections. Note that intersection crashes include those which reported occurred within a two-fifty-foot radius of the intersection. A T T Other Crashes Are Considered to be segment crashes in the safety data analysis. Two point three Crashes Crash Data for the four-year period F rom January one comma twenty-twenty through December thirty-one comma twenty-twenty-three was used for the network screening analysis. Using data for the past four-year period is sufficient in identifying potentiate trends in crashes by tication and type, why not being outdated as to have data that would Inkshud Tong-Term Technotoggi and Cutterat slash Environmentat changes? Crash Data from two different data sets was used to provide a comprehensive analysis of the city's safety trends. The city's crossroads crash database was used in this L R S P update. The city's crash database includes crashes of A T T severity inkshitting property damage Onti, P D O, crashes. L N Totate, The city's crossroads database recorded two thousand and seventy-six crashes on the city's transportation network from January first two oh two oh to December thirty-one comma twenty-twenty-three dot The city's crash database was used to generate figures regarding crash types and contributing F actors. However, due to timid geospatia information in the city's data set, crash data from Tims was used to generate crash maps and for geospatia analysis. The Transportation Injury Mapping System, Tims, maintained by the Safe Transportation Research and Education Center, Safe Trek, at U C Barkady, maps A T T injury crashes in California using data obtained through S W L T R S. This data set Inkshud's injury crashes but does not Inkshud property damage Onti, P D O, crashes. The Tatest Provisionate Data of a Tabdi from Swittrus was used in the geospatia analysis, ending in December R twenty-twenty-three, as it typical I takes C H P twelve to eighteen months to upload and process the crash data. The crash data from Tims was used for crash mapping, network screening, and tication-specific analysis. The Tims crash data set Inkshud'd five hundred and seventy-five injury crashes. Two point four Anuita Verge Daily Traffic Traffic Votum Data was detected from Mutipti sources provided by the city. Primariti, A D T Data was F rom an engineering and traffic survey conducted by T J K M Indiana two zero one nine one. Other Sources of A D T Data One Engineering and Traffic Survey, T J K M, November one B, two thousand and nineteen Fatsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page five page fifty City of Fatsom, Annuity twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Inkshud'd the city's traffic camera system at Tong East Bidwet Street. This data Inkshud'd average daily traffic I C, A D T, vatus for roadway segments throughout the city F or use in divotopment of C R A S H rates. Folsom L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty-twenty-five dot docs page six page fifty-one City of Fatsom, Anua, Y twenty-twenty-five twenty-twenty-four C I W of Folsom I O K Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five item number five. Three Darnarul Y S T S Using a Network Screening Process, Occasions Within the City That Wout Most Tikati Benefit from Safety Enhancements Were Identified. The outcome of this analysis heads inform the identification and prioritization of engineering and non-infrastructure safety countermeasures that are most likely to improve roadway safety in the City of Fatsom. This method was Ctetted because it is wet-established and conducive to archskate safety analysis, such as citywide safety assessments dot The Network's This method was C tested because it is well established and conducive to arch skate safety analysis, such as citywide safety assessments dot the network screening process ranks intersections and roadway segments by the number of crashes that occurred at each occasion over the analysis period. And then identify E S areas that had more of a given type of crashes than would be expected for that type of occasion. Analysis methods such as the crit ICAT crash rate and equivalent property damage onto were at so used to determine crash F frequency and severity at each location. Using historic crash data, crash risk factors for the entire city were explored. The following sections describe the data analysis process. Three point one guiding mate reads three point one point one, Local Roadway Safety Manual at the Local Roadway Safety Manual, a manual for California's local road owners, version one point six, April twenty twenty two. Purpose is to encourage Tocat agencies to pursue a proactive approach to identifying and analyzing safety issues, while preparing to compete for project funding opportunities. A proactive approach is defined as analyzing safety of the entire roadway network through either a one-time, network-wide analysis, or by routine analysis of the roadway network point two these methods are focused on identifying systemic issues that can be addressed through countermeasures that are updated more universati than just applying spot treatments every time there is a crash. This process aims to match the identified issues with potent TIA countermeasures. Each countermeasure comes with a crash modification factor, CMF, a maticative factor used to compute the number of expected crashes after the implementation of a given countermeasure. The CMFs are used to calculate benefit slash cost ratios. Three point one point two Highway Safety Manual the F first edition of the Highway Saf Eddie Manual, HSM, was published by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, OSHTO, in two thousand and ten. The HSM presents numerous methods for quantitative estimating F frequency and severity of crashes at a variety of road and intersection types point three this four-part manual I is divided into parts. A, production, human factors, and fundamentals. B, roadway safety management process. C, predictive method. D, crash modification factors. Chapter four of part B of the HSM discusses the network screening process. The network screening process is a two F or A N agency to analyze their entire network and identify slash R A N K locations that, based on the implementation of a countermeasure, are most tickety to tease tickety to realize a reduction in the frequency of crashes. The HSM identifies five steps in this process at two local roadway safety manual, version one point three, two hundred and one six. Page five. Three OSHTO, Highway Safety Manual, two thousand and ten, Washington DC. HTTP slash slash WWW dot highwaysafetamanua dot org slash pages slash about dot A S P X four M S H T O. Highway Safety Manual two thousand and ten. Washington, DC. Page four dash two Fatsom LRS P zero one J four point twenty twenty five dot docs city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five page L page fifty two twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tocat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. One establish focus, identify the purpose or intended outcome of the network screening analysis. This decision would influence data needs, the selection of performance measures and the screening method that can be updated. Two identify network and establish reference populations, specify the types of sites or faces being screened, i.e., segments, intersections, geometrics, and identify groupings of simiter sites or faces. Three select performance measures, there are a variety of performance measures available to evaluate the potential to reduce crash frequency at a site. L in this step, the P D or man's measure is C tested as a function of the screening focus and the data and an ati to call to ZVATBD. Four C tech screening method, there are three principate screening methods described in this chapter, i.e., ranking, stiting window, peak searching. Each method has advantages and disadvantages, the most appropriate method for a given situation should be C tested. Five screen and evaluate results, the finite step in the process is to conduct the screening and analysis and evaluate the resets. The HSM provides several status TICAT methods for screening roadway networks to identify high-risk indications based on overall crash histories. L in addition to stat crash quantities, the method used in this study is referred to as crit ICAT crash rate, CCR. Three point two analysis techniques three point two. One crash analysis the initiate steps of the crash analysis in establishing subpopulations of roadway segments and intersections that have simiter characteristics. For this study, intersections were grouped by their contrate type, signatized and unsignatized, and segments by their roadway category, major arteriate, minor arterial, caught actor, other. Dividuate crash rates were calculated for each subpopulation. The population teved crash rates were then used to assess whether a specific location has more or fewer crashes than expected. These subpopulations were also used to determine typical crash patterns to help identify indications where unusual numbers of specific crash types are identified. Three point two point two network screening analysis the network screening process ranks intersections and roadway segments by number of crashes that occurred at each occasion over the analysis period. And then identifies areas that had more of a given type of crashes than would be expected for that type of location. These crash type factors were one, crash injury, faded injuries, major injuries, other visibility injuries, comp taint of pain. Two, crash type, broadside, rear end, sideswipe, head on, hit object, overturned, bisect, pedestrian, other. Three, environment at factors, lighting, wet roads, and four, driver behavior, impaired and aggressive driving. With these additional factors, the indications were further analyzed and assigned a new rank. From the resets of the network screening analysis, a shortest of locations was chosen based on crash activity, crash severity, crash patterns, occasion type, and area of the city to provide a variety of indications covering a wide cross section of safety chat things and improvement opportunities the intent is to populate the safety countermeasure tutbox with mitigation measures that would be Fatsom LRS P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five page eight page fifty three twenty twenty four city of Folsom I OK. Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Up to cap to most of the crash activity in the city. Twenty five locations have been selected for mitigation analysis and project sheets with site-specific improvements were divotoped. Section eight presents the priority indications and the distant improvements, which are found in greater detail in appendix E. The resets of the network screening analysis are shown in appendix A and appendix B appendix A presents ATT of the intersections with three or more crashes. And appendix B presents the roadway segments with three or more crashes. The appendices are code or coded to high tight crash trends and emphasis areas for further study and countermeasure divotopment. Three point three crit ICAT crash rate, CCR, analysis the Highway Safety Manual, HSM, divotoped by OSHTO, describes the CCR method. Which provides a status TICAT review of indications to determine where risk is higher than that experienced by other simiter locations. LT is at so the first step in analysis and four patterns that may suggest systemic issues that can be addressed at that location, and proactivity at others to prevent new safety chat things F ROM emerging G. The CCR analysis compares the observed crash rate to the expected crash rate at a particular occasion based on facetati type and traffic votum using a TACAD cat cutated average crash rate for the specific type of intersection or roadway segment being analyzed. Based on traffic votums and awaited citywide crash rate for each facetati type, a critical crash rate threshold is established at the G five O slash O confidence table to determine indications with higher crash rates that are antiqueity to be random. The threshold is cat cutated for each occasion individuality based on its traffic votum and the crash profit of simiter faces. A CCR differential at vatu of greater than zero ref tech say occasion that has a higher crash rate than faces with simiter votums. Why a negative CCR differential at vatu signifies a below average crash rate LT shout be noted that the CCR does not ref tech the severity of the crashes occurring at the location, but rather the number of crashes for the given votum. Figure two presents the intersections and roadway segments according to their crash rate. The top three roadway segments with the highest CCR differential I vatus were, OE Bidwet ST, between Orchard Drive and Waits Drive, with a total of three crashes and a OCA crit ICAT are crash rate differential at of zero point three five. Inatoma ST, between Briggs Ranch Drive and Hancock Drive, with a total of three crashes and a OCA crit ICAT crash rate differential of zero point two six Prairie City RD, between US fifty and the road two thousand eight hundred north of White Rock RD, which has a total of five crashes and a Tocat crit ICAT crash rate differential at OL zero point twenty one. The top three intersections with the highest CCR differential values were, Ulren Point RD and Dry Creek RD, with three crashes and a Taka I crit ICAT crash rate differential at of O point seventy eight. Ulren Point RD and Peak Loop, with a totate of five crashes and a OCA critical crash rate differential at of zero point two zero. Natoma ST and Scott ST, with a totate of five crashes and a Tocal critical crash rate differential at of zero point one three Fatsom LRS P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page I page fifty four city of Fatsom January. Y twenty twenty five twenty twenty four CFI of Folsom Tocat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Crit ICAT crash rate formula RRI, RAIFFI dot R asterisk J where, RI equals crit ICAT crash rate for intersection IR equals weighted average crash rate for reference population P equals P vatu for corresponding confidence level ME six equals mid and entering fifty's for intersection I source, Highway Safety Manual data needs. CCR is calculated using, data entering votum, dev, for intersections, or vehicle miles traveled, VMT, for roadway segments. Intersection control types to separate them into IC populations. Roadway F function at classification to separate them into type populations. Crash records in geographic information systems, GLS, or tabuter form inkshitting coordinates or tinier measures strengths. Reduces low volume exaggeration. Considers variance establishes comparison threshold weaknesses. Does not account for regression to the mean bias Fatsom LRS P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page ten page fifty five city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tocat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Orangevale I figure two, citywide crit ICAT crash rate map, two oh two oh two oh two thirty one I lie in A T O T S E asterisk at LGTT nine liters A B Natural Ranch. N four A asterisk I Eldorado Hill L S C Q T T I I I I A Q, I I R Mississippi I bet I T I lost C E Saint U I C O J R B E T one, O B S backslash O T zero A and T F Y, G dot O G L E N Baroag G O R E P I W M G A I school. L I, L dollar Merdle, Roll Roll zero zero comma five Q, A, J R nine Lentrell Saint School O. Enriched Folsom troll district shop room, center T backslash I Folsom central T backslash K business eight point three slash dash slash L L L F slash F F, Elton By Park, Fatsom LRS P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs colon. Boardu Vettel I A F dot F L I dot intersection crash rates below average I O average crash rate I E O above average I page one 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 two miles segment crash rates, below average average crash rate, above average city of Fatsom. Annuity twenty twenty five page fifty six twenty twenty four city of Folsom local road safety plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Three point four, equivalent property damage onto, E P D O, the equivalent property damage onto, E P D O, method is described in the Highway Safety Manual, HSM. This method assigns weighting factors to crashes based on injury eve, faded, severe injury, other visibility injury, comp taint of pain, to divotop a property damage onto score. An E P D O score it toes for a fair comparison of crash severity across years or study periods, as this normatized unit takes into account invitation and cost escalation. For example, the cost to society for ATT injury crashes increased by twelve point seven O slash O between the twenty twenty edition of the local I roadway safety manual I and the twenty twenty two edition using the E P D O method otaji normatize the data and accounts for the increase in cost from invitation. L in this analysis, the injury crash costs were cat cutated for each location, based on the Tatest Catra NS injury costs. This vatu is then divided by the injury cost for a property damage onto crash. The resetting number is the equivalent number of property damage only crashes at each site. This value A L's ATT indications to be compared based on injury crash costs, HSM, chapter four. E P D O underscore formula, N R asterisk N S, asterisk two million eight hundred and forty three thousand plus, no X one hundred and fifty nine thousand nine hundred, plus, N C X ninety thousand nine hundred, E P D O, fourteen thousand nine hundred where, E P D O equals equivalent property damage onto, in units of crashes. N R equals number of Fada I crashes N S equals number of severe injury crashes no equals number of other visibility injury crashes N C equals number of comp taint of pain crashes the cost to society for each crash type at Tong roadway segments is as Fatsos, oh faded, two million eight hundred and forty three thousand dollars. Severe, two million eight hundred and forty three thousand dollars oh other visibility injury, one hundred and fifty nine thousand nine hundred dollar R complaint of pain, ninety thousand nine hundred dollars. Property damage onto, fourteen thousand nine hundred dollar source, Highway Safety Manual I locations with faded and severe injury crashes would have a higher E P D O vatu compared to locations with less severe injury crashes. Figure three presents the E P D O value of intersections and roadway segments in the city. Folsom LRS P underscore zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page twelve page fifty seven city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tocal Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. The top three intersections with the highest E P D O vatus are. The intersection with the highest E P D O value was Whitto Creek Drive and Oak Avenue Parkway, oh with an E P D O vatu of five hundred and seventy three, three crashes totate, one faded crash, two severe injury crashes. Greenback L N and Fatsom B T V D slash Fatsom Auburn RD, with an E P D O vatu of three hundred and four, eleven crashes totate, two severe injury crashes, two other visibility injury, seven comp taint of pain. OE Bidwet ST and Orchard Drive, with an E P D O value of two hundred and nineteen, four crashes totate, one severe injury crash, two other visibility injury, one comp taint of pain. The top three roadway segments with the highest E P D O vatus are. The roadway segment with the highest E P D O vatu was Prairie City RD between US fifty and the road two eight oh oh north of White Rock RD, with an E P D O value of three hundred and fifty eight, five crashes totate, one severe injury crash, two other visibility injury, one comp taint of pain. Fatsom Lake Crossing between Gun Range RD and Fatsom Dam RD, with an E P D O vatu of oh three hundred and seventy seven, three crashes to that one faded crash, one severe injury crash, and one comp taint of pain. Fatsom Lake Crossing between Gun Range RD and Fatsom Auburn RD, with an E P D O vatu of one hundred and ninety three, three crashes totate, one severe injury crash, one other visibility injury, and one comp taint of pain. Folsom LRS P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirteen page fifty eight city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tocat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Orangevale figure three, citywide intersection roadway segment E P D O map line. RJPTL, IRQTILRFL Dorado Hills I R I F, I three one. A I L, O T S O A O plus C L four I R missiles as if I bat, and Glenboro T two hundred and forty nine L T G D R I S three Q ors eighty four underscore US fifty I I county boundary I J Folsom city boundary Fatsom LRS P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs slash X Parkway RN one I T D slash. E L H O P O T L, backslash ankle R R R R S E underscore T T I dollar dash colon I net zero zero comma five one I two miles intersection E P D O six to twenty two I forty oh forty one to one hundred oh one hundred and one to three hundred tons three hundred and one to five hundred and seventy five segment E P D O minus six to twelve dash one thirty four L four one thousand one hundred and one to two hundred. Two hundred and one to three hundred and sixty page fourteen city of Fatsom January twenty twenty five page fifty nine February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Four tin rare white tiriroes the fatowing sections contain the resets of the safety data analysis process which include evaluation of the city of Fatsam's faded and severe injury, K and S L, crashes compared against the statewide K and S L crashes. Other evituations inkshitted are crashes by cause, pedestrian, and bicycled crashes, and primary caudizion factor. This is a general comparison of the citywide table to the statewide to gauge the general I trends within the city. Four point one severity level knowing the impacts of the crash, the injuries or type of damage which occurred, is a key part of assessing the environment and safety factors around the site of the crash. The National Safety Counts it divotop the cabco injury scale, which is frequently used by TAW enforcement for tacifying injuries. The cabco scale is referenced buto. K faded R A severe injury R B other visibility injury R Q, comp taint of pain R O, no injury, property damage ante, Tab D one presents crash severity by face a tidy type intersections and roadway segments. Eighty percent, eighty oh slash D of crashes occurred at intersections. The remaining two oh oh slash oh of crashes occurred at tong roadway segments. This trend is tipicat for urban areas with high traffic votums and more densely spaced intersections. Tab D one, crashes by severity, twenty twenty two zero two three one severity fatal intersection crashes oh slash oh ten slash oh roadway segment crashes oh slash oh five one oh slash oh severe injury thirty one two oh slash oh twenty three other visibility injury one hundred and seventy two one oh oh slash oh seventy complaint of pain four hundred and eight two fifty slash oh one hundred and two property damage one oh thirty four six thirty slash oh two hundred and twenty three O N T Y total eleven thousand six hundred and fifty nine ninety percent four hundred and twenty four source, State Food Tunt integrated traffic records system, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, five oh slash oh seventeen oh slash oh twenty four oh slash oh fifty three oh slash oh twenty percent totate crashes oh slash oh thirteen one oh slash oh fifty four three oh slash oh two hundred and forty two one twenty slash oh five hundred and fifty one two fifty slash oh one thousand two hundred and fifty seven sixty one oh slash oh two thousand and seventy six. I zero zero percent one percent, one zero L O, of crashes recorded in the study. Period were fatal, and three oh slash oh resulted in severe injuries. Crashes resetting in the various severity tables are presented in figure four and figure five. Fatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five docs page fifteen page sixty city of Fatsam, Annuity twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Figure four, crashes by severity, faded and severe, thirty five thirty one thirty twenty five twenty three twenty fifteen ten I five five zero fatal injury severe injury I intersection R roadway segment, source. S T A T W E D E T Integrate E D T R F I C R E C O R D S system, two zero twenty to two hundred and two three. Figure five, crashes by severity, other injury, complaint of pain, and property damage ante, one thousand two hundred one thousand one thousand and thirty four eight hundred five hundred four hundred I I one hundred and seventy two two hundred and seventy zero other visible injury I four zero eight L zero two complaint of pain I two two three property damage only I intersection I roadway segment source. State old D E T N T E G R E D T R A F I C records S Y S T E M, twenty twenty to two hundred and two three, Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page sixteen page sixty one city of Fatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Low Key Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Figure six on the fatowing page illustrates the injury crashes throughout the city, and figure seven presents the same crash data in a heat map format. Figure I illustrates the fatal and severe injury crashes. The top three roadway segments with the highest number of crashes are: Oh Greenback R D, Fatsam B T V D to Scott Sue, five crashes are Prairie City R D, U S fifty to the road two thousand eight hundred north of White Rock R D, nine crashes. Fatsam Lake Crossing, Fatsam Auburn R D to Gun Range R D, four crashes the top three intersections with the highest number of crashes are: Rlern Point R D and Ebidwet S T, twelve crashes Ulren Point R D and Prairie City R D, twelve crashes. Greenback Lane and Folsom Boulevard slash Folsom Auburn R D eleven crashes Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page seventeen page sixty two city of Fatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Low Key Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. I Orange Vale. Figure six, injury crash map, two oh two oh two oh twenty three, I T line I I Q B A O O. N E A dollar L Domdo Hills I C O I L O T S O N one A plus, L Miss S S R P P, bat, L backslash L D P asterisk E E, P L W slash I L C, Senior L L E plus dash plus Q A P O, slash, zero zero point five two miles I I underscore T Folsom Historic District Le Ken City of Folsom Roads. Crashes, Tim's data, major arterial minor arterial, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, U S fifty asterisk clochol reocta address, dash dash Folsom City Boundary L County Boundary Folsom L R S P zero one J forty two oh twenty five dot docs page eighteen page sixty three city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four C I W of Folsom Tow Cat Road Safety Plan and F eight E zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item number five. Orange Vale C figure seven injury crash heat map, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, I I I I R R T B G E N at Eldorado Hills E, L, I L T James Mississippi Bat Folsom College O A three O E T two B O, L Stair Rainbow Rodeo Park plus Q G O zero equals, R, E, A D C asterisk P Fu L R R, M tow O T zero zero point five L two miles I I L Folsom Historic District percentage city of Fatsam asterisk O U O, arterial major minor arterial C lol clal sear torad U S fifty heat map, Tim's data, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, sparse, dense I R Folsom City Boundary R Count Y Boundary Fatsam L R S P. Zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page nineteen page sixty four city of Fatsam, Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tow Cat Road Safety P N and slash I E I February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Figure eight, faded and severe injury crash map, two oh two oh two zero two three one I I I line I Orangeva L E L E S Lake E E G S plus B R A R R H G, T F C E Saint Folsom Lake Colleg, T I Mississippi I A A R I I R D, E L P L, Y M four Q E T plus H Glenboro S F E D dot O equals O, two hundred and forty nine feet S D I plus of one O. Backslash R D city of Folsom Roads major arterial, minor arterial, collector dash asterisk local road U S fifty Folsom L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs zero zero point five one oh fatal crash oh severe injury crash Lee Folsom City Boundary T I County Boundary page twenty page sixty five N A Eldorado Hills A backslash, R R O. Six B O J two dollar miles city of Fatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Four point two G D of Fatsam Historic K and S L crashes compared to statewide the California Strategic Highway Safety Ten, S H S P, focuses on sixteen chat eng areas identified by the S H S P executive leadership and steering committees after an in-depth anadesis of California K and S L, faded and severe injury, crash data as wet as an extensive statewide outreach process that involved hundreds of diverse traffic stakeholders around the state. Tab D two contains a comparison of the city of Folsom's K and S L crashes to the statewide K and S L crashes based on Swittr's data F ROM the two thousand and ten to twenty nineteen. Tab D two presents that the city of Fatsam has historically been higher than the statewide average in the fatowing emphasis areas, aggressive driving, impaired driving, and lane departures. The city of Fatsam has also been above the statewide average by a smatter margin for the fatowing, young drivers, intersections, aging drivers, and distracted driving. Tab D two also presents the summary of the chat eng areas and percentages for the city and statewide averages. Tab D two, city of Fatsam K and S L crashes compared to statewide K and S L crashes CAL dot I Fornia S H S P chat eng areas statewide average percentages city of Fatsam percentage difference aggressive driving the C L W of Folsom thirty three point one fifty three point five twenty point four impaired driving two S point three thirty nine point five fourteen point two lane departure forty three point three forty nine point seven six point four young drivers thirteen point one seventeen point two four point one intersections twenty three point six twenty six point eight three point one aging drivers twelve point four thirteen point four one point zero distracted driving five point zero five point one zero R percentage of K and S L crashes lower in Folsom bicyclists eight point three eight point three zero point zero work zones one point four one point three minus zero point two. Motorcyclists twenty one point zero nineteen point one minus one point nine comma K A T V I C L dot E S six point four two point five minus three point eight occupant protection fourteen point two ten point two minus four point zero pedestrians nineteen point two twelve point one minus seven point one driver licensing twenty four point seven nine point three minus fifteen point four source, traffic record eighteen. Dot no F C percentages would not add up to one oh oh percent, as a fatity or severe injury could have involved multiple challenge areas, I E, a young diver that was one Z I'm paired and D U N restrain and ed. Sylphonia S H S P does not H A V reported crash data for the fatowing two chaltenge areas, emergency response and emerging technology asterisk diver licensing data of a tab D for faded crashes onto trauma fatality analysis repofting system, FARZ, Fatsam L R S P dash zero one. One four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty one page sixty six city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tow Cat Road Safety P N D B slash F R. F zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item E, number five. Four point three Office of Traffic Safety, O T S, rankings the California Office of Traffic Safety, O T S, publishes annual reports ranking agencies of simeter size bethere crash profit. Tab D three presents how city of Fatsam ranked I N T H E two zero two two O T S rankings. The Z O two two O T S rankings tested one hundred and four cities in the state in order of number of crashes in each category. O T S notes that number one in the rankings is the highest, or worst, and that cities are onto compared to other cities that are within the population group. Compared to other cities of simeter size, fifty comma zero 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 one to one hundred thousand P opt, in twenty twenty two, Fatsam ranked among the top hat fin crashes inviting motorcycles, underage drinking, and speed related crashes. Tab D three, Fatsam O T S ranking zero Z Z L crash category victims kit injured O T S ranking totate faded injury alcohol invited had been drinking driver twenty one had been drinking driver two L minus thirty four motorcyclists pedestrians pedestrians one five pedestrians sixty five plus bicycled bicyclist fifteen composite crash category two hundred and seventy three twenty nine four fourteen eighteen five one two eleven zero one hundred and thirty five faded injury crashes seventy three slash one oh four six nine T one zero four two hundred and sixty one thousand one hundred and four six hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and four five hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and four one zero zero, one one zero four seventy seven slash one oh four seven six T one zero four eight eight T one zero four one zero one T one zero four sixty six slash one oh four O T S ranking speed retated nighttime, nine P M to two fifty nine A M, hit end. Run type of arrests Dalaris's fifty four twenty three eleven arrests two hundred and forty three four hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and four seven hundred and eighty one thousand one hundred and four eighty seven slash one oh four O T S ranking eight hundred and sixty one thousand one hundred and four four point four. Primary G O L dot de zeron factor the tedding crash causes during the study period were unsafe speed, five forty two comma two sixty slash oh point one, traffic signets and signs viotations, two hundred and eighty two, one three percent, you've known, two hundred and thirty six, eleven point four A slash O, and deriving you enter the I N F U N S, two hundred and seven ten percent. These trends are presented in figure nine and are consistent with Table E two, which identified aggressive driving as the top emphasis area. S city of Fatsam twenty twenty two O T S rankings, California Office of Traffic Safety, accessed, Anuri twenty twenty five Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty two page sixty seven city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsorn Tow Cat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Figure nine, crashes by primary caudizion factor not stated, fifty one twenty slash O unsafe staffing or backing, fifty two comma thirty slash O unsafe lane change, one oh two comma fifty slash O other improper driving, one sixteen comma sixty slash O other than driver, twenty six, one oh slash O wrong side of road, twenty six, one oh slash O unsafe speed, five hundred and forty two, twenty seven oh slash O auto R slash W viotation, one seventy three comma ninety slash O improper turning, one hundred and ninety seven one hundred slash O traffic signets and signs two eighty two comma fourteen oh slash O driving under influence two oh seven, one oh oh slash O unknown, two hundred and thirty six, one twenty slash O source fatolda integrated traffic records syst slash. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. The fatowing crash causes accounted for test and one oh oh of crashes individually and three point two percent in totate, pedestrian violation, pedestrian roviotation, other hazardous movement, fatowing tutusli, improper passing, other, and hazardous parking. The primary caudizion factors which contributed to K and S L crashes are presented in figure ten buto. The most common P C Fs are consistent with the P C Fs observed in crashes of A severity, unsafe speed, traffic signets, and signs, and unknown Fatsom L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty three page sixty eight city of Fatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Figure ten, K and S L crashes by primary caudizion factor other than driver, not stated, one, two oh oh one two oh slash O unsafe starting or backing three comma four oh slash O wrong side of road one comma two oh slash O unsafe lane change, three comma five percent oh. Unsafe speed, one nine, twenty eight oh slash O other improper driving four comma sixty slash O auto R slash W violation five comma seven percent oh improper turning, five comma seven oh slash O driving under influence, six comma nine percent oh. Unknown, six comma nine percent oh. Traffic signets and signs, thirteen comma nineteen oh slash O Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty four page sixty nine city of Fatsam, Annuity twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Four point five highest occurring crash types according to the city's crossroads database. Approximately two thousand and seventy six crashes occurred within the city of Fatsam during the F R year study period. As shown in figure eleven, the most common crash types were rear ends, fatload to ziti by broadsides and hit object crashes. Approximately one oh slash oh of crashes did not have a reported crash type. The most common K and S L crash types, shown in figure twelve, were hit object crashes and broadsides. Vutnarapki road users, pedestrian and bicyclists, accounted for two oh oh slash oh of K and S L chishes. Figure one one, crashes by type, twenty twenty two zero two three one six hundred five hundred and forty five five hundred four hundred and sixty seven four hundred and five four hundred three hundred and sixty one three hundred two hundred I I one hundred one hundred seventy one fifty three zero slash dot O O T dot. Asterisk A O T. Star. T source. State use slash I D E T integrated traffic records system, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. I three eight eighteen eighteen I E, C T F L asterisk plus asterisk dash U and twenty nineteen figure twelve, K and S L crashes by type, twenty 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 three, fifteen thirteen ten eight eight seven six, three two zero dot. Dot T, dot A T U U. Dollar three, asterisk source statewide integrated traffic records system, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. F O Sum L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page two five page seventy zero asterisk F city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tow Cat Road Safety P N G and A dot E L E, zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item number five. Four point six aggressive and impaired driving crashes aggressive driving was a contributing factor tour four oh oh slash oh of all crashes in the study period, eight hundred and thirty five totate, resetting in three faded crashes and twenty three severe injury crashes. Aggressive driving crashes ink should behaviors such as unsafe speed fatowing too closity or disregarding traffic signals and signs. Aggressive driving crashes occurred most commonly at intersections. The three intersections with the most aggressive driving crashes are O E bidwet S T and Broadstone Parkway nine Arlen Point R D and Prairie City R D nine O E bidwet S T and Broadstone Parkway eight. The three roadway segments with the most aggressive driving crashes are a white rock R D between Oak Ave Parkway and E Bidwet S T four R Prairie City R D between U S fifty F ramps and D W Y N slash O Mangini Parkway three a white rock R D between Oak Ave Parkway and E Bidwet S T two impaired driving crashes ink should A T T crashes where. There was any evidence of drug or alcohol used by the driver. This is different from impaired driving statistics in that drivers do not need to exceed the tagity defined threshold of intoxication to be considered. Caltrans considers any eve of alcohol consumption to have a potential impact driver responsiveness and decision making. There were two hundred and twenty one impaired driving crashes between two oh two oh and twenty twenty three three of which were fatal and twelve of which resettled in severe injuries. Figure thirteen but oh shows T distribution of aggressive and impaired driving crashes across intersections and roadway segments. Figure thirteen aggressive and impaired driving crashes eight hundred six hundred and eighteen seven hundred six hundred S zero zero four hundred three hundred I two hundred I five seven one hundred aggressive one hundred and fifty nine I sixty two impaired intersection T segment source. State old D E I N T E G R A T R F I C R E C O R D S system twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. The three intersections with the most impaired driving crashes are. Witto Creek R D and Oak Ave Parkway three. Righty S T and Sutter S T two O Blue Ravine R D and Wright Y S T two there were fourteen roadway segments each of which had one impaired driving crash fatsum L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty six city of fatsum Anuri twenty twenty five page seventy one twenty twenty four city of folsom local road safety plan D B slash F R. F F five zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item E number five. Figure L four presents a map of aggressive driving crashes throughout T city white figure fifteen represents this data as a heat map. Figure sixteen presents a map of impaired driving crashes in fatsum white figure seventeen represents this data as a heat map. Aggressive and impaired driving crashes can be seen occurring at onth primary arterias inkshitting E Bidwet S T Arlen Point R D and fatsum B T V D F O sum L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty seven page seventy two city of fatsum Anuri two oh two five twenty twenty four city of folsom local road safety P N G and D dot Fiji zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item number five. Orangevale E figure fourteen aggressive driving crash map two oh two oh two oh twenty three I I I L I N E I H D dot two F A B O ran dot H N O A R L Dorado Hills I C A L A I C E S F Folsom Lake College N P L. Miss Mississippi by lack R D Glenboro two hundred and nineteen feet dot root O L U percent four O D E T R L six O X O G P Y sicamo D dot slash L dot low dollar D I zero zero point five one city of folsom roads major arterial minor arterial collector local road underscore U S fifty I folsom city boundary R county boundary O aggressive driving crashes Tim's data twenty seventy to twenty seventy three two miles fatsum L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty eight page seventy three city of fatsum january Y twenty twenty five twenty twenty four C I W of folsom towcat road safety plan N six comma eight E February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Orangevale A P figure fifteen aggressive driving crash heat map twenty 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 three I I line I dot O E plus natural N O at A dollar El Dorado Hills I L equals U F I I I I I Fallcom L College I I I Mississippi T I bar I La La C Glenboro two forty nine feet S D R D A E dot O slash A A Q O F dot. Equals no G P F L W I M G C L a zero zero point five city of folsom roads major arterial minor arterial collector dash local road underscore U S fifty aggressive driving crashes sparse dense I J Folsom city boundary R L county boundary Folsom L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page twenty nine page seventy four O I S O A B A A fourteen T one two miles city of fatsum Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of folsom towcat road safety plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. And five dot fee I nine I Orangevale C figure sixteen impaired driving crash map two zero two oh two oh two three C O line eight dollar it R C Y F R B natural ran H N four A dollar El Dorado Hills I three east Saint Folsom Lake collect T I T I Mississippi I I I I low K G L E N Bo rough Q A F R U two hundred and forty nine L T Q D Rariarda Q F Q E dot R C G F N O N. In. Lee Pi plus Ralph I I zero zero point five one city of folsom roads major arterial minor arterial collector local road U S fifty I L Folsom city boundary county boundary O Ilmri episire dot D A R four two Inaco C Rosas three E S fatsum L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty page seventy five O T O E E S B D O equals two miles city of fatsum annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of folsom towcat road safety P N G and star dot R I G zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item number five. Orangevale figure seventeen impaired driving crash heat map twenty twenty to twenty twenty three I I line I H dash backslash F and B net R D L Rammer. N A El Dorado Hills S G C E S R Folsom Lake Codig A T T S O A O seven Q backslash Bemis Mississippi Berke Glenboro S U F two four E L T G D city of folsom roads major arterial minor arterial collector dash local road U S fifty fatsum L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs R D G D C E B P K Y R N at E T Q O F O I zero zero point five impaired driving crashes sparse dense I I J Folsom city boundary I L county boundary page thirty one page seventy six backslash. One two miles city of fatsum Anuri twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Four point seven votnerapki road user crashes figure eighteen presents a breakdown of vulnerabti road user crashes. Pedestrian and bicycled crashes were most common at intersections though bicycled crashes occurred on roadway segments more frequently than pedestrian crashes did. Figury one eight V U T N E R A B T E road U S E R C R A S H E S two oh two oh two zero two three one sixty fifty four fifty forty six forty thirty twenty seventeen ten seven zero P D Stria and bike intersection I segment source statewide integrated traffic records system twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. Figure nineteen illustrates the indications of vulnerabti road user crashes within the city. Additional information on pedestrian and bicycled crashes is provided in the full towing sections. Bicycled and pedestrian crashes accounted tour two Q O slash O of A T T K and SL crashes though they make up sixty slash O of it crashes in the study period. Four point seven point one pedestrian crashes over the span F rom two oh two oh to twenty twenty three at totate of fifty three pedestrian invet crashes A Q R R E D across the city. Of the pedestrian invet injury crashes two were faded six were repuffed with severe injuries twenty one with other visibty injuries fifteen with comp taints of pain and nine with property damage on T. Four point seven point two bicycled crashes there were seventy one bicycled invet crashes that occurred across the city over the study period. Of the bicycled invet injury crashes two were falal four were reported with severe injuries twenty nine with other visibty injuries twenty six with comp taints of pain and ten with property damage on T. F O sum L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty two page seventy seven city of fatsum Anua Y twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of folsom local road safety E plan G D six for F zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item I E number five. Orangevale I five one five curry one nine V U T N E R A B T E road U S E R C R A S H E S two oh twenty two zero two three one N E take I I I I backslash R backslash 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 Q B and I O E N. N O L S L Domdo Hills plus E three I T O B seven S O G backslash I B backslash T dot I A Mississippi Bed I I Luda Elementa dot Weiss O O L O C T E E Y I K W Y R F L at O T equals backslash I A N G R N zero zero comma five two mileg Walmart backslash I central shopping T center underscore I I L R L four onsminr Folsom central business Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs Lemby Park District page thirty three legend city of folsom roads major arterial minor arterial collector local road isocycle crashes eat astray and crashes foot. R Folsom city boundary L colon. Count five boundary U S fifty city of fatsum Anuri twenty twenty five page seventy eight February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Four point eight crashes by lighting condition the majority of crashes occurred during daytime seventy oh slash O fatowed by crashes occurring at night but with tidying present. A minority of crashes occurred during dark conditions with no tidying present. Figure twenty presents a breakdown of crashes by tidying conditions figure twenty crashes by lighting condition twenty twenty two zero two three one dusk dawn forty six dark no street lights dark street lights not functioning four not stated two dark street lights five hundred and sixteen daytime one thousand four hundred and fifty nine source statewide integrated traffic records system twenty twenty to twenty twenty three four point nine. Crashes by time of day crashes were taughted based on the time of day. The frequency of crashes peaks in the afternoon hours between four P M and six P M. The number of faded and severe injury crashes peaks between three P M and five P M figure twenty one presents the percentage of crashes occurring by time of day. Fatsum L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty four page seventy nine city of fatsum january twenty twenty five comma one one I R I dash T R R R L I two ledge F L L L L zero L N I S Y L L L. L P L nil dot G and I F F I zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item G I number five. Figure twenty one crashes by time of day twenty twenty two zero two three one one comma four percent twelve percent T zero percent C J C oh eight percent three I J six percent O D four percent two percent zero percent one two three four five six seven eight nine one zero one point one twelve L three fourteen fifteen sixteen seventeen eighteen one to nine twenty twenty one two hundred and twenty two thousand three hundred and twenty four time of day K and SL crashes crashes source statewide D E T integrated traffic C records system twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. Four point one zero crashes by year the number of annual crashes has increased during the study period. Year twenty twenty experienced the fewest crashes of any year within the study period with crashes trending upwards between twenty twenty and twenty twenty three dot the number of annual K and SL crashes at so increased from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three increasing from ten in two oh two O T O two four I N two zero two three dot L T is positive teveth return to pre pandemic traffic patterns I N two zero two L influenced the number of crashes occurring. Figure twenty two presents crashes by year inkshitting crash totals from the previous L R S P study period twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. Figure twenty two crashes by year two thousand and fifteen to twenty thousand two hundred and thirty one seven hundred six hundred and fifteen six hundred and nine six hundred five hundred and seventy five five hundred four hundred six hundred and twenty five hundred and seventy three five hundred and seventy five four hundred and eighty four three hundred and ninety seven three hundred I L two hundred one hundred T four seven two thousand and nineteen zero I two thousand and fifteen two zero L six two thousand and seventeen two thousand and eighteen I twenty 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 one twenty twenty two twenty twenty three I crashes I K and SL crashes source city of Folsom crossroads traffic collision database twenty fifteen to twenty twenty three. Folsom L R S P dash zero one. One four point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty five page eighty city of fatsum Anuri two oh two five twenty twenty four city of folsom towcat road safety P N E and five point eight I eight colon zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty five item number five. Annual A crash data from the twenty twenty one L R S P was reviewed to provide more perspective on the city's crash trends. Annual crashes were graduated dictining F rom two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen there was a stite increase in two thousand and nineteen fatowed by an E R D three O L O reduction in twenty twenty. The number of annual crashes has graduated increased back to two thousand and fifteen tevets since the twenty twenty covid nineteen pandemic and lockdowns the number of annual K and SL crashes varied F rom two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen peaking in two thousand and nineteen. K and SL crashes reached their minimum vatu in two oh two oh and increased annual A D N T I peaking again at a higher value in twenty twenty three. Figure twenty three represents the percent of totate crashes that occurred in each year. Figure twenty three crashes by year two thousand and fifteen minus twenty twenty three T B percent one comma six percent L four percent percent one point zero percent B percent six percent four percent zero percent two thousand and fifteen two thousand and sixteen two thousand and seventeen two thousand and eighteen seven thousand and nineteen twenty 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 seventy one two thousand and twenty two twenty twenty three asterisk crashes asterisk K and SL crashes fatsum L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty six page eighty one city of fatsum Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of folsom towcat road safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Five pool C Erica S M E N T five point one. Production Kim Tehorn's public engagement ten F for the city of fatsum's local I roadway safety ten included strategies and activities to reach a broad cross section of the community throughout the city. The ten inkshitted one round of engagement focused on identifying intersection slash corridor needs and opportunities which is further detailed in this report prior to taunching public facing effort the city of fatsum and Kim Tehorn teams met to discuss and to now key project data variables and how public engagement wout inform and support these efforts. One the outreach occurred between August and October twenty twenty four and consisted of two main components L and person pop up events historic fatsum farmers market two. Ontine public input September seventh twenty twenty four Leru November five comma twenty twenty four a fatsum traffic safety study survey and interactive map hosted on social pinpoint P U T K and G A J M and off I C I A T T Y O N C H Ed on Septum B E R seven twenty twenty four L R with the first pop up event head at the fatsum historic districts farmers market. The in person engagement. Activities consisted of two pop ups during September and October at two occurrences of the farmers market event. I Kim Tehorn staff supported A T T the in person events. Staff engaged with attendees of the farmers market to gather feedback and capture community concerns on comment cards and encouraged feedback through the on teen survey share your input on Folsom traffic safety study and interactive map poster board was stationed at in person events attowing participants to visualize the study area and T R R dot R O I dot R R C dot L N backslash R R D R O R R L dot revilly R N L rear R colon colon L regilre N I R R R dot L R N R ifal N R L L I R I O dash O D L dot R T R J I D R R I L reelre it N L R R. I D dot N R O R X. R realre four T R four I E R Prince I D dot R R R R N I backslash one I R L R I R I J N for three G R R O X or R N O colon R ulri Altis numbered dots where they experienced traffic related hour R N R I T slash N T R R R R F R asterisk R R R R B dot address L T R two R J dot lel re chattangs or wout benefit from safety improvements in those areas. An additional poster board was stationed at anodo comma dot R I R R I I dot R J N L R dollar R R comma dot J R L N R R I X F Irenkrakdifn dot pi backslash R R one C underscore eleven S Rui dot D or one T R underscore D backslash webs road one R R dot plus I I N I dot slash R L U O dot H sixes Bosri Folsimo are person events that presented various traffic retated chattangs for input. Attendees could test stickers on these chattangs to signify that they experienced those chat eng. Attendees could test stickers on these chat tangs to signify that they experienced those chat eng s throughout the city The Ontine Survey provided in mutipti languages and interactive mapping tout was at so made public on Septum E R seven twenty twenty four and remained open for eight weeks until November five comma twenty twenty four The Ontine Survey was promoted through the city's various communication chan nets inkshitting a webpage E news teters and see the pattern cards slash poster boards created for the pop up events Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty seven page eighty two city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N take the traffic safe it'll pursue well February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five Take the traffic safety survey comedy at T G Folsom Traffic Safety Study W F L S L T the city of Folsom is develop P R N G a local roadway safety plan to eliminate fatalities and severe injuries Have traffic safety concerns Help inform the city of Folsom line R R dot I T Y evolopes a safety plan Five X J I R R R O J R I clayak L R N I R L T L R rare flowric G H L T L L T L slash dot urban R R Y L L L C dot L F N L Four T law opelum L L P or by colon in room T H T R I L I L D Backslash A N I S L L R J L fall A J fill O L I I dot lack L L N one I E at rear at Sid V O L Fall Sorn Local Road Scan Harold Safety Plan Phi Iro dot R I L dot R I R R I Berli I L A R T I T L T I R Phi R I H T T P S slash slash W W W dot Folsom dot A dot A slash L R S P I J R I R R L R Zach Bosch R Z Bosch at Folsom dash C A dot U S Fatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page thirty eight page eighty three city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five And six fee I five point two L in person event summaries the following is a detailed account of the two in person pop up events head throughout the service area L E A I E six A ilk E six L L A R C E five pop up event at Falsom Farmers Market September seventh twenty twenty four pop up event at Folsom Farmers Market one zero slash one September twenty twenty four five point two One historic Fatsam Farmers Market September seven comma two oh twenty four eight o'clock M one P M Kim Tahorn kicked off the engagement pop ups for the city of Fatsam at the historic Folsom Farmers Market A charge proportion of attendees at this event were Fatsam residents The two poster boards were up on dispte and had moderate engagement Engagement yeet did Approximate thirty fifty totate P O P surveyed oh thirty two poster board map interactions oh thirty three poster board category interactions are a hand few T of very passionate residents with mutipti concerns and suggestions oh distributed over forty postcards with a Q R code to the Ontine Survey five point two point two Historic Fatsam Farmers Market October nineteen twenty twenty four eight A M to one P M the second pop up event was similar in nature to the first Attracting primariti Folsom residents who were a treti in attendance of the Farmers Market Unmarked versions of the same two poster boards were on dispte at the event and received stitey lower engagement This event turned out the following engagement oh thirty five totate P O P surveyed oh twenty two poster board map interactions C seventeen poster board category interactions Distributed Roddy fifteen postcards with a Q R code to the Ontine Survey Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point two oh twenty five dot docs page thirty nine page eighty four city of Fatsam Anuri two oh two five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat I Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five Five point three online community survey responses the in person and Ontine engagement resulted in a total of four hundred and thirty seven survey respondents Pop up events at the F Armaz Market yeet did mostly in person responses white the Ontine Survey received the most input after the E made to Fatsam residents was sent out with tinks to the website and survey Over eight hundred unique users visited the interactive website with an addition at three hundred and forty nine Ontine Surways taken and three hundred and eighty two site specify C comments recorded Five point three point one A A A A online map and survey engagement one comma twenty one one T O T L site six sits eight hundred and nine unique visitors three hundred and forty nine totate surveys com tet three hundred and eighty two community map contributions figure twenty four So see at pinpoint website statistics performance summary one thousand four hundred and forty four one thousand two hundred and eleven visits eight hundred and nine visitors seven hundred and thirty one contributions three hundred and fifty two contributors Zero followers two hundred one hundred and fifty one hundred fifty zero July eighth J L I fifteen U one twenty two I U L August twenty ninth August fifth twelve O C nineteen August twenty fifth September second Sep O G S P September sixteenth twenty three five P thirty O D zero seven zero T fourteen O T twenty one O D November twenty eighth U four November first one plus five backslash six plus visits and visitors I Contributions and contributors and followers the Ontine Survey contacted F rom various E F efforts revealed that most respondents Nine two zero L D indicated that they reside within the ninety five thousand six hundred and thirty zip code Survey respondents were asked to choose the top three chat tangs they face while traveling through Fatsam The top three chat tangs experienced by survey respondents were one aggressive driving speeding Two stop sign or red type the rotations and three distracted driving Many of the other chat langues tested on the Ontine Survey received arch numbers of votes The following charts show the responses of the survey questions L T shout be noted that question three attowed respondents to see tech three chat tangs they faced but did not ask respondents to rank them Therefore the totate number of responses is shown and is more than the totate number of com tet surveys for the aforementioned reason Fatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty page eighty five city of Fatsam January eighty twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five One what is your connection to the city of Folsom I live in Folsom Two hundred and ninety nine I work or volunteer in Folsom My child attends a school in Folsom I T T I R S other F type your answer six I shop or visit social or recreational destinations in Folsom Six I travel through Folsom with a destination outside of the L none of the above zero I go to school in Folsom Zero one hundred two hundred three hundred four hundred two How do you typically travel throughout the city of Folsom Drive alone T carpool with others seventy two walk Iro bike or scooter L Q I sa I use a mobility device like a walker or wheelchair Zero light rail bus or paratransit zero zero fifty one hundred one hundred and fifty two hundred two S zero three hundred three Please identify the top three e haul enges you face when traveling in the city of Folsom respondents are presented with a drop down of the following options Aggressive drivi eng speeding stop sign or red light running violations distracted driving traffic signals Poor visibility signal timing conflicts with I electric mobility e bikes e scooters etc unsafe A N D and pedestrian crossings long crossing distance deteriorated Other type your answer bicycle lanes narrow slash missing bike lanes at intersections I three I twelve ninety three signage and striping unclear or faded additional signage Street lighting nighttime visibility Ada accessibility two zero I I dot S seven fifty one fifty one hundred and forty eight Lee ninety seven one hundred one hundred and fifty two hundred and fifty two 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 hundred two hundred and fifty three hundred Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty one city of Fatsam Annuity twenty twenty five page eighty six twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five Four choose all that describe you white I I I prefer not to answer I eight zero N three L Asian Pacific Slender or Native Hawaiian Hispa N I C slash Lottie no slash A slash X two tons Native American or Alaska Native L S Middle Eastern slash Arab L Q African American slash black two something else I T Y P your answer zero zero fifty one hundred one hundred and fifty Lee two hundred and eight two hundred two S zero thirty five to forty nine fifty to sixty four I sixty five or older I I prefer not to answer eighteen to thirty four I under L eight zero five How old are you T I two L Z S six T T I I las R thirty six L zero three zero twenty forty sixty eighty one hundred R two zero one hundred and forty one hundred and sixty six What is your gender Female male I prefer not to answer gender nonconforming or nonbinary something else type your answer I S S one Zero zero fifty Iro one hundred one hundred and fifty one hundred and ninety eight two hundred two hundred and fifty Folsom L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty two page eighty seven city of Fatsam Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five Five point three point one point one K teams from the survey question Ontine surveys contacted from various efforts reveated that over ninety percent of the respondents T V within the city of Fatsam Z L P code ninety five thousand six hundred and thirty Most respondents noted that they mainly depend on vehicles as their primary mode of travels When asked to identify their top three traffic safety chat eng areas when it came to travting throughout Fatsam Most individuals noted concerns with aggressive driving stop sign or red type running the rotations and distracted driving Other K teams from the three hundred and forty nine com tet surveys are as fatlos J aggressive driving and speeding Concerns about speeding drivers especially on main roads and near residential areas Z need for improved traffic signat management will soos with traffic tight timing and the prevalence of red type running Three safety in neighborhoods and near skirts concerns about traffic near skirts and neighborhoods specific alti near inventory skirts Four bicycle and feet astray and safety underest in improved bike lanes pedestrian paths and safe traits Five east Bidwet Street traffic a recurring mention of issues with traffic and speed on east Bidwet Street Six enforcement of traffic routes suggestions for stricter enforcement particularty around speeding and traffic type by rotations Seven intersection and signage improvements recommendations for terror signage and better intersection and contralt Eight public transit and alternative transportation support F or more public transit options and I N F R structure re for non car travels G dangerous driving behavior specific concerns about rectess or distracted drivers on major roads Ten road maintenance and infrastructure a need for better road quality and safe infrastructure for at road users especially at high traffic points Five point three point one point two community map the Ontine Public Engagement Website at so contained a community map where respondents see teched locations within the city where they experienced trap I C safety issues and see tech the specific issue S F romatist of prepopulated chat tangs or type a more specific issue The community map received three hundred and eighty two posts F rom one hundred and forty five unique contributors Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty three page eighty eight city of Fatsam Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five Figure twenty five so see at pinpoint community map Ontine interface at Folsom Traffic Safety Study do you live or work in the C T T Y O S Alcent T F so We would like to hear about your experiences Irev Jane Vican and walking C R U S N B O de alerted Airport letter M C D E S U slash L F N work to arld S S the saf Eddie L A N eight E S that T E D U E R S F D Evo cab profile input L N two advise Two take zero U R S R U Y down tree lol slash U backslash refi ital dot L takes about five olnuts to complete all respor says slash ill remain confidential Thank you for your timing blue a blind foodie toffees and pot tilt fifty sturdy For entry T N or Mason D N D del dills about that's F oft on tact Zachel boss D T Z boss at Folsom C A S At E E E F I one J ultra plus equals a sitr S heights and A A at I R E Q fours at B S R B L F One I G T T R R colon at F D nine O M colon underscore I L X L twenty nine L six at R P I number I Zero number I T Dorado H L L T S L F F I T L O L O the community map received a totate of three hundred and eighty two contributions A few areas within the city saw concentrated responses from residents The following indications were among the areas with the highest density of map pins placed Turn Pike Drive between Natoma Station Drive and Ash Catway slash Fontages Way East Bidwet Street between Marin Point Road and U S fifty east Bidwet Street and Oak Avenue Parkway Righty Street between Rainbow Bridge and Sutter Street L N addition to the predefined issues The community map attowed contributors to see tech other as an option when tasting a marker at a specific indication on the map Below is the summary of responses to the question asked to contributors when tasting a marker Folsom L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty four page eighty nine city of Fatsam Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four C I W of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five What traffic safety challenge S do you experience at this location Select all that A P P I Y Aggressive driver behavior speeding running stop signs Pedestrian safety E G no sidewalk long crossing distance other Please type your response below traffic signal congestion signal timing poor visibility distracted driving bicycle safety E G no bike lanes narrow bike lanes Signage slash stripe I N G lacky N G unclear S I G H T distance block slash obscured Street lighting not Ada compliant I I is two hundred and twenty seven L seven J construction work zone safety zero zero I J Nine I seventy nine two hundred and seventy five one hundred and forty four C fifty one hundred one hundred and fifty two hundred I two S six two hundred and fifty three hundred from the other comments received from the online map Key areas of focus and themes were as fatlos one Speeding in residential areas many respondents are worried about vehicles exceeding speed limits especially near homes and choose slash S two T Jane safe intersections certain intersections are frequently mentioned as hazardous due to poor signage lack of traffic surnials or obstructed views Three pedestrian saf Eddie slash soos with crosswalks being ignored by drivers insufficient cross long times at signals and a lack of sidewalks in some areas Four cyclist safety concerns about inadequate bike eans drivers not sharing through road properly and unsafe conditions for cyclists Five distracted driving reports of drivers using mobile devilses or being other news inattentive I E A D I N G to U N S F D rivy N G C O additions Six aggressive driving behavior incidents involving tailgating abrupt lane changes without signaling and road rage Seven poor road conditions complaints about potholes uneven surfaces and inadequate street tube D N G affect D N G safety eight Traffic signat timing surnials not synchronized properly I eating toe congestion and risky behaviors like running red lights Nine heavy traffic near schools congest land during drop off and pickup times creating unsafe situatlands for children and pedestrians I zero Tons efficient traffic law enforcement a perceived need for increased police presence to deter speeding and other violations Fatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty five page ninety city of Fatsam January eighty twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five A T T feedback received from the Ontine Map was cross referenced with the crash locations for signatized intersections Non signatized and roadway segments and was used to inform recommended safety treatments presented in the following sections of the report Figure twenty six public comments compact with crashes Orange Vale I four line D E I I Q H N A L Dorado Hills N T asterisk three Q miss R P bar lot Glenboro J Q H entered well shopping T Folsom till central I I K Business District A C L L dash C colon colon V I Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one One four point twenty twenty five dot docs O O N T F S I T zero Zero A F O L F L I slash P F L P L Y I M Q C G A T N zero zero point five two miles crashes twenty twenty to twenty twenty three I sparse A underscore R underscore colon L dense Online public comment page forty six city of Fatsam January eighty twenty twenty five page ninety one twenty twenty Online public comment page forty six city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five page ninety one twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokal Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Six cutter measures the following sections provide more information on potentiate engineering and non-infrastructure safety countermeasures that might address conditions that were observed to contribute to crash activity in the city. Six point one engineering countermeasures white there are many safety countermeasures that could be used to systemicati improve roadway safety. The following sections provide countermeasures for consideration by the city of Fatsam. The following sections contain a description of crash modification factors, C M Fs, and crash reduction factors, C R Fs, associate good with the engineering countermeasures tut box. Six point one point one crash modification factors and crash reduction factors when identifying potentiate systemic safety improvements, it is important to look at C M Fs for the proposed improvements. The C M F method is found in part D of the H S M. C M Fs are defined as the ratio of effectiveness of one condition in comparison to another condition and represent the relative change in crash frequency due to a change in one specific condition. L N other words, a C M F is a mutiplicative factor used to compute the expected number of crashes after implementing a given countermeasure at a specific site. Countermeasures with C M Fs less than one are expected to reduce crashes if opted, white those countermeasures with C M Fs greater than one are expected to increase crashes. Figure twenty seven illustrates the definition of C M Fs figure twenty seven C M F calculation number and S F. I underscore X T R L underscore J one Lee comma foot A five T I I dot I J with L L Lee I dot T M I R J I T L three colon I L I. Dot I L I I five J L L T without F T I I D L four L I point one I C M F equals one point zero I I expected to have no impact on safety I C M F one liter L expected to reduce crashes C M F one point zero I I expected to increase crashes I the C M F method is used to catcutate the expected number of crashes by taking the observed number of crashes and mutip tying those crashes by the. Up to cap C M F for the proposed countermeasure. L T is recommended that C M Fs be opted to a minimum of three years of crash data for urban and suburban sites and five years of crash data for a rural site. Figure twenty eight is a sample catcutation of the C M F method with one C M F being opted to a particular site for a sync year. Figure twenty eight, C M F method sample calculation ten point one crashes slash year X zero point nine one, C M F equals nine point two crashes slash year. A reduction of zero point nine total crashes per year and a C R F of nine percent Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty seven page ninety two city of Fatsam Janua. Y twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Lock A I. Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. A C R F is similar to a C M F but stated in different terms. A C R F is defined as a percentage of crash reduction that might be expected after the implementation of a given countermeasure at a specific site. Figure twenty nine shows how a C R F is calculated in relationship to a C M F. Figure twenty nine, C R F catcutation C R F, one C M F, slow caution shout be used in the C techion of appropriate C M Fs. The following guidance shout be considered when C techting C M Fs for predictive crash analysis. C M Fs shout be C teched from the H S M part D, the Local Roadway Safety Manual, a manual for California's local road owners, version one point five, April twenty twenty, or F rom the Federate Highway Administrations. F H W A, C M F tiering house website, H T T P slash slash W W W C M F T R I N G S C O R G. Read the countermeasure abstract to determine if the C M F is up to cap to the proposed improvement. Onto C M Fs with a four star rating or higher should be considered for use in analysis. R be sure the C teched C M F is up to cap to the set of crash data being used for analysis. R some C M Fs may onto be up to capable to a subset of the crash data. The application of mutipity C M Fs can overestimate the expected crash reduction. Unless each C M F addresses independent crash types, mutipity C M Fs shout not be used. L T is suggested that no more than three independent C M Fs be opted to a particular site. The countermeasures proposed in this document were chosen because of their effectiveness in reducing crashes. Six point one point two engineering countermeasures toolbox the systemic improvements identified as most tickety effective for Fatsam are listed in table six. And ink should a wide range of countermeasures that can be implemented in phases where appropriate. Many of these proposed countermeasures have a treaty been implemented in the city, ink shitting but not timid to signet timing coordination, protected T F turn phasing, pedestrian countdown signet heads. Conversion of stop contraded intersections to roundabouts, installation of speed feedback signs, and enhanced visibility signing, I E LED enhanced signs, and striping treatments. The C M F indicates how effective the countermeasure is at reducing crashes. C M Fs and C R Fs have been provided for reference to aid the city of Fatsam in understanding potentiate reductions from crashes by different countermeasures. Cat rounds funding levits for each countermeasure is at so provided. L F the C M F or C R F is tested as not available, this means there is insufficient data, a study does not exist, the countermeasure is new or emerging, or the countermeasure was not evaluated for a safety impact. Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page forty eight page ninety three city of Fatsam Lenuri twenty twenty five February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Twenty twenty four, H L five L fee asterisk countermeasure table four. At so addresses pedestrian bicycle E Folsom engineering countermeasures tut box crash crash reduction modification factor, C R F. A T T factor, C M F, C R F obties to nighttime pedestrian cat rounds funding cost to implement and bicycle on statel intersection tightening retro reflective backplates improve signet I timing, coordination, on statel. Left turn lane. Add left turn phase protected T F turn phase convert signet from pedestal mounted to mast to R M convert intersection to roundabout, from signet. Convert intersection to mini slash compact roundabout, from signal, on stat raised pavement markers and striping instant signs with lead borders as advanced warning on stat high friction surface treatment, H F S T, on statel. Raised median on approaches on stat T pedestrian median fencing on approaches pedestrian countdown signal heads pedestrian scramble advanced stop bar before crosswalk and bicycle box one four O D I F Y sign at oh provide a leading pedestrian interval, L P R. Flashing yet L dot arrow signet ahead warning signs curb extensions on stat erased intersection add intersection tightening on statel A T T way stop contrade convert intersection to roundabout on stat L T slash upgrade intersection warning slash regulatory signs upgrade.
Twenty five page ninety four February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Twenty twenty four oh number L number L T R K countermeasure instead of stashing beacons at stop control intersections instead of L T stashing B Chans as advanced W A running tier site triangles instead high friction surface treatment H F S T instead of. Spited tri stands on minor road approaches instead of raised median on approaches direction at median openings to restrict turning reduced left turn C O N F ticked. Our cut intersections instead of T right turn time instead left turn time pedestrian refuge stand instead of slash upgrade pedestrian crossing with enhanced safety features rectangle rapid stashing beacon R R F B pedestrian sign at or pedestrian high density activated crosswalk hawk retro reflective strids on signposts crosswalk lighting code heard.
Raised median create direction I median openings AI instit fashi. NG beacons in advanced warning or curve or intersectional instit pedestrian median fencing instits tighter islands on minor road approaches instit RFB instit by attain long-term improvements. Five-plus years, our instat teft turn ain and are at left turn phase convert signat from PD stat mounted to mast arm. Instatl high-friction surface treatment instatl signat. Curb extensions and but bouts will remove slash retocate fix subject out of tier. Recovery zone instat separated by gainst instat accederrati on slash dea sitterati on aids. Add two-way left turn tain slash emptiment road diet. Insta pedestrian refuge island or raised pedestrian crossing or convert intersection to roundabout Fatsam. LRS P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty-five dot docs page fifty-eight page one hundred and three. City of Fatsam, January twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four CW of Folsom. Loke road safety PN February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. Eight lookler vlen tat long gular eight point one. Eventuation the success of the LRSP would be eventuated using the pre-diminary process out time but oh. This process would be use FUT to ensure proper emptimentation of goats and to determine when updates are needed. Progress meetings are recommended to be conducted to track the implementation of the tin. In addition, the success of the plan will be evaluated on a recurring basis. An update to the tin shout be considered after no more than five years. Continued monitoring and record and golf traffic incidents on local roadways by law. Enforcement. Maintain a list of focus areas where there are transportation safety concerns, based on historical crash data. Eight point two implementation emptimentation of the LRSP can be accomplished through several avenues ink shitting divotopment of improvement projects, the establishment of new POCs and programs, and de-votopment slash strength NING of re-tated ons HIPS with STA cohold ERS. With regard to projects, the following identifies potential F focus areas for the city in the near to midterm. Eight point two point one near and midterm focus areas. The opportunities identified in this LRSP provide more of the systemic countermeasures that can be opted within the city. Over the next three to F five years, it is recommended that the city concentrate its efforts on the following emphasis areas. Aggressive driving. Hit object crashes. Pedestrians and bicycles and addises conducted at the citywide tevet indicated that these factors were some of the most F frequent influences contributing to K and SL crashes within the city. The countermeasure opportunities previausti discussed in this safety tin for both systemic and project-specific improvements can be used as a basis F or divotoping projects at occasions where addressing these focus areas would be of the most benefit. Projects that address these focus areas can be divotoped with a high benefit-to-cost ratio by up tying citywide crash rates. Add a wing competitive projects to be divotoped even at sites with TIT to no direct crash history, but with conditions that might contribute to F future crashes. Eight point three potaki update. The city has taken meaning few steps to prioritize road safety and has successfully integrated these approaches into numerous CIT-wide programs, POCs, and practices. This LRSP includes an assessment of both the cities existing and the identified opportunities to enhance programs POCs and practices to address road safety more comprehensively. Appendix F provides a Fatsam LRSP dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page fifty-nine. City of Fatsam, January twenty twenty-five page one zero four, two zero two four CW of Folsom. To cat road safety PTA and February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. Summary of the existing programs, POCs, and practices, as well as the recommended enhancements. The city and stake hotters shout cataborate to discuss these potaki modifications and set tangibdi goats for emptimentation. Eight point four updates to the loke road safety tin the following steps outline the process for updating the LRSP after no more than five years. One, access necessary data. Roadway and intersection classification slash configurations. Average daily traffic volumes, collected from counts where available. CO slash SLSLan history two, net fork screening. Calculate the CCR for each roadway functional classification and intersection control type. Rank for each facility type I, roadway segment, one, primary, two, secondary, three, local two, intersection, one, signalized, two, unsignedized, three, select locations. Tidentify the location with a higher CCR than what is typical of comparable facility types within city. Analyze the collision history and work with local officials to understand any significant exterior influences on the location for countermeasures. LJ Sync and Dollar Neering Countermeasures Toolbox. Appendix D, and Non-Infrastructure Toolbox Flav D four. Identify potential countermeasures that can be opted to the local twin and CE safety fetal recess. Calculate the benefit and the cost of each applicable countermeasure using Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSTP, tool and identified countermeasures. LF those are not available, refer to other resources such as VCMF Clearinghouse and follow a similar calculation, using twenty-year cost and benefit numbers. Additional items the city can do to keep the LRSP current are, one, when new or reconstruction projects arise, use the data process to identify occasions with similar characterless flux and apply countermeasures which proved effective to, proactively update its roadway and transportation design standards to incorporate systemic safety improvements identified in the citywide LRSP. F O Summ LRSP zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty-five dot docs page sixty page one hundred and five. City of Fatsam, January twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four Cerey of Folsom. Loke road safety PN zero two slash eleven slash. Twenty twenty-five item number five. And six I dot FFI eight point five. Funding competitive funding resources are of a tabdi to assist in the divotopment and implementation of safety projects in the city of Fatsam. The city shout continue to seek a vtabdi funding and grant opportunities from loke, state, and federat resources to accede rate their appetite to emptiment safety improvements throughout Fatsam. The following is a high-tevet introduction into some of the main funding programs and grants for which the city can opti. Eight point five point one Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP. The Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP, is a federat program housed under Fixing America's Surface Transportation, FAST, Act. This program apportions funding as a ump sum for each state, which is then divided among apportioned programs. These F texib funds can be used for projects to preserve or improve safety conditions and performance on any federated highway, bridge projects on any public road, facities for non-motorized transportation, and other project types. Safety improvement projects eligible D F or this F funding include. New or upgraded traffic signals upgraded guardrails. Marked pedestrian crosses ALX California's TOCAT HSIP focuses on INF RAS structure projects with national recognized crash reduction factors. Norm attorney HSIP CAT for projects is made at an intervat of one to two years. The obticent must be a city, a county, or a tribat government feed radie recognized within the state of California. Additional INF formation regarding this program at the federal eve is of a tabdi at. HTTPS slash slash safety dot FO dot 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 gov slash SIP slash. California-specific HSIP information, ink shitting dates for upcoming CAT for projects, is of a tabdi at. HTTP colon slash slash WWW dot 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 CA dot gov slash HQ slash locati programs slash GP dot HDMT. Eight point five point one point one. HSIP analyzer as of twenty twenty-one, the preferred way to CAT cutate the BCR for the HSIP program uses Caltrans' HSIP and addisertude in the form of an active PDF. The PDF toot contains four sections which are used to calculate the benefit-cost ratio for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. This toot can be accessed on the Caltrans website. HTTPS slash slash dot dot CA gov slash programs slash TOCAT assistance slash Fed A I M P rovment P ragra M slash APPY now N D state Pro nine RAM slash Highway Safety Projects appropriate for other state grant programs can be an addist using life-sight benefit cost analysis modet, CAT B slash C, which has a much more comprehensive benefit assessment toolset. Eight point five point one point two HSIP etigibility per chapter nine of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Funds are eticable for projects that improve the safety of its users on any public road or public de-owned bicycled or pedestrian pathway or trade, or on tribat ends for general use of tribal members. HSLP tooks F or safety projects that can be designed and constructed expeditiously and do not require significant acquisition of rights of way. Proposed projects shout not require extensive Folsom LRSP underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page sixty-one. City of Fatsam, annuity twenty twenty-five page one zero six, two zero two four CW of Folsom. Loke road safety PN GD six, F RLE zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty-five item IE, number five. Environment at review and mitigation. Additional information on the HSIP project selection criteria can be accessed on teen. Benefit-cost ratio applications HTTPS slash slash DOT dot CA dot gov slash hyphen slash MEDIA slash DOT MEDIA slash progra MS slash TOCAT assista NCE slash documents slash GP slash twenty twenty. Lhasapenidzir instructions twenty twenty BCR. PDF. Funding set asides, non-benefit-cost ratio applications, HTTPS slash slash DOT dot CA. Gov slash dash slash MEDIA DOT DOT MEDIA slash P ragra MS slash Taka assista NCE slash D document slash SIP slash twenty twenty. Lhasapenidzir instructions twenty twenty SAPDFA HSTP project etigibility is subject to the California SHSP. The SHSP identifies statewide chat NG areas that correspond to safety concerns at the statewide eve and potential countermeasure to address them and determine HSIP project etigibility. SHSPs are divotoped in conscience with FHWA requirements. Eightest of etigibdi project types can be seen in the current HSIP analyzer. More information can be accessed on teen at the CAT rounds HSIP grant website. I'm P rovme NTP ragra M slash APPY now eight point five point two. CAT rounds Active Transportation Program, ADP. CAT rounds Active Transportation Program, ADP, is a statewide funding program, created in two thousand and thirteen, consulted at tier Xaverai feklarad and state programs. The ADP funds projects that encourage increased mode share for walking and bicycling, improve mobility and safety for non-motorized users, enhance public heat, and decrease greenhouse gas emissions. Projects etigibdi for this funding include. Bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure projects. Bicycle and pedestrian planning projects, E point nine safe routes to school. Non-infrastructure programs, education and enforcement, this program funding is provided annually. The ADP CAT four projects typical attorney comes out in the spring. Information on this program and psyches can be found on teen. HTTP colon slash slash WWW. DOT. CA dot gov slash HQ slash loca I progra MS slash ADP slash eight point five point three. State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP. The State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, provides state and federat gas tax money for improvements both on and off the state highway system. STLP programming occurs every two years. The programming site begins with the retease of a proposed fund estimate, fought wed by California Transportation Commission, CTC, adoption of the fund estimate. The fund estimate serves to identify the amount of new F funds of a tabdi for the programming of transportation projects. Once the fund estimate is adopted, CAT rounds and the regionate tanning agencies prepare transportation improvement tents for submitat. CAT rounds prepares the interregional I transportation improvement program, LTLP, using interregional improvement program, LLP, funds, and regional agencies prepare regionate transportation improvement programs, RTLPS, using regional I improvement program, RLP, funds. The STIP is then adopted by the CTC. F O Summ LRSP dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page sixty-two page one hundred and seven. City of Fatsam, annuity twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. City of Folsom, loke road safety PN G and, two dot EE zero two slash eleven slash twenty twenty-five item number five. Eight point five point four California Senate Bit one, SB one. SB one is a transportation investment to rebid California by fixing neighborhood streets, freeways, and bridges in communities across California and targeting fund stored transit and congested trade and commute corridor improvements. California's state maintained transportation infrastructure would receive rawdy hat of SB one revenue, twenty-six dollars vision. The other hat would go to TOCAT roads, transit agencies, and an expansion of the state's growing network of pedestrian and psych routes. Each year, this new funding would be used to tack deaf heard maintenance needs both on the state highway system and the loke road system, ink shitting. Bike and pedestrian projects, dollar TOL Mitchin OLHLS funding wilt go to cities, counties, and regional transportation agencies to build or convert more bike paths, cross susas slash KS, and sidewalks. Slash tis a significant increase in subsidy for these prolecs through the Active Transportation Program, ADP. Local planning grants, dollar ZSMU in eight point five point five. California Office of Traffic Safety, OTS, grants. This program has funding for projects retated to traffic safety, ink shitting transportation safety education and encouragement activities. Grants obtications must be supported by TOCAT crash data, such as the data anaddised in this tin, and must relate to the following priority program areas. Alcohol impaired driving. Distracted driving. Drug impaired emergency medical seruses. Motorcycle safety. Occupant protection. Pedestrian and bicycle safety. Police traffic serial sees. Public relations, advertising, and marketing program. Roadway safety and traffic records eight comma five point six. Safe streets and roads for ATL, SS4A. The SS4A grant program is a federat program established by bipartisan infrastructure law. A totate of dollar S ish and are of a tabdi F ROM twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six in the form of tanning grants and emptimentation grants. Grant obtications for projects that emptiment the safe systems approach, such as those retated to speed management, improvements in underserved communities, and vutnerabdi road users, are encouraged. Emptimentation grant projects must be identified in an obticent's quattifeying safety action tin. The SS4A set certification etigibility worksheet describes the required elements of an action plan and can be accessed at worksheet dot PDF. Additional information about emptimentation grants can be found at HTTPS slash slash WWW dot traensportation. Gov slash GRANTS slash SS4A slash implementation GRANTS Folsom LRSP underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page sixty-three page one hundred and eight. City of Fatsam, January twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. City of Folsom, TOCAT road safety plan February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. Nine next res reps the city has competed this LRSP to guide the process of future transportation safety improvements for years to come. The data-driven analysis process identified crash types, retated primary crash factors, and locations of crashes. Atso as part of this process, emphasis areas were identified to inform and guide further safety eventuation of the city's transportation network. These emphasis areas would guide corridor improvements, education programs, and capitat improvements for the city. Using the anaddised data and outputs F ROM this LRSP, the city can. Opti for future grant funding to emptiment INF RASTR to re-improvements throughout the city E activiti seek other F funding opportunities to improve SAF EDI for ATT moto I users. Cataborate with established stake hotder, safety partners, and neighboring municipalities as improvements are made to create a cohesive transportation network are alternative evituate existing and proposed transportation safety programs and capitat improvements to design a safer transportation network in the city. The city yet so tends to have the city counts it formati approve and adopt the local road safety tin, LRSP, in twenty twenty-five. Based on C Urant Catra NS Gu idtines, the city would tend to update the LRSP within F five years, in twenty twenty-nine or earlier. Fatsam LRSP zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty-five dot docs page sixty-four page one hundred and nine. City of Fatsam, annuity twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. City of Folsom, TOCAT road safety plan February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. Appendix Ale Ruer Secron near one K screening resolres Fatsam LRSP dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and ten. City of Fatsam, annuity twenty twenty-five February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. O signalized intersections, bidwulst in Iron Point RD OSOM LVD in Grittenbak LNA bidwulst in Oak Avenue Parkway I bidwulst in Broad's Tony Pfiy Wailu Ravine RD and Prairie CN RD I bidwittles in Wales DR, Natoma ST and Green Valley RD three Reenbak LNA slash Uke Natoma DR and Madison Ave E bidwulst in BLUI Ravine RD BLUI Ravine RD in Oakoff New EPX WFO six OM Boulevard and BLUT Ravine RD RI I dot E Y S T and Glen DR OB OM Boulevard and Natoma Station DR zero six DM Auburn RD and F O six OM Uke Crossin six. Ak Haveno PKW and S Lexington DR. Bidwelt five T and Viaphilict, bidweltst in Placerville RD zero six DM BTVD and Park Short DR OIOM Auburn RD and Oak Avenue Parkway Ron PO F E RD and Willard DR Ron Point RD and Mikado DR IL HIT Rock RD and Prayer CMY RD three Reenbak LNA and American River Canyon DR Oak Avenue Pruwai and American RV ER Canyon DR Rilti SI slash Green LNA and Scoffest Alsum Auburn RD and Fatram Dam RT Lou Ravine RD and Riley ST I bidwittles and Creekside DR I C OEGI three ESEII asterisk. SP I O two hundred and thirty-six zero one ten one one zero 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 seven. I nine zero zero one XLZ zero point zero four eight two zero zero two ten five zero six zero zero T zero 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 ninety one two one eleven oh dot oh one I three hundred and ninety-three zero two seven four one three zero one zero one zero zero one six zero one zero X ten oh dot oh two I asterisk zero zero one five zero three hundred and ten I zero 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 one one zero one three ten oh dot oh two seventy zero zero two eight three two forty one zero 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 three zero nine zero point zero two fifty nine zero zero I five two X zero 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 fifty thousand and thirty nine oh point zero nine two hundred and fourteen zero one seven five one one oh oh zero oh oh zero four oh zero one one X nine zero point zero one seventy three oh zero four five zero one zero 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 I one five zero one one eight minus zero point zero one two hundred and sixteen zero two five zero L zero one zero 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 six zero one two zero eight oh dot M fifty three oh zero one seven one two two zero 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 oh four oh one zero eight zero point zero two sixty seven zero zero four one one oh zero 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 one six two zero zero oh seven minus zero point zero one fifty two zero zero five zero XI zero 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 Y three zero 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 X seven oh dot oh five fifty six zero zero three four one zero three zero 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 three one hundred. One X five point zero two thirty-six zero 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 oh zero 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 five one one zero zero six minus zero point zero two forty-one zero zero L five one one zero 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 four one thousand and one five zero point zero five twenty-six zero one four one oh zero 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 oh four ten one X six minus zero point zero two four tons zero oh one five two zero oh zero 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 four zero one one six minus zero point zero one forty-one zero zero one five one oh zero 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 one one five minus zero point zero two thirty-five zero zero one four ten three oh zero 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 one four one zero zero oh five zero point zero one one hundred and ninety-four oh one three one oh oh one oh one zero 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 one zero one one five oh dot oh two forty oh zero two three zero one zero 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 four oh zero zero Y five oh dot oh one forty zero zero two two oh one one X oh zero 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 five zero dot M thirty oh zero zero two one zero zero one zero oh zero zero one zero zero one oh minus zero point zero eight one hundred and ninety-eight zero two one zero Y one one zero 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 one hundred twenty-four minus zero point zero four one hundred and eighty-three zero zero three zero one zero 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 one zero 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 X four zero point zero one twenty-nine zero zero one three two one one zero. Zero 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 four zero point zero three one eight eight zero one two zero oh two zero 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 oh one three one 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 zero four minus zero point zero four twenty-nine zero zero one three zero one zero 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 four minus zero point zero two twenty-nine zero zero one three zero twenty million ten thousand four zero four one hundred and ninety-two zero two one two zero zero one zero 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 ten zero zero four zero point zero three thirty-four zero zero two 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 oh ten oh zero 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 oh three oh zero zero oh PDU, aggressive, broadsides. Potential signal mod proj lirans. Broadsides. Verb bus vintercedio dark crashes potential bike box slash trail condion improvement project PDU, crash rate. Projects should be on system with CBD planning F odds EPDO, head ons, aggressive driving. Shared row with county. Undae may, including transit preemption. Crashes, potential bike MB evaluation. Broadsides involve NB and Upehickles. TS improvements. The severe crash was dull, UM, other use crash rate is closeto EPDO, low crash rate. Potential project tow control wrong way driving NB one hundred and eleven T two slash three slash twenty twenty-four. Page one hundred and eleven Kimley Horn February eleventh, twenty twenty-five item number five. Oh, bidwulst in Cottage PXW, bidwittles in Power Center DR Ron Point RD and Path Dial PKW O six OM Boulevard and Iron Point RD, zero six DM Boulevard and bidwulst Alsum Oern RD and Pine Brook DR T I L E Y S T and Ebedwulst F O six OM Auburn RD and Fossum Dam RD E I dwelst and Montrose DR Iron Point RD and Grover RD in Natoma ST and Fossum BKE Crossing, Ak Haveno Parkway and Creekside DR I bidweltst and Kirk's Fit RD, bidwulst in White Rock RD unsignedized intersections I atomast and Scott five T Ron. Pointerd and Peak Loop OSOM Boulevard and Woodmere RD S R E E N B A C K LNA and F O six Om Ranch Dr F O six OM Auburn RD and OA. Ace slash Vance LNE bidwelt five T and Orchard DR E bidweltst and Harrington Way Fossum Auburn RD and Stapford LNE NATO Mast and Briggs Ranch DR TR I LLOW Creek DR and OA Ave PKW slash Azali and Iron Point RD Mike Rock RO and Savannah P, W slash Payne RD Ron Pointerd and Dry Creek Crowed one. Local critical crash rate differential two. Equivalent prophefri damage only Kirk she's four oh point six, G four 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 three three I three 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 oh four point zero four dash zero at zero dot M minus zero point zero five zero point zero five minus zero point zero five minus zero point zero four oh dot OS minus zero point zero four point zero five minus zero point zero five minus zero point zero four minus zero point zero six oh dot oh two five zero point one three five oh dot CL four oh dot oh two four oh dot oh two four zero point zero two four oh dot oh five four oh point zero three three zero point zero one three oh dot M three zero point one zero three oh point zero three three zero point zero X three zero point seven eight backslash FEI dollar I five E I E S and SFE is each nineteen zero. Three two hundred and two twenty-nine zero zero I three one oh twenty-four zero oh zero zero one eighteen zero 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 three zero zero eighteen zero 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 one 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 twenty-three zero zero one two zero zero eighteen oh zero zero three oh one twenty-seven zero zero two one seventy-one eighteen zero 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 one zero two twenty-three zero zero two one one zero 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 I two zero one twenty-three zero zero one two oh zero one twenty-three zero zero X two one zero one one hundred and eighty-one zero TTTX one zero one three zero zero one four zero zero.
28 Finish the barrier. 29 This shout have an over slash under pass fourth pedestrians. There is terrible visibility due to trees. Thirty new apartments shout exit on cavit. Congestion is a tretty bad enough. Pedestrian crosswalks with F rust rate drivers and be dangerous in this overly congested area. Thirty one curbs need to be painted to reftekt existing no parking zones on either side of crosswalk. Many cars ignore the signs making it dangerous for pedestrians to cross due to lack of ninety two. Thirty three thirty four. Thirty five Sight regarding oncoming traffic I see. Etectric bikes and scooters creating pedestrian safety issues roundabout is confusing as it has stop signs. Roundabouts should not have stop signs. Popt use Meredith as speedway to bypass roundabouts on Parkway D R excessive S B Dan stop sign run in Gatte Tong Batdwin Dam Road. Posted speedies twenty five miles per hour, but major issues with speeding, and many toes cats with at most getting rear end when stopping at stop signs because Popt are accustomed to towing through the stop signs. Thirty six drivers consistently run the stop sign at Oak Avenue and Batdwin Dam Road, making this intersection very dangerous for residents trying to turn on Oak Avenue F Rom Batdwin Dam. Traffic enforcement at this intersection loud be appreciated. Ninety seven There needs to be a four W A Y stop at this tinted intersection thirty eight. Intersection needs a roundabout. The traffic is generally very tight and stop control is inefficient. There is more than enough right of way to install roundabout with dedicated right turns and sink through ain's L F property designed to account for eventuative atopment on the S E corner it would be more than adequate. Thirty nine Increase the merge tan distance on E Beelrin Point from N B Prairie City forty. Was a poor choice to instead stop Kant Rotz. This intersection was begging for a row end about. Forty one. Left turn F Rom Knopfter to E B Haverhit is terrible. Bushes, vegetation on north side of Haverhit Comtedi obstruct view. Driver W B on Haverhit speed creating unsafe conditions. Solutions: Remove vegetation, posting signage of upcoming T intersection, or painting slash striping crosswalk F Rom bike trade on South Hurdy side of Haverhit to North Hurdy side. Speed humps or other physical I cat modifications would be dangerous. Forty two Traffic is unable to do a U turn on Bidwet. As a reset some drivers would make the U turn regard test sometimes resetting in a near Caudy signs with those making a right turn. Forty three E Beelrin Point to S B E Bidwet needs a dedicated right to R N lane to W B fifty. Forty four F M S students not using the crosswalk, cutting an F rond of cars to go down Stanton Court to access F M S. Forty five Faatsam mid shooters cross F Rom the corner of Tur Ravine and Fee Tower and skip the crosswalk by shooting across Fee Tower to Stanton Court to access the F M S through the track viet accessibility at the end of the Stanton Cut. So many toes cats. Forty six Drivers not paying attention to pedestrians or cyclists. Faatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and seventeen city of Faatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom I O K. Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Forty seven Majority of Popt try to go to northbound E Bidwet toking up the High Dollar Highway exit. I wish there is dedicated right turn tent beginning earlier to head P those drivers to make the right to R N forty eight. It got U turn slow. Forty nine Three lane off temp meeting Prairie City Road. Two theft lanes turn right onto the northbound Prairie City Road but drivers on right most ain often turning into the second ain of Prairie City. The right most ain can on to go to the right most ain, reminder is needed or the guide lane on the pavement fifty. Erdi warning signs to indicate the third lane would on to turn right fifty one. This traffic I see tight is a part of heavy traffic I see on E Bidwet during the rush hour. Pts consider providing intet slash shouted F Rom Other Street and slash or desapte the signat during the rush hour. Left turn into the business F Rom southbound E Bidwet caused too much societai impact. Fifty two Erdi sign for the thirteen for Naft bound is on to for Popt entering East Bu N D fifty fifty three. Poor pavement fifty four. This crosswalk tacks visibility and endangers the chitdrin. Fifty five The entire tank of Oak Ave from Pink Creek Nature Center to McDonald's is extremety dangerous F for pedestrians and bike riders, no sidewalk, bikain is narrow and in some spots, one side of biketain has a serious drop off. This is an extremely popular area for walkers and bike riders who want to access the nature trait and access the M R V R Parkway fifty six. With the new proposed over crossing connect to the Humbug Witto Creek Trai without a street crossing. Fifty seven Riadi a terrification to aggressive drive behavior, Cl Rivers tur tir grigl right F Ron or Bidwet to northbound Oak Common T fate to yeet to pedestrians, consider adding warning signs, F tashing yeto crossing tights, or other protection. Fifty eight Popular area F or deer to cross. L T woud head P if the Parkway hoa woud prune the bushes low so that drivers can see the deer before they dart into the road. Fifty nine Lack of sidewalk and bikain on subta sixty. Lack of sidewalk makes it hard to get to bike trade safety. Sixty one Stop sign creates C O N F fusion and impedes traffic I see veto, consider C O N V effting to traffic circ sixty two. Subt S T has become Faatsam B T V D commuter traffic I see almost A T T day long or cars racing from stop sign at Bidwet to stop sign at Natoma. There are one oh houses on this talk, in historic Faatsam. Needs residentiat and historic signs at both corners. Traffic won't let me out of my driveway or pass me idagadi when I try to exit. Cars speed by even with orange cones. I have to warn A T L workers on the transformer tet phone pot in front of my house to watch the road or get hit by cars. Cars need to be detered to Kton which is not residentiat. Subta needs to be protected as residentiat. Commuter traffic and speeders need to use Faatsam B T V D sixty three. Another spot where speeding cars slash trucks have no indication that there are pedestrians crossing over to trail on the other side sixty four. Need proper signage and a pedestrian traffic for drivers speeding down hit or up hit to slow down. This is the crossing for residents to cross over to horseshoe trail. Sixty five Needs a crosswalk slash stop sign sixty six. This is a high traffic I see crosswalk F or kids who attend Natoma Station Elementary. Cars speed here and do not pay attention to those walking. Need to find a way to control Faatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and eighteen city of Faatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Speeders. Have witnessed mat tipti chitdrin niardi get hit. Light up walk sign. Speed bump on both sides of the road. Something must be done. Sixty seven Chat tanging to turn theft on to Broadstone from Scotter because so many drivers don't F auto right of way laws and take turns at the stop sign sixty eight. Tin spot when trying to make a right turn. Sixty nine Speeding seventy. Speed, traffic on righty at Timson intersection seventy one. The veto of traffic slash congestion with so many pedestrians and young chitdrin getting to scoot is extremety dangerous. Cars drive too fast, don't make comtet stops, etcetera seventy two A tot of Popt use this intersection for scoot drop off and pickup. Many cars run the stop signs putting chitdrin's tivs in danger. Seventy three Crosswalk needs f tashing tights slash signage to make it more visibty to drivers. Seventy four S fat needs complete resodacing. Seventy five Lack of stop signs is dangerous. Every day I see chitdrin and addicts trying to cross this street and cars F T Y through without stowing down or stopping. Seventy six Drivers making right turn do not yeet to pedestrians or cyclists. Drivers do no yeet to cars making U turn seventy seven. This is a popular intersection for red tight runners. I wish the city could instattle cameras and find red tight runners. Seventy eight Diffi cut to turn right because there is a tin spot in front of Jack in the Box, and cars are speeding down E Bidwet S T seventy nine. It's niardi impossivity to turn into this shopping center, travting west on E Nathanra S T because merging cars don't seem to be aware that Popt might be trying to turn right into the parking tot. Eighty A T T of the Patatios intersections have the stop sign too far back. Drivers have diffi cutty figuring out whose turn it is to go. Eighty one Twice I have seen a car in the right tan wait for a bike to cross in the crosswalk, and then another car go theft around the waiting car to make a right hand turn and at most hit the bike rider. There shout on to be one right hand turn ain. Eighty two Noring stop sign and speeding eighty three. There is a bike trail entrance on the south side of Faatsam Auburn Road. Trying to cross over, either on foot or on bike, F Rom the Naft side is a big challenge due to the amount and speed of traffic on Faatsam Auburn. A traffic conrotted crosswalk would be a huge benefit eighty four. Popt speeding turipti and not stopping at stop signs eighty five. Many of the decorative rocks in the center divide are loose. I had one hit my car and it did one thousand five hundred dollar in damage. Eighty six Very hazardous for bikes slash peds to cross Tur Ravine going N B at the trade heads. Cars approaching intersection with the intention of making a right turn on red often do not stop before turning or look for bicyclists slash peds. Atso, rate road equipment talks the trade entrance on the N B side of Tur Ravine. Eighty seven Excessive speed by motorists. Constant red tight running. Dangerous to cross on a bike. Eighty eight Cross over F freeway traffic I see to reduce cross traffic and congestion. Or, add roundabout eighty nine. Add roundabout Faatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and nineteen city of Faatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Local Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Ninety Make a roundabout ninety one Dady truck with aggressive drivers who own the road even though there is a designated biketain atong righty towards Sutter Mid Scoot ninety two, Natoma Street F Rom righty to righty street is twenty five miles per hour nobody is driving the post speed timid no potus presence or tickets being given. Crosswalks aft a big issue crossing Natoma on foot very dangerous cars not yeeting to pedestrians tickets need be written and laws enforced. Ninety three Tas L L bikeway has no buffer and is adjacent to road with cars often speeding in excess of forty five miles per hour speed timid. This bikeway is used as a primary and direct route to a number of businesses and priest codes in the Natoma Station Shopping Center. Ninety four Needs improved visibility or crossing enhancements to direct drivers to the presence of pedestrians using the crosswalk. Drivers would continue through white kids are crossing. Ninety five Most drivers going toward Tur Ravine on righty do not reetise cars turn on to Krugshank. They atso hardy notice when pedestrians are trying to cross the street making it very dangerous to bike or walk across righty on to Krugshank. Ninety six Speed timid W A Y T O L low ninety seven. This pin is F or the hot east Natoma slash Faatsam Lake Crossing corridor. Speeding is a huge issue. Ninety eight We need a muddy use bridge or chenetta jet o elihu trail G G. No crosswalk where Trai crosses the road. Cars often speed through their one oh oh. Sign indicating that during scoot drop off hours it effect us make your right turn when dropping off their students. One hundred and one Cars speed in the area right next to the scoot and park deadaviri drivers go so fast down Greentaw Way. Residents drive tyk it's not right next to a school and park one hundred and two. Need cops every day mornings to catch speeders one zero three. Popt speed and never stop almost got hit many times one hundred and four. Merge tan into the entrance of the apactments one hundred and five. Cars racing and burnouts at nighttime one hundred and six. Cars talking driveways during school pickup slash drop off one hundred and seven. The speed here is much too high for a busy pedestrian slash bike crossing. Additionate pedestrian safety measures are need, especially since the outlets and rate station are nearby. One hundred and eight Red light runners one hundred and nine. Red light runners one hundred and ten. Students aggressive ida crossing against red tights causing traffic timus ther green tights one eleven. More notice ain ends. Drivers aggressive ida energy at task possibility second. One twelve. Ulte got U turns one hundred and thirteen. Why has a dedicated turn tan stid not been added coming from Broadstone Parkway from Vista H S to turn right on to Gotflinks Drive? The road was bid to accommodate it but yet it stid has not been done. One hundred and fourteen Speeding one fifteen. Bicycles slash pedestrian fate yours to stop, as required, before crossing, too many just dart across with no regard for safety Faatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and twenty city of Faatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. One sixteen. One hundred and seventeen one hundred and eighteen one nineteen. One hundred and twenty one hundred and twenty one. One hundred and twenty two one hundred and twenty three. Student behavior in this intersection, and unsafe cutting across N Lexingland after they cross, as they disperse in A T T directions to reach home and appropriate use of merge tan, aggressive cut across Oak Avenue to get to gym pedestrians crossing uncontrotted here, to access a trade, where they should not be crossing unsafi pedestrians slash bicyc crossing to Trai access street racing major traffic I see congestion during the high shoe eye release times can't make a U turn from the E Bidwet northbound. Lanes to get on to the westbound Highway fifty on ramp major traffic congestion during drop off and pickup times at the mid Scoot survey one. Two three. Four five. Six seven eight nine. Ten eleven. Twelve thirteen. Fourteen fifteen. Sixteen seventeen. Eighteen nineteen Please identify the top three challenges you face when traveling in the city of Folsom, other responses? Drivers turning F to cross doubt yeto tines. Vegetation and signs on corners talking seeing oncoming traffic. Traffic congestion on east Bidwet from Savannah Parkway through Rinpoint Parkway. L T severity backs up and is getting worse the more it fits in south of Highway fifty. Traffic the increasing slash high number of vehicles with front windows, and some winch yets, tack out tinted. I can't tet if they can see me when putting out in front of me. L S N T this tinting idagot? Red tight runners, and drivers not abiding by no U turn signs too many cars and P E O P T E in Faatsam. Too much traffic on one's lane streets. Too much congestion at major intersections. Faatsam B T V D under constant construction so traffic on subt S T is A T T commuters speeding. Subt S T is residentiat, but utilized tyka major B T V D drivers do not make comtet stops one, right turn on red tight two, at stop signs just a lot of traffic in the city drivers not F auto we N G traffic I see routes unsafe walking conditions for chitdrin near schools. Left turn signats shout be on ante ain is empty no signs regarding park with chitdrin at aim many kids going to school too much divotopment porti designed and dated intersections drivers turning right often fail to see slash yeet to pedestrians. Psychists frequenty fate to stop at intersections when required putting out from Tac Diamond Drive on to Iron Point Road can be scary. Visibility is very timid and cars go zooming down Iron Point. I strongly recommend a stop tight at that intersection. Faatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and twenty one city of Faatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Twenty Our roads, were not designed for the number of vehicles travting on them. Twenty one No traffic issues twenty two. Takes tongger to get on east Bidwet F freeway twenty three. Tin spots when trying to turn right and merge into the lane twenty four. Sto drivers, cars parked in bike lanes, cars using bike tans for right turns twenty five. Signat staying red when no one is coming. Twenty six Congestion twenty seven. Too many stop signs and traffic tights two toes together, tans talking visibility, too many crosswalks going down Gotflinks twenty eight. Bad timing of traffic I see tights. Row end about or other easy F toe traffic I see to make it smoother going twenty nine. Poor ten I N G at together thirty. None thirty one. Pedestrians aft a huge issue historic district Natoma Street to subta thirty two. Traffic congestion thirty three. Popt drive two sto, not the speed timid thirty four. Nothing it's a thirty five. I have tyved here since nineteen eighty seven. The potus don't ride tickets. They think they are too speciate for that. No consequence for bad driving, why care? Thirty six East Bidwet and Rinpoint intersection. Too many cars a the time because it is the primary access to Highway fifty and south of fifty. Thirty seven Home tests in the street or their dogs in the street thirty eight. Stop signs can be report ace with traffic tights on Broadstone Parkway. Stop signs are confusing at peak hour and cause deedis. Thirty nine Too much traffic and smat roads for the amount of growth seen in Folsom forty. Just getting around the town because of traffic I see and congestion. So much newbiting with tint regard to the existing roads and the additionate drivers. U N F Fortunately, it's getting easier to drive to Rose of it. We've tyved in Faatsam almost forty years and the charm is gone. Forty one Comtedi U N safe to ridy a bike or R U N on the street. My chitdrin must ride on the sidewalk. Cars don't yeet to bikes or pedestrians in crosswalks. Forty two The major intersections cross traffic is not visibty when another car stops next to yours. Pedestrian traffic not visibty either. The pedestrian crossing stripes need to be diamond shape across the intersection versus as they are now, which is rectangular. Hard to expten in words but a drawing loud dexpden much better. Exampt of bad intersections, Tur Ravine, and east Natoma, east Natoma and Gotflinks forty three. Too much traffic for forty four. Too many intersections in a short distance create backups. Poor tanning forty five. Too many stop tights forty six. Areas in need of a traffic tight, specify kadi, lemby and righty dot atso another stop sign on lemby at the first gidded rock circ or at atso N C T enough accessible parking spots. Forty seven Too many Popt for the streets. Why is this survey coming out now, it can't be fixed now. Horribt. Forty eight Waito man intersection soonab teto han tethi current veto wolf traffic wet beyond signat timing forty nine. Popt use Parkway drive as a speedway. Put in street bumps to slow them down. Faatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point two oh twenty five dot docs page one hundred and twenty two city of Faatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P T A N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Fifty Cars merging into traffic from shopping areas, without concern for traffic. Unctare, or misused, ain requirements, turn ante ain's, upcoming change. These are driver issues, not city issues, riadi. Fifty one Muddy use paths, bike and pedestrian, not tierdy mark to indicate where pedestrians shout walk, on the theft side. Is there anything else you woud tyk to share related to this surui? One I am most concerned about Popt driving aggressive idi and intentionally running red tights I see it everywhere in Faatsam, N C A. L T is an extreme danger to drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, anyone using roadways. Two When I travel down Faatsam the tights turn red when tight rail comes through even though we are both travting in the same direction. Addition attorney we shout not have a crosswalk at Iron Point tet atone two. Let them drive to the bike trail tyk the rest of. Three The traffic on Bidwet from Montrose to Mangini is horrific. I drive it every day twice a day to get to my babysitter. I tyved in M T view for a short white and it fits like I'm driving down E Camino. The tights are not synchronized the veto is terrible four. Woud be nice if there was a way for the city to recoup money through A T T the traffic viotations. Atso woud be nice if there was better tanning to provide room on the roads for the amount of Popt expected to tiv in this city. S American River Canyon Drive has many speeding cars especially going north from the four way stop at Crow Canyon and Canyon Rim. L T's a pretty straight shot F Rom there to the crest of hit in front of the Canyon Terrace Apartments. And stop sign runners six. Support public transit options seven. Very concerned about the congestion everywhere, especially E Bidwet. The intersection G of Scoot S T and Blue Ravine is very dangerous. Too much congestion. There isn't enough infrastructure to accommodate the number of G vehicles in the city. L T's I N F hurriating to drive here. South of fifty, needs more access points to cross to the north. The proposed new over. Crossings need to be priority. Ten We need more potus officers on motor cycle these eleven Faatsam has done a good job connecting traits for recreation, but has comtedi fate to connect housing to shopping slash work destinations. Twelve L F U station traffic potus at some of our busier intersections, you could easily hand out say Vera I red tight running tickets with at most every tight change to increase revenue. One three. Do rings scoot hoars in morning few C A Rs don't stop in stop sign in spite of seeing the chitdrin crossing. Fourteen Popt are constantly speeding and being distracted drivers through neighborhoods fifteen. Golf cafs, mini bikes, and dirt bikes on trade six. One Thank you for the survey. Faatsam is congested A N D tacking exits F Rom the F freeway. L T woud be nice to see Faatsam expand its roadways as quickly as the divotopments. L T seems tight the divotopments are taking precedent over the traffic safety and veto. Seventeen We do have issues with extended red tights white then enough street doesn't have a car in sight. Sensors may need to be recatibrated or if tights are on a timer they need to be adjusted away from peak hours. Eighteen The map woud and tea work for me, but the intersection of Kton Drive and Oxborough Doctor is a turipti tinted corner that woud greedy benefit from a simp stop sign at Glen Faatsam L R S P underscore zero one. One four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and twenty three city of Faatsam Janua, Y twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five one gram. Twenty twenty one. Twenty two twenty three. Twenty four twenty five. Twenty six twenty seven. Twenty eight twenty nine. Thirty thirty one. Thirty two thirty three. Thirty four, thirty five. Thirty six thirty seven thirty eight Remove the stop sign controls at Tarksvit Road and Bundrick Drive and instead a roundabout instead a roundabout at Tarksvit Drive and Broadstone Parkway. Both intersections has reta deidi tight traffic fetos and roundabouts woud be more efficient. Enla Not enough F P D presence. Popt are too comfortab breaking the speed timid. On Tur Ravine fahts are going ten to twenty miles per hour over. You rarely see anyone get putted over. One of the biggest probtem's I see is the timing slash sensors on traffic tights. Cars get frustrated catching every tight and even two attorney get mad and run tights speeding or blocking the intersection for those with the green tight. The traffic tight to the business wherein en out contributes charge part of a traffic jam in rush hour. Pts consider disapting that traffic I see tight during rush hours or create a different intet slash outlet to the business not F Rom east Bidwet additional traffic enforcement officers are needed. It is dangerous for my chitdrin to cross the sidewalk by Natoma Station Elementary L N Generat, I think Folsom traffic is not that bad. My main probtem both as a pedestrian and a driver is turning right on red from Faatsam bout ever to Tur Ravine Road. L T is hard to see the pedestrians and even bicyclists on that crossing about six years ago I sent a letter to both the Faatsam City Council and the Faatsam Potus Department regarding running golf red tights at major intersections throughout T city. L T was instid is a question of when, not L F, a major tragedy occurs. I tow the bike traits and the beautiful U T scenery. Traffic is getting very crowded, both driving on the streets and bikes, walkers, and joggers on the bike paths US Chan two shout de Toma tipti answers we drive with others in our sitvs. We bike we walk. Traffic is very heavy on Carter S T on weekends for games at Livermore Park some guests block driveways thank Kutos via Bartijo. Know where it's at in Faatsam is there a connecting street that enters the city into a neighborhood? This street on to benefits eth, and not the tong time residents of Heat De Brown circ. There have been many near misses and an actual pedestrian was hit by a car in my neighborhood. Drivers constantly rot through the stop signs in our neighborhood. What does race or gender have to do with the traffic I see study? Asking for this I N F formation is incredibly ignorant and offensive. This is why Popt have tit trust in government hate driving in Faatsam and on to take back roads to work. L T's gotten worse over the years and the roads are not charge enough to control A T T the traffic. We moved out of Faatsam because of the congestion one three years ago the intersection of Turnpike Drive and Tur Ravine needs improvement. There have been several accidents due to drivers attempting to turn on to W B Tur Ravine F Rom Turnpike Drive. This is not safe, especially during morning and evening rush hours. Speeding and red tight viotations are out of control citywide. Righty Street cuts historic Faatsam neighborhood in Hatf and on to safest to crosses at Natoma, uncomfortab due to narrow sidewalk tight to street, or Sutter Street lwaat my dog every morning and every morning, we are in coun- Righty Street cuts historic Fatsim neighborhood in Hatf and onto safest to crosses at Natoma, uncomfortab due to narrow sidewalk tied to street, or Sutter Street lwat my dog every morning and every morning, we are encountering either a distracted driver or someone who doesn't stop at stop sign. Coped of times, we at most got hit by a care which is not an outcome I want F rom my morning wots love tipping in Fatsim, thanks for making a difference here Fatsim L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-four city of Fatsim. Anuri twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P N February eleventh twenty twenty-five item number five. Thirty-nine at every tight A Ts two or three red tight runners constantly easy money F for the city and stop signs in neighborhoods nobody stops some P opt don't even slow down. Forty red tight running every tight stop signs in neighborhoods are at ways run. Forty-one this has more personate questions than traffic questions. Seriousti, who wrote this? L T's missing about twenty questions regarding traffic. The resets of this wit I N F O R M U of nothing. Waste of my time and yours. Why does a trafic I see survey need to know R C? Forty-two L S there anything that could be done to improve traffic veto on east Bidwet? Forty-three signat a sing crony at tight rate crossings, and on Bidwet. Many, many effigrent stop sign viotations in the Natoma Station neighborhood forty-four. Traffic signats shout be synchronized to ease congestion near major arteries slash freeways forty-five. We need more traffic enforcement. We have asked F or trafic I see enforcement on Turnpike Raceway and have been met with inaction or no response to our request. Forty-six scoot traffic by Natoma Station Admentary School is dangerous forty-seven whoever re timed the traffic signats recently has made the traffic ten times worse than it was before. L T takes more time to get out of Fatsim to Highway fifty than it took me to drive A T T the way to downtown Sacramento for work. You now get stop a red tight forty-eight. Near Natoma Station Admentary, frequent stop sign runners at Ashcat and Turnpike putting chitren and atits at risk. Forty-nine speed breaker fifty. Fit pot oats, repave roads, reptis stop signs with signats, stop P opt from thinking red tight is just another coater tight, stow down signage in neighborhoods, tierdi marked pedestrian crosswaks fifty-one. Too many tutten viotations, speeding, jumping red tights, stop signs. The speed limit on many of Fatsim roads shout be reduced by A Ts S M P H wout be good to install red tight cameras invite at intersections to enforce conscientious. Fifty-two need more attention paid to streets and stop signs around Natoma Station Admentary, N S E fifty-three. Enforce no stopping on Grover North of Rin Point to pick up students. Someone is going to be injured. The city would be partyati tyub due to tack of enforcement fifty-four. None fifty-five. Number fifty-six. I didn't find this survey particularity head p feud as to identify my concerns or echo others. Fifty-seven school safety zones need to be enforced fifty-eight. I think giving out very expensive tickets F or P opt speeding wout be a good start. Fifty-nine American River Canyon Drive and Bob White really needs a stop sign for pedestrians. Drivers coming F rom Greenback cannot see if there is a person attempting to cross dot their I sub sixty. Rook drivers and speeding young chitren on scooters and bikes without head mits or ref tech of gear have exponentiety increased on the roads causing great difficati. They are at risk and putting the drivers at risk too, especiety south of fifty. Sixty-one construction doesn't clean up after work. Often there is debris on the roads and stat tires have been my biggest concern. Sixty-two kids without head mits wearing dark coater tothing zoom down the streets on e-bikes. They do not stop at stop signs. Fatsim L R S P zero one point fourteen point two oh twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-five city of Fatsim January twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokal Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty-five item number five. Sixty-three more and charger speed timid sign especiety on righty. I tip in that area and at most daty with just about get rear ended by a speeder when I take a right onto Levy. Give more speeding tickets. Sixty-four there needs to be a stop sign or tights for the crosswalk on Natoma Station at Coventry circed. Too many drivers driveway too fast through that stretch and don't even see the sixty-five. Sixty-six sixty-seven. Sixty-eight sixty-nine. Seventy seventy-one. P opt in the crosswalk drivers think stop a sign is a suggestion A T T around Natoma Station Admentary scoot needs head P with drop off and pick up traffic stop sign runners amount is increasing, especiety at Tong Turnpike at any stop sign. Parents at mud tipties codes are unsafe and speed. More monitoring needed at scoots PTs head P scoot zone safe during student ariva I and dismissat. Poor survey, Ron Point at Broadstone, headed toward Bidwet, goes from two tens to five lanes. Suggest painting a strike arrow in the number three ain. Drivers think by moving left one tan they are in a left turn ain. Seventy-two putting out from Tac Diamond Drive onto Iron Point Road can be scary. Visibility is very timid and cars go zooming down Iron Point. I strongly recommend a stop tight at that intersection. Seventy-three red tight runners are off the charts. Time to put cameras in for red tight viotations there are so many accidents due to this. L T has to stop. Seventy-four unsafe driving around the scoot Natoma Station Admentary prevents me F rom watking seventy-five. Need digitat speeding signs. Crosswaks. Speed humps on Turnpike Drive in Natoma seventy-six. Seventy-seven seventy-eight. Seventy-nine G zero. G one. G two. Ninety-three G four. Station A stop sign shout be added where Coventry circed meets Natoma Station. Chitren are constantly trying to cross the street and cars don't stop. Kids are stuck in the mid of the crosswalk because Natoma Station is used as a corridor to Fatsim B T V D. The roads are F re of pot oats, tights, and signs work wet, but no one is going to have a good driving experience if the city continues to add more and more residences. City planners need to take five and rethink. Especiety around our scoots. Traffic cameras surrounding schools for everyone's safety. Shout have some potus officers monitoring speeding before and after school on Natoma Station Drive our scoots need funded and specific support at drop off and pick up. Wout depreciate improved safety near Natoma Station Admentary particular crosswalk on Natoma Station near Ernie Shedon Park wout at so love a pedestrian crosswalk across Righty Street connecting Arbuck Ave and the neighborhood across the street I wat twice daty, I feed the fast scooters and bikes are often ridden in an unsafe manner. This is at so true on the roadway. Doubt riders and cutting in and out speeding around Natoma Station Admentary need fashing scoot zone signs PTs motorized bikes on the traits are a probtem and drivers running red tights are out of control I eighty-five. Stow the trafic I see down G six. More aggressive code enforcement for residentia tree, branches hanging over public roads eighty-seven. PTs stop building apartments in this beautiful city. Fatsim L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-six city of Fatsim, Anua, Y twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty-five item number five. Eighty-eight I avoid east Bidwet if I can, it's just tyke sunrise B T V D over it, I expect to be ab to drive without stopping at stop tights if I'm going the speed timid. L T is unctare what to do on right turns where it tooks like a merge lane eighty-nine. Concern for safety, Fatsim mid school drop off and pick up. Ninety I at so bike at ot, the traits are wonderful but some of the streets tyke Bidwet are UN bikabed. Ninety-one. Ninety-two ninety-three. Ninety-four ninety-five. I think the speed timmets in residentia areas are too high, especiety around schools. Time the tights on east Bidwet. Vote for Justin Rathel, he would get it done. L T might head P if the city I N S T act cameras and find cars that ran red tights. Speed and spikes area hazard. Drivers not paying attention to pedestrians in the crosswalk or when they have the protected walk signat. Niarty been hit way too many times. Ninety-six Fatsim rea di needs designated safe routes to scoot for students who watk and bike to ninety-seven. Ninety-eight G G. One zero zero. Scoot. See city of Davis for exempt. Many residents are simply going too fast on streets tyklorin Point, Prairie City, and east Bidwet especiety. Speed timmets shout be reduced and speeders ticketed. Speed limits are A T T set way to high. The city needs to have a traffic division and needs to enforce Stosp Street viotators, tipi cat at Tong Sitberhorn Drive, and speeders. Atso, the excessive number of mud equals famity buildings has caused egregious traffic jams at Tong east Bidwet. The red tight running is out of contraw. You really have to hesitate and look to make sure you're not going to get hit before entering roadway. One hundred and one I watk at ot, bicyclists of Lerd Flittle T use the bike lanes but the sidewalk one hundred and two. Speeding and red tight viotations are out of contraw. Ignoring stop signs in neighborhoods is common. One hundred and three we need tinkin yeto turn arrows on low traffic streets and during off hours. L T doesn't make any sense to stop and wait when zero cars are coming slash or are around. One hundred and four construct alternate route besides righty. L T's horrible. Out all left turns from Riley, south tend, onto Sutter S T. One hundred and five L T is dangerous to turn teft, across traffic, from Tac Diamond on Turrin Point Road. I have type it in the Natoma Station neighborhood for over thirty years and that intersection gets more dangerous every year. There needs to be a tan for merging trafic I see. One zero six. Yes, there was a man in a pickup truck who basic caddy cut me off using the right tan of a turn tan on east Ridgeout and Tur Ravine dot there was a man in a testa who cut me off dot basic caddy, by putting his testa super toes to my passenger side of my truck dot L N one hundred and seven. The traffic in Fatsim makes me want to move out of Fatsim. Fatsim makes it very difficut to travel around with too many signats and stop signs so toes together. There are too many P opt for the amount of roads. The probtem's cause driver F rust ration ten grams. Distracted white driving, specific attorney tooking at a phone is the most egregious driving conduct that I encounter. One hundred and nine there I sto soft traffic and subdi and semedamis it's difficut ta jit out of ta driveway one hundred and ten. Probtem's with T Y P E two and type three e bikes and electric scooters on bike slash walking paths as wet on streets. They appear from nowhere and do not follow rules of the road. One eleven my main concern are the P opt on electric bikes and scooters. They have no regard for safety. More of them would be injured or kidnapped, and I don't want to be the one to hit them because of their rectess behavior. L T hust stop. Folsom L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-seven city of Fatsim Lenuri twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety P T A and February eleventh twenty twenty-five item number five. One twelve. East Bidwet and fifty is a nightmare and something needs to be done one thirteen. Many drivers in Fatsim make the roads unsafe. Red tight runner at at most every tight. Cars do not wait their turn at stop signs, if they stop at alt. Addits texting driving in school zones. Kids aren't obeying traffic signats on bikes slash scooters. One hundred and fourteen the amount of aggressive drivers, red tight and stop sign runners, idigal U turns, and people on their phones is staggering. The young P opt who drive speed around and are rea di rude. The traffic tights are porti timed and short yeto tights. One hundred and fifteen L N Fatsim, it seems stop signs are merdi a suggestion for many, many drivers. One hundred and sixteen A feudamis a month lam confronted via driver tatbatai a vespa psych to serenata wet in the road. This usuadi occurs when I am riding in a designated bike tan. Lack of education about bikes slash bike aints is my greatest adversary on my commute. One hundred and seventeen poor tanning for A T T intersections from fifty down Bidwet. South of fifty is a traffic nightmare. Tyke Southern California one eighteen. Thank Q one nineteen. East Bidwet is a trafic I see nightmare. Especiety between Highway fifty, Rin Point and Broadstone. And pretty much A T T of east Bidwet to Fatsim B T V D red tight runners is ridiculous. This is not the same Fatsim that I moved to twenty-five years ago. One hundred and twenty Fatsim drivers continueati run red tights. Does Fatsim have red light cameras at the Arger intersections? One hundred and twenty-one thorse intersection in town is east Bidwet and Lauren P T instead of trying to a tvi at the probtem our city counts it tet a divoto per change his property F rom commercial to residentia and bid a gigantic epaftment compex right at that intersection. One hundred and twenty-two there is itls tink tack of tradico erx or Fatsinar that wout date and traves veto. The russey of thumb is the opposite to the stop signs. Keep going and give way to traffic coming F rom the ft. One hundred and twenty-three Rin Point slash east Bidwet, Oak Avenue slash Tur Ravine, Blue Ravine slash east Bidwet are the signat intersections I frequent. Drivers speed to cross in one or mud tipti vehicles fato through on the red tight. One hundred and twenty-four the use of e-bikes on the traits and no speed timid signs posted for e-bikes or regular bikes on traits especiety withto creek trait one hundred and twenty-five. Why does it seem like there is no ticketing for traffic viotations? I have never seen anyone stopped for speeding or other viotations. One hundred and twenty-six e scooters and bicycles on sidewalks, speeding, stop sign viotations, on righty S T between Tur Ravine and Oak Ave Parkway. Parking slash talking bike lanes with no parking slash stopping signs Grover R D at Bat Fiat Damas Cannon Park weekends and Fatsim High W K D Y S one twenty-seven. PTs start enforcement for speeding slash rectess and not yeeting to pedestrians one hundred and twenty-eight. Something rea di needs to be done about east Bidwet from Adter Creek north through Rin Point Drive. There are too many trafic I see tights in that area that cause massive backups in both directions. One hundred and twenty-nine F P D needs to crack down on phone use white driving instead of ignoring it. One hundred and thirty east Natoma is tyke A F freeway. Drivers drive way too fast. One hundred and thirty-one rea di appreciate the timing change F or the tight at Fatsim Auburn Oak. I F feel so much safer. One thirty-two. Need a bridge or tunnel to get muddy use trade to Levine Trail F rom the loop across F rom Mesquite. Fatsim L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-eight city of Fatsim, Anuri twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan February eleventh twenty twenty-five item number five. One hundred and thirty-three traffic congestion is horribt, yet housing density is increasing exponentiety. Growth tanning is terribt, what a terribt take a seat to leave. One hundred and thirty-four city of overpopulated stop building every and preserve the distinctive by nature. Atso, get rid of tight rail, we never needed it and damn sure didn't need an upgrade to it one hundred and thirty-five. N A one hundred and thirty-six. There needs to be consequences for bad actions. Write so tickets and you will see improvement. One hundred and thirty-seven need torpeoids, pot oats dot repaired areas uneven roadways dot latesti ke driving gunar o tur coaster, not heat the F or cars or people. One hundred and thirty-eight the roads are a mess and need repaving especiety on E Bidwet thirteen grams. Timing of tights that stop dozens of drivers on main streets to tet one car out off a side street, by Winco for exempt, just makes many drivers F furious and aggressive, and P opt one hundred and forty. One hundred and forty-one. One hundred and forty-two one hundred and forty-three. One hundred and forty-four speed to make the next tight before it might happen again. Dangerous. I appreciate the interconnected traits throughout Fatsim. I see lots of P opt watking, bike riding and scootering on the traits safety. L T's the roads which present the greatest safety concerns, especiety at corners where cars turn right we need more potus and taws against A T T the motor cycle these, A K A e-bike and scooters. Stop the red tight and stop sign runners. Looks tyke it's becoming a habit in Folsom Bidwet slash Rin Point intersection is horribt tanning. This intersection needs to be updated T I to ref tech the heavy F toe of traffic as one of the main entrances slash exits of the town speeding is a probtem as wet, but could onto C tech three. One hundred and forty-five fanumberof drivers were in red tights system butai evab dot we rather enavirin a potus around watching these wet known areas where P opt are known for raw tight ted tights. P opt know they can get away with it and Fatsim potus wit do nothing about it one hundred and forty-six. Fatsim population expanded fast and tasked Thursday but the infrastructure has remained same. City needs to tin for better infrastructure development and maintenance. To minimize trafic I see congestion city needs to tin F or better ways to manage it. Thanks one hundred and forty-seven. The city has done a horrific job with adding a ridiculous amount of apartments on one of the busiest streets in town without any forethought. The city has done a horrific job with adding a ridicutes amount of apartments on one of the busiest streets in town without any forethought to its current residents and how it impacts this city. One hundred and forty-eight thank you for asking. One hundred and forty-nine. Dedi red tight viotations on East Bidwet S.T. one hundred and fifty. Too much traffic especially on Bidwet. One hundred and fifty-one. Yes Ty trade shout stay at out tets less crime and home tests and why does it go to take times Tyke thirteen? One hundred and fifty-two. Wish P opt wout just enjoy their drive and not drive reckless. One hundred and fifty-three. Hope fuddy something would be done for speeding. One hundred and fifty-four. Expand inner roads and make some as one-way roads. One hundred and fifty-five. The electric bikes and scooters on the traits pose a serious threat. One hundred and fifty-six. Watt capability in Fatsam is abysmat, our roads are wide and too high of speed, our crosswalks are tong, slow, and exposed, our bike aines are basic caddy shoulders with some paint, and there are rate are too many cars on our roads. One hundred and fifty-seven I wout Tyke to see more traffic enforcement in town. One hundred and fifty-eight way too many housing complexes on e-Bidwet oh hand tet traffic. Fatsam L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and twenty-nine city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokal Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Fifteen Guaranees stop bidding until you figure out the INF ra structure F or getting around this now city. Seems that was never given any thought prior to atowing ATT the new apartments and home traffic around Sutter Mid School is insane. One hundred and sixty doesn't matter because nothing would be done about it anyways. One hundred and sixty-one list faith in the management of Folsom dot lasset to divativing here toking to movie now. I hope it's not too late to save Folsom. One hundred and sixty-two. I have been near di hit accident attorney or dead of a ritey at least ten times. Crossed Oak Ave at righty is death-defying. The cars never stop, yield, or even took for P opt in the crosswalk. And, they are typical attorney going fifty to sixty miles per hour coming F rom East Bidwet. One hundred and sixty-three this survey shout have been conducted years ago. The traffic in town is offuut. One hundred and sixty-four P Ts add sidewalks on ATT streets near scoots for the saf eddy of the chidren walking and biking to scoot. One hundred and sixty-five more ticketing for INF rations to viotators. One hundred and sixty-six. Stashing stop signs wout had P especially at night due to toe visibility. One sixty-seven. So much traff I see on Inatoma, hard to get out of the neighborhood. One hundred and sixty-nine. Traffic signets that a toe side street drivers to stop main thoroughfare drivers, Tur Ravine has taught of this, frustrate drivers to such a degree that speeding and aggression. One hundred and sixty-nine. One hundred and seventy-one slash one. One hundred and seventy-two, one hundred and seventy-three. Come next. Students at F H S crosswalks taking up ATT tents and walking against red tights causing vehicles to miss their green tights. Widen Bidwelt, timid access F rom so many side streets, force a better fito and time the street tights from Tur Ravine down past U S five zero so traffic can flow roads need to be expanded slash widget to atofer and lore cars to pass through light so there would be tests speeding and red tight running. There is too much traffic congestion throughout Folsom, but especially at the intersection of Lurin Point and Bidwet. Too many P opt, way too many new apartment complexes and houses which wit just continue to make the roads slash traffic even worse. Stop bidding more high-density housing projects. That's the biggest reason for our congested traffic. One hundred and seventy-four drivers often speed through parking tots. One hundred and seventy-five lemby could also use a center I N E. One hundred and seventy-six LT is criminal what has happened to this city. Can you fit any more apartments into this town? One hundred and seventy-seven traffic is backed up constantly on e-Bidwet and Highway fifty. P Ts connect Oak Avenue A the way or do something it set to retire of the congestion LT is taribt. One hundred and seventy-eight there is a lot of red tight running in this town and to be honest, so much of it is due to horribt decongested roads and tights. East Bidnritl is an absolute disaster to drive down. The East Bidwet on ramp to fifty is a comp tet nightmare, from ATT ways. One hundred and seventy-nine there are too many tong streets that run through Parkway specific attorney Parkway Drive in Humbug Creek where there needs to be street bumps or it's a P opt wit continue to use those streets as speedways. Many chidren ride their bikes to O C and F M S. One hundred and eighty population slash use has increased and roads are more impacted. Some fots wit find this inconvenient. One hundred and eighty-one. Bidwet and Lurin Point, idigot U-turns. Folsom L R S P zero one point fourteen point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Loke Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. One hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and eighty-four. One eighty-five. One eighty-six. One hundred and eighty-seven, one eighty-eight. One eighty-nine. One hundred and ninety, one hundred and ninety-one. One hundred and ninety-two, one ninety-three. The traffic in Fatsam has become unbearabti. Especially in the area around East Bidwet and fifty. Why were ATT of the houses south of fifty a tau to be constructed without updating the road sanday manidiest accommodate? These and Kato Vita Towns ruin ital I think the city of Fatsam is trying to be safe. Thank you for asking F or citizen input. I appreciate it. Bit bridges over Bidwet for pedestrians and bikers. To dangerous crossing Bidwet traff I see tights are not bike F rendi. Don't respond to bike waiting to cross. It's time to change your street standards. Pretty embarrassing that streets but in the past year need traffic catming, Fatsam Ranch, because they were designed to encourage speeding speeding on turnpike D R traffic tight tumming shout be tooked and improved. Lights shout be timed and turn ain sensors updated. Left on yeto shout be a toed. North Lexington Doctor is a speedway. There's an Adventories code headed east and is a major thoroughfare F or the mid's code headed west. Cars F tie up and down the street A T L day with no care of consequence. They say no speed bumps, maybe another stop. Too many traff I see tights with poor coordination I'm a thirty-seven-year resident and I've seen some very poor tanning by the city. Many streets are designed for speed. So many roadways with Benson Road at unsafe speeds. So much congestion in areas due to this poor tanning. The growth has affected traffic. Concern about the F frequency of the new tight time trains at Glen, Tur Ravine. F O Sam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point two L twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-one city of Fatsam, Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. Appendix deal ru pensant tabling map gofterers F O Sam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-two city of Fatsam, Anuri twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Loke Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five. September seventh, twenty twenty-four, Farmers Market tabling map comments marker I D seven ten two six three four five B one location everywhere White Rock RD east of e-Bidwet White Rock RD Madison and Greenback by Vista Det Lago Parkway Drive Bridge Fatsam BTVD Bike Trail what safety chat eng. S, do you encounter at this location, red tight running, stop sign running by their house, e-bikes bad what's the ten forbidding it out? Better occasion gas station when wit construction be done? By the R R tracks? Are scooters street take it? Students on electric bikes, on sidewalk, road, around scoots, red runny biking. To stay on bike have to go in the street fast cars. Ramp on both sides of the trail peds on the bridge. When tight rate construction done? Transition is weird. Folsom BTVD no light, cars don't stop lights toto change S B parky at Gardner and Stewart, can't see. School traff I see one Prairie City N A Fatsam BTVD thirty A T D ATT over. By twenty-nine Patadio two Natoma Station twenty-seven neighborhood twenty-eight twenty-six subti. Lemby and Bidwet twenty-four twenty-three needs improvements l rotation about tight rate construction. Get rid of it light viotations and driving on the crosswalk, poor visibility of tight, good that bike lane has sensor, wout be good to have newer merging aines, these mini onramps, Oak Ave and Bidwet people want to utups S puti done resurfacing, a dangerous left turn when interchange. Speeding, toe through stop sign, tem by speeding, no sidewalk on sib LT lane use as ped access to trait. No sidewalk. LT Fatsam Auburn to Berry Creek Pocket too short, got rear and D E D at fifty H twenty-one Serpa twenty-two tray I access on sixteen School, Mobit Home Park, no S R T S from tight, no sidewalk. Fatsam Auburn RD seventeen P opt cross by Rainbow Bridge eighteen bridges fading apart nineteen bike trait drops. Crossroad watto cro dad's dangerous twenty fifteen Berry Creek Road on stick rabs on wanta tight. Trait access, LT lane narrow, motocytist kid, taribt access to trait U S T north and south of their thirteen Oak Ave and e-Bidwet merge issues Folsom L R S P minus zero one point one four point two oh twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-three city of Fatsam, Anua. Why twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-four city of Folsom Tokal Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty five item number five nine Tur Ravine and Oak bicyced. School traffic, crossing ped intersection Ave eight C B D, e-Bidwet S T, waiting at red tight Hannah twelve Livermore Park October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Farmers Market tabling map comments marker I D location what safety chat eng. S, do you encounter at this location, thirty-one Riley and McAdo lack of stopping slash onto one crosswalk to cross righty thirty-three to servit RD slash Highway fifty lack of P E dest Ryan face a titties going under Highway fifty nineteen righty and Sutter no protected teft off righty onto Sutter thirty-two Lurin Point and Carpenter hit drivers. Using bike tan idigadi thirty-four Oak Ave and Tur Ravine red tight viotations for Oak Avenue and Creekside trait aggressive driving slash red tight viotations, for peds crossing crossing ten Fatsam BTVD and Lurin Point P opt in cars not yeeting to bikes slash peds Tur Ravine and Natoma eleven station P opt in cars not yeeting to bikes slash peds Fatsam Auburn and two Pine Brook no ped crossing and poor tray along west side of Auburn Fatsam heading north Fatsam Auburn and Berry P opt N B making U-turns at Berry. Creek don't make three creek entrance into divito south W slash T N five e-Bidwet congestion on East Bidwet thirteen to servit RD slash L N and out traffic backups into to servit Road twelve Prairie City Road merging on road that goes F rom two lanes to one lane I awab corvna fe on stop miribent v seek naggers zion slash speeding signs f dashing beacons for visibility at the crossing. One sixteen fe tati Fatsam Auburn and trait are hard to turn in off Natoma WB because of concrete fifteen park median eighteen righty S T missing sidewalks between Sutter. And at Fatsam seventeen redacted resident is crazy. P Ts arrest. Tweaker. Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty one twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-four city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety PN September seventh, twenty twenty-four. Farmers Market tabling map board Folsom Local Road Safety Plan Safety Map add a pin on the map where you encounter safety challenges in the city. Two February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Notio eight C A L eight I one dot I asterisk to lean more about the lakeo. Ltoed Safety Plan Project onto toke the saley survey visit the link below or scan the E R K I T T T T T S slash I W W W. I O L S T T R T T U T T S slash L R S P F F I Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-five city of Fatsam Lenurie twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokal Road Safety PN September seventh, twenty twenty-four. Farmers Market tabling Safety Question Board Folsom Local Road Safety Plan Safety Question identify the safety challenge you experience the most by placing oh sticker on it traffic signal C train crossings. Phi I L. L I one L L. I, backslash P, bicycle lanes aggressive driving R dot fuff asterisk asterisk five ignish and striping S asterisk 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 plus plus T plus asterisk plus plus asterisk asterisk February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Asterisk asterisk plus dot asterisk X to learn more about T L E locot route soladi plan no check onto toke the safety survey V L S L T V L L N K below or scan the Q R code H N P S slash slash W W W. I O Sam. Co U S slash L R S P ahead F six F F F I I Fatsam L R S P dash zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-six city of Fatsam, Annuity twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Farmers Market tabling map board add a pin on the M D P where you encounter safety coal lanes in the city. February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. I I A T six star J U not to scale dollar I I R I dot L asterisk to learn more about the local road safety plan project and to take the safety survey visit the link below or scan the Q R code H T T P S. Slash slash W W W T O L S O N C A U S slash L R S P F F I Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one point one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-seven city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Tokat Road Safety Plan October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Farmers Market tabling Safety Question Board Folsom Local Road Safety Plan Safety Question identify the safety challenge you experience the most. By placing a sticker on it, asterisk traffic signals slash train crossings I I N R lit aggressive driving bicycle R I signage and striping February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Asterisk asterisk distracted driving asterisk L S R Z E L E, trick mobility, melsus, asterisk road closures slash work T, F R zero A zero C logio impaired driving to learn more about the local route safety plan project onto take the safety survey visit the link below or scan the Q R code H T T P S slash L W W W F O L S O M. C A S slash L R S P F F I Fatsam L R S P dash zero one one four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-eight city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five twenty twenty four city of Folsom Loke I. Road Safety Plan February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Appendix E P no dot L E C R sheets Fatsam L R S P underscore zero one. One four point twenty twenty five dot docs page one hundred and thirty-nine city of Fatsam January twenty twenty five city of Folsom London, Prey and C R T wire Cronpoint RD and Fabm Bludk fib and K H agency name, Silyar Fols Efiel, do dollar H at roll five M dot Rustablu a benelit three total cost three combined B C R signalized intersections eight million four thousand five hundred and twenty-five T T three thousand five hundred seventy point five three February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Notes Colriston I L P recommendation L R S M slash slash C M F counter mesur I R S M six C M F gitrans funding dark at intikshen lighting stole N T so zero point five zero nine hundred and eighty-four improve signal hardware, lenses, ale undal retrofaikt of backplates backplates with retroreflictive five L zero two dot N D nuzisnal heads borders, mounting, SIS can number improve SISnal timing, coordination, ale improve signal timing phase at red, yellow, are pension, ten oh point eighty-five nine W six oh point eighty-five five V slash. Number of crashes, twenty, C two ounce three, fatal severo complain toff pain P D A fate I S F V F R three offer usable like complaint toff pain seventeen P D C fate I severo one or usable like contain toff pain P D A number of here for RD C C R A S H five reduced zero oh 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 point four S two point five five zero oh point forty-five zero X O year crash reduction E S T I I A T E one oh dot E R crash crash reduction severin cost eight and F it twenty twenty-two S to tie I O year crash redupre and eight N E F I T. Zero twenty-two five, two dot M S three dot M one ten M zero dot M two point one sixty-two dot M two point four three two point two five zero one point one three S one ninety-three M S R one zero M Q seven hundred and one point two nine O M dollar zero M zero dot M two point one fifty-two dot M zero dot S Q one hundred and seventy-three one F I S five hundred and ten S one M dot M forty-six S four M three thirty-five oh six twenty-five two comma six M S. Quantity slash number of N T S three luminaires forty eek plates and ten signal heads two controller signaling mods I L N I T cost cost estimate enotite slash C O S F S F S M S S eight comma five M N point six ninety-seven so slash S two S S S T M sixty-seven dollars two O M fifty-one O M twenty-eight point one page one hundred and forty Kimley Horn February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. City of Folsom L R S P hushen, muffrepl. S M P slash A dot R I dot B, A jammy name, Salyo F D S M F A, Z B S C H at F D S M dot cows total benefit dollar total cost dollar combined B G R. S M P slash A dot R I dot B, A J A M I name, Cilio F F D S M Efa, Z B S C H at F D S M dot cows total benefit dollar total cost dollar combined BGR signalized intersections five million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-seventy-seven comma four oh seven thousand four hundred and forty-seven M zero one. I zero five knots collision F L P recommend a Fian L R five M slash C M F country measure LRSMT life years. C M F cultians funding mod ifo cycle to include a modify signal phasing to implement S T two-two P A to zero. Ninety percent bike and ped tedding pedestrian L taruul L eating pedestrian L taruul, LPL. Bike and ped L N S T dot L L advanced stop bar and bike boxes at Blue Ravine RD at Prairie City RD. Blue Ravine RD at Folsom B I V D and Rilk ST at GL I D five dot at rural crow dollar walk cycle cle box. S T two-one P B ten zero point eight five nine V A I one I N is numgrav crashy five. Twenty 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 twenty-three, oh severe one off for visibi five complaint of pain four P D O I of A T O S for a oh complaint toff pain number of HRS two R L C C R A S H five reduced zero zero oh zero point six zero L G Y E A R crash reduction E S N Lotti one oh dot E R C R A five H C M S H. Redufflian S C V E R full COS one benefit one dot M seven point five at five dot M O dot M S eighteen at O dot M S two point sixty-two dot M one point nine Q two A nine S one I three one ten dot M zero dot M E total I O year crash reofflian benefit. Twenty twenty-two S, S T three so S M S four twelve comma twenty-nine Q U A N T I W slash number of units upgrades fifty-three M square feet unit cost cost estimate I enofit slash cost S S M S three S M one hundred and fifty-two point nine S eight five forty-two comma four W page one hundred and forty-one Kimley. Horn February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. City of Folsom LRSP Elktron, E P S T R C D and O Dad DDG and E B L D W D L S L F M or Chad DDW B six B M Stet Agency NOM. Ktelft Sa condominium NOM, Z and N two she M L Z B C D at B L S M dot E dot U S unsignalize intersection slash roadway segment total Benijid total cost combined BCR two million one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four two million one point one oh two two eight I I P D O oh zero zero four three nine oh I zero I zero I I O oh three I one I O. Notes Colleyston W P recommendation F L R S M slash C M I countermeasure LRSM expected lira L years. C M T Caltrans funding kvt EBITWAL ST at Orchard Conveft I N T Fedeon to Roundabout. Ale drive intersection to from stop or Iield control on minor N sosford twenty, roundabout control road, ninety percent install quick build rest striping, flexible ballard slow road diet. And remove asterisk two lane in each decade on and replace with R three four P B twenty zero point five five ninety percent number of crash five twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Oh severe one other visible dot O M P I ain't of pain one P D O severe two other visible dot O M P I and toff pain one. P do zero number of his to RD C crashed right just L G Y T A R crash reduction estimate one and year C R N H crash reduction S E V E R L cost B E N E F T R T two zero two two five I three four at dot M S one ninety-three M O S dollar dot O M O zero point zero 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 point nine S five point three fifty point four at seven point two zero five point eight five I T seven zero one hundred and ninety-three thousand eighteen dot M R two hundred and eighty-seven M O total low dot atarms right reduction ton fit. Oh two, five, quantity number of U N I T five U N T R cost for cost. Stromat tonner flotalkos T two R two oh seven ninety-four I roundabout S two O M M O S two M zero oh zero one point one five nine hundred and thirty-five per S three three M F F segment S E smart. Road one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-seven point seven and zero thirty-seven comma zero at, road diet, diet. Page one hundred and forty-two Kimley, Horn February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. City of Folsom LRSP Axinom, Ktia T F D S M C D L D Nair, KH and S C H F file Z B C N at B B M dot U S total benefri dollar total cost dollar combined BCR signalized intersection two million three hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty thirty-six thousand two hundred sixty-four point seven double pru dot two hum at zero N L V at omdid of pound P D O zero point zero nine I seven I O. L J Knox Kotelsan type A I I recommendation install new retro REFL A dive backplates LRSM slash C M F countermeasure LRSMF T spitted C M F tight. Years, Caltrans funding lumberk sig feel hardware, lenses, backplates with retro REFL dive S T zero two borders. Mounting, eyes, and number zero point eight five ninety percent bike and ped L N S T R L L like boxes crosswalk bekill box. Five T twenty-one P B ten O dot a five ninety percent bike and ped mod ifu cycle to include a leading pedestrian L taruul dot L modify signal phasing to implement a leading pedestrian interval. LPL, S T two-two P B ten zero point zero nine thousand and four ale. Ombre signal timing ombre signal timing, coordination, S T O three ten zero point eight five fifty percent fos, red, yellow, or operation. Monday at other build at Ilmarod are dark zero I zero I O I O one one number of crashes L two oh two S two oh twenty-three J number O T H T S T O R I C crashes reduced one oh year crash reduction estimate L O Y A R crash crash reduction severa cost bind and twenty twenty-two S I oil low year crash right reduction benefit T two zero two two S. Quanper slash number of units U N T R cost COS one E five timid benefit slash co see other comp hint comp hint of one zero point one S zero 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 oh zero 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 oh zero oh point fifteen one oh dot M two point one sixty-two dot M. Four hundred and ten point seven five zero Q one ninety-three underscore M seventy-two thousand three hundred and seventy-three two point six three one ten M zero dot M two point one sixty-two dot W O dot M one Q. O M T O dot M one F dot O M zero dot M, one sixty-two F F I O dot M two point one sixty-two dot W zero dot M one ten dot M O dot M F zero M zero dot M. One hundred and sixty-one zero six S A ten point seven fifty oh point three eight dollar three M zero S two hundred and forty-eight point seven five zero O M one A dot M S S one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen twenty retro reflet dive backplates seven S O dollar M zero seven A dot T one thousand four hundred square feet S S one L two M zero point zero one L P I controller S S oh 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 S five oh 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 zero point zero S one dollar controller signal backslash seventeen R four seventy-five timing mod two O M S M O two star point four page one hundred and forty-three Kimley. Horn February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. City of Folsom LRSP C impact lane at Hdenruhr D D E Z M H Bosch F file, Z B S C H at D S M J S total benefit S total cost I combined BCR signalized intersection two million eight hundred and three thousand five hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred thirty-five point seven one B one O I O one three high O I O zero I O I O I L O T E S Colerston W P recomендation expedited T R S M slash C M F countermeasure T R S N one number Taif Y E. C M F Caltrans fu ending ombre signal heard wear, lenses, install new retro REFL A dive backplates with retro REFL A dive ale backplates and additional S I binal additional case borders. S T zero two mounting, size, and number. X zero zero point eight five ninety percent install flashing beacon on W B install flashing bayons as advance all approach cutra five R zero nine warnings. S point one. Ten zero point seven zero ninety percent install slash upgrade signs with new all install new three dash three warning scenes F L, or scent sheeting. Regulatory or on S band E B approach warning ten zero point eight five nine V A number of crashes twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three number of historic crashes reduced low dot year crash right duffrian ESTI M A T F one O Y T A R C R F F H crash deduct on severin cost B E N T F T R. Twenty twenty-two S I totate one oh year crash reduction bind fit twelve thousand and twenty-two dollars. Q U A N T I N L number of units unit cost cost estimate benefit I slash C O five T O S R E E R E one zero one zero 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 point four five oh zero point three oh nine zero oh underscore fifteen zero Q. Sixteen R F Q two one sixty-two dot W eight hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty O M. F three comma zero M one point one three O M T one A dot M one hundred and twenty-three point seven five zero oh dot M two point seven sixty-two dot W one point six two one point five zero zero O M S three point zero million dollars eight underscore M two point two five seven hundred and forty-seven Adu S O M two point nine seventy-four dot W zero point three eight one one hundred and fifteen seven hundred and fifty T nine. O M S one underscore thirteen one M O M five nine thirty-four comma five M twenty retro reflet dive backplates and seven signal heads S seven thirty slash twos million dollars thirty-two comma five M A eight one eight sixty-nine comma zero M one flashing B dot con I forty-six M I forty-six M zero point five S S M dollar one point two forty comma five W two post mounted systems one M zero T two N five oh zero zero dot M page one hundred and forty-four Kimleyern City of Folsom LRSP at B N. F D A C T T Y R at D T M U dollar zero to W Y M O manglnel Pikey Axinare. C L L Y O L Fatsam Con H NOM, KH and S C N E M Ls Bstidsam dot E J S total benitite S total cost dollar combined BCR roadway segment twenty-one comma seven seventy-five comma five O O I ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-one hundred and ninety-six point six February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five M N O T five Coersran T Y P T recommend align LRSM slash. C M F count from Tajer Fi R S M S expedited C M F life years, Caltrans funding L N S B L L high friction sedaceal roof pavement fridian. High all R two one friction citrus treatments, upgrade existing size and install slash upgrade signs with new ale install new muck compliant fluorescent sheeting kegulatory or warning signs warnings. Install dynamic speed warning install dynamic slash variable speed all si R two five warning signs oh point forty-five ninety percent ten zero point eight S ninety percent ten zero point seven zero ninety percent all install centerline rumble strips strips slash stripes are three zero ten zero point eight zero. Ale install edge line rumble strips install edge in rumble strips slash stripes are three one twenty zero point eight five ninety percent number of crashes twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Fi I O severi dot O M P I ain't of pain PDC severi two other visible like PDC zero swfri two other visible like PDC Ooth for visibi two comp hint of P A I I O S after campaign toff pain one P D O number of H storic C R A S H Ts reduced zero eleven oh point five S so zero point three oh point fifteen ten dot Y I A R crash reduction E five timid zero dot M two point seven five one point three eight oh underscore M oh point three I O dot year C R A five H crash reduction S E V E R L cost senefit backslash two zero two two nine one. E seven A dot M D three M eighteen zero M S two point nine seventy-eight point zero M Q one ninety-three dot M eight point one eight nine point five zero zero one hundred and fifty-one. Two hundred and fifty-two two tons. Five hundred I M point seven fifty I O to L I O dot year C U S B R, reduction benefit, twenty twenty-two S. Q U A N T F L slash Nums for units unit cost cost estimate benefit slash cost eight comma eight seventy-one comma five M twenty-eight M zero S T of H F S T S two point seven five S seventy-seven M zero one X five point two two comma four nineteen comma five M eight post mounted signs S M S four M zero five hundred. And four point nine O M S two point ninety-seven eight dot F F I zero point six one point five zero O T O point seventy-five one ninety-three point zero M S O point zero M two eighty-nine underscore five M zero dollars two point nine seventy-four dot M S O four one dot M two comma nine seventy-eight M zero point four one dot M one Q T O O O S I T one zero M S fifty-five underscore M O O dot M eight comma zero M zero zero dot M C. Nine seventy-four M E two point two three three point five zero zero oh three oh underscore seven S one ninety-three point zero M S zero point one five forty-one. To S eight underscore M S four million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand two S O L A R variable speed sign five thousand S. M S three comma two twenty-six oh 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 seven thousand three hundred L F of centerline rumble strip. One point two zero S two comma four nineteen comma five M dollar M F of S edge line rumble strips two oh 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 five eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and thirteen three S point three twenty-eight point four page one hundred and forty-five Kimleyern City of Folsom LRSP Hushen. Lentolm tempt A C L T Y R D D B G F W R M A since C NOM. Quantity D F F S M F T L, Z B S C H F five dot U S total benefit total cost low combined BCR roadway segment four comma three ninety-seven comma two S zero sixty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-five sixty-eight point zero February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. Knots Colerston W P T recommendation L N S M slash C M F C O U N T R M I A S U R T LRSMD expected C M F L dot I R I years. Caltrans I earning A I install high friction surface ombre pavement fridian, high R two one fridian sedaceal treatments. Zero point four five ninety percent install slash upgrade signs with new A I I install new muck compliant fluorescent sheeting regulatory or R two two O'd warning signs warning. Bike and ped install buffered bike lane by rest striping lanes ridal lane width speed V one foot each. Install separated bike lanes R three four P eight ten zero point eight five so zero point five five ninety percent ninety percent. Number of crashes backslash two oh two oh two oh twenty-three J zero O of two O I L U M B R of H T S two RD C crashes reduced oh five five zero oh zero oh underscore three oh zero zero low dot year crash bright reductions to meet I O M O dot M zero point zero zero oh dot M O M O dot M O M O M low dot Y T A R crash crash reduction severity cost benefit. Twenty twenty-two two dash nine seventy-eight O M, four zero Q four seven hundred and fifty one hundred and ninety-three M G S one ten M Q G two point nine seventy-eight point zero M S one ninety-three M Q one hundred and ten M I S F dot M forty-two point five M. Nine seven A M dollar three M eight M total low dot year crash reduction ton fit twelve thousand and twenty-two five. Q U A N T N slash number of units under cost cost estimate benefit slash cost four million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two three five M S F of H F S T five two point seven S S sixty-four comma fifty-two S sixty-eight point zero five S M S X one ninety-nine comma two S zero two post mounted signs M O L nineteen comma three S S three two per L F two zero M F segment buffered bike fifty-four M O dot old but trier'd bike lane. Lane page one hundred and forty-six Kimleyern February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. City of Folsom LRSP Eldian, E dot S team fee steel temp Cummings Rito Gen V D hydrocon RD Agency NOM. Cleol Fatsam Con H NOM, and H and S C H E M L T Sps to H S M S toil benefit I at a blow cost combined BCR roadway segment R fifty-four comma eight seventy-five four thousand two hundred thirty-five point nine zero two I O one zero I zero zero I two I O zero notes Colleyston I L P T R F C O M M E N D A T I O N T spitted LRSM slash C M F countermeasured LRSM number life. Years, C M F Caltrans five funding ombre bike lanes and prevent risky mebbing behaviors by install delineators, reflectors, and slash or ale installing bike lane delineators obst. Markers are two seven on west leg after S B R ten zero point eight five ninety percent bike and ped install green bike lane treatment in conflit zones R three three P B so zero point six five key number of crashed L two oh two G two oh twenty-three L one zero zero one P D O zero number of HRS two R L C crashes reduced oh oh dot S so zero oh underscore thirty-five zero low dot Y T A R crash reduction F S T I M A T E O M zero point three eight oh dot M zero dot M O A A zero point eight eight low dot Y I A R C R N H crash reduction severa cost enafit. Ninety-seven A dot on S two point nine seventy-eight point zero M Q one hundred and ten M G eighteen dot M Q S D three dot M forty-two point five M sixteen A eight seventy-five total I O year crash right reduction benefit twelve thousand and twenty-two five. O enter number O T U N T S and cost T cost estimate final slash cost one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five sixty flexible surface S seventy dot M S four thousand two hundred thirty-six point nine two zero M S F green two hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five thermoplastic five S dollar M O fifteen point five page one hundred and forty-seven Kimley. Horn twenty twenty-four City of Folsom Tokat Road Safety PN February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. Appendix F Paul require po R R E Folsom LRSP dash zero one point one four point two oh twenty-five dot docs page one hundred and forty-eight City of Fatsam. Anuri twenty twenty-five February eleventh twenty twenty-five Item number five. Table one, summary of programs, policies, and practices for the City of Folsom topic complete streets policy traffic impact fees safe routes to school funding current status goal M one point one point one in the city's general plan states that the city will develop streets in a manner consistent with complete streets principles. City charges city impact fees according to the general plan policy eleven point six. See report for details. Implement or enhance it is recommended that the City of Folsom continue to enforce the compete street goal, especially in new developments south of U S fifty. Consider safety impacts and potential projects that enhance safety for future fee updates. Goal M February first sixteen in the city's general plan states that the city is seeking public participation and funding to construct SRTS. Engage with the community and seek grant funding opportunities to create a S R T S plan. Traffic safety ed education program for reviewing crash activity crossroads database updates Folsom P D conducts traffic safety education. The city conducts traffic safety education on a project basis. The Folsom Traffic Safety Committee provides city council with traffic safety recommendations as stated in section one zero point zero two point zero one zero in city's municipal code. City of Folsom uses crossroads database. Work with education and P D to develop traffic safety education programs in public areas and schools, including bicycle and pedestrian components. Set up formal program for reviewing crash activity at a fixed time interval, one or two years, update database for future L R S P analyses and updates. Collect G P S coordinates for crashes so that the crash database can be used for analysis in G L S G D enforcement on bicycle rules sobriety slash seat belt gex G D law enforcement coordinate with adjacent jurisdictions anyone under eighteen is required to wear a bike helmet C V C twenty one thousand two hundred and twelve. Conducted by city police department. As stated in C O M M link, coordinate with adjacent jurisdictions. City transportation division should engage with P D in enforcement and education at strategic locations based on collision patterns, community events, and safety priorities. City transportation division should engage with P D in planning and implementing sobriety and and seat belt checks based on collision patterns, community events, and safety priorities. City law enforcement should continue to work with adjacent jurisdictions. Page one hundred and forty nine February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Topic current status implement or enhance speed surveys speed limits traffic calming policies transit vehicles accommodation of bicycles coordination of transit providers and G D staff bicycle and pedestrian master plans general plan addresses multimodal traffic I C safety inventory of bicycle, pedestrian, parking, and other facilities speed surveys are conducted at regular intervals, speeds were lowered on three arterials I N two zero two four. Speed limit regulation can be found in Folsom Municipal Code ten point zero eight. The city's traffic safety committee reviews traffic calming requests, consistent with M four point one point ten of the general plan. The twenty twenty one L R S P identified a traffic calming toolkit. Bikes are permitted on Sakreits buses and C A F Lick rail. The city coordinates closely with SAC R T on light rail service. Two thousand and thirteen Bike Qav Master Plan. Policies in section three of general plan are a result of a multimodal system. Yes, as stated in the Bike Qav Master Plan. Continue to implement regular speed surveying as required by California Vehicle Code, review new guidance from Assembly B I L L four three. Continue to update as required by California Vehicle Code, exercise context based F L X ability offered under Assembly of Bill forty three. Continue to implement traffic calming strategies as appropriate continue to accommodate bicycles on transit to promote multimodal trips. Continue coordination, work to identify areas for improvements particularly with first and last mile connections. Update the bikeway master plan to reflect current conditions. Continue tracking bike and pedestrian crashes, and implementing identified projects with high need and high feasibility. Continue to implement recommendations under general plan, regularly assess progress in areas for improvement, promote projects that prioritize multimodal safety while also providing operational improvements. Continue to maintain and grow bicycle, pedestrian, parking and other facilities. Road safety audit, R S A, guidelines coordination between emergency response and G D transportation planning no formal R S A guidelines adopted. The traffic safety committee includes representatives from P D and F D. The city coordinates with emergency responders as stated in the active transportation plan adopt the F H W A R S A quit alines to ensure consistency in field reviews and safety assessments. Continue engaging emergency response in transportation planning processes, include membership in additional practical specific technical advisory C O M M it is where appropriate. Page one hundred and fifty February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Topic current status implement or enhance coordination between local health agencies and city transportation planning not posted online. Resident feedback yes, comment form available on city website. Maintenance of roadway surfaces city identify C I P projects for roadway surfacing. Continue engaging local health agencies in transportation planning processes, include membership in project technical advisory commits where appropriate. Continue to seek out resident feedback, review comments for trends and patterns that may suggest opportunities for systemic safety improvement. Continue regular maintenance of roadway surfaces, integrate safety improvements such as bike lanes and advanced stop bars. Transportation demand management policies slash programs use of overlays, specific plans, redevelopment areas to encourage infill development to reduce V M T regular collection of traffic slash bicycle slash pedestrian volumes program for installing wayfinding signage warrants for traffic control devices school zone safety Folsom is included in the SAC Exaxim model. City follows direction in S B seven hundred and forty three to reduce V M T. On a case by case basis. Goal L U nine point one point seven in the general plan suggests the use of wayfinding signage and site specific historic themes to promote district identities. Uses C A Muckt city recently installed pedestrian median fencing by Folsom High School. Enforcement is conducted B V P D coordinate with city planning, transportation agencies, and community member to create a T D M program identify areas where infill development will require safety improvements. Coordinate with county to ensure connectivity and continuation of safety amenities with other municipalities. Require bicycle and pedestrian counts as part of routine traffic counting policies for the city when traffic impact studies or environmental documents are being developed. Ensure that preferred routes to key destinations signed to avoid cut through traffic in residential areas. Continue to use C A Muckt warrants, backslash A slash here frequent citizen requests are not covered by existing warrants, consider developing local warrants to facilitate decision making. Continue enforcement of road safety in school zones, seek grant funding opportunities for additional personnel in school zones, or funding for schools to make safety improvements. Page one hundred and fifty one February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. The city does not oversee a crossing guard program. Formalizing a crossing guard program for the Folsom Court of a school district. Increase enforcement of safe driving and active transportation behaviors near busy crosswalk locations, update pedestrian crossing design standards in accordance with latest best practices seek grant funding for additional enforcement near high E district and active locations. Page one hundred and fifty two attachment three February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Page one hundred and fifty three February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Foles. D Traffic Safety Committee meeting meeting minutes city council chambers one fifty Natoma Street Folsom California nine five six three zero December twelve comma twenty four twenty four four P M I call to order Chair Bailey called the meeting to order at four O one P M two roll call, present, S Bailey, Z Bosch, J Brous, T Galovich, arrived at four colon twenty four, K Goddard, M McGee, M Washburn absent, none three. Minutes approval of the minutes of the October twenty four comma twenty twenty four, meeting. Goddard proposed two edits to the meeting minutes. The first was to correct the page numbers at the bottom of each page. The second was to add the word signage to the end of the motion for item five C. Brous motioned to accept the minutes with the two edits. Goddard seconded the motion. Motion carried with the following vote, eyes, Bailey, Bosch, Brous, Goddard, McGee, Washburn abstain, none absent, Galovich four. Business from the floor slash good of the order public comment made by A D I Sharma, Ragol Madra, and Y K Calum Care Law regarding a stop sign request at Golf Links Drive and Wood Glen Drive. Bosch provided information regarding next steps. Five action slash discussion items the order of these items was changed by Chair Bailey two, five B, five C, five A. B evaluation of improvements on South Lexington Drive to reduce speeding public comment made by Connor DeLong and Kathleen Kinsey. Page one hundred and fifty four February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. The traffic safety committee recommends the Public Works Department install flashing stop signs on South Lexington Drive. Further that the city begin the process of engaging the community in the potential trial of phase T horizontal deflection measures as shown in the city's neighborhood traffic calming manual. They recommend that the Folsom Police Department increase enforcement to once per month in the corridor. Brous proposed the motion. Goddard seconded the motion. Motion carried with the following vote, eyes, Bailey, Bosch, Brous, Galovich, Goddard, McGee, Washburn abstain, none absent, none see bus routes on Mangini Parkway, Rock Creek, and Sycamore Creek Way and how they relate to crosswalks and students walking to school safety Y K Calum Care Law from the Folsom Court of a school board was in attendance for this item. Traffic Safety Committee member Matt Washburn began by explaining the process of how school transportation is developed when a new school is opened. Two Folsom Court of a unified school district employees spoke, Kathleen Jones, Director of Transportation and Ron Prasad, dispatcher slash scheduler, Special Education. They explained how transportation works in this corridor and how students are assigned to the north or south side of the road. Brous asked that the Public Works Department keep this area near Mangini Ranch Elementary on their radar and monitor traffic flow and collisions. No motion was made. A draft final twenty twenty four local road safety plan the committee suggested the following edits to the draft two zero two four L O C A L road safety plan, L R S P O regarding how often the L R S P is done, edit pages fifty seven and fifty eight, so the time period is expressed the same way on both pages R page forty two, at bottom there is a misspelling. There should only be one T on Riley Street. O page twenty two. Consider changing to make it clear that Folsom does not have an office of traffic safety. Explain the one hundred and five number on the chart. Consider adding a link or addendum showing. The other cities that the one hundred and five number references. Edit section four point four and table nine to match each other by including the number or percentage, or O number and percentage on each. The committee recommends number and percentage. Page forty eight, provide some kind of explanation as to why it says not available and an explanation as to why not. R table six on page fifty four, explain what B slash C means. Create an easy to find answer asterisco figure twenty one, page thirty four, it should say two thousand and fifteen not twenty twenty five in the title. Approval of the two zero two four D R A F T local road safety plan. The committee proposed the above edits to the draft document. Brous motioned to accept the draft local road safety plan with the proposed edits. Washburn seconded the motion. Motion carried with the following vote, two page one hundred and fifty five February eleventh, twenty twenty five item number five. Eyes, abstain, absent, Bailey, Bosch, Brous, Galovich, Goddard, McGee, Washburn none none six. Informational items A Traffic Safety Committee action item updates Bosch provided a progress report on the projects identified on the chart provided in the staff report. Chair Bailey asked that the Folsom Lake Crossing Phase Two Barrier Project be added to the action item updates chart. B upcoming traffic safety committee items O request for a stop sign at Dehone Circle and Pleasant Ravine Drive O speed studies on Mangini Parkway, Grand Prairie Road, Alder Creek Parkway, and East Bidwell Street O allway stop sign request at Stewart Street and Grover Road O crosswalk request at Black Tail Way slash Quail Meadow Way and Alder Creek Parkway O request for evaluation of line of sight at Willow Bridge Drive and Iron Point Road Bosch confirmed that the above items are possible future. Agenda items. Seven adjournment meeting adjourned at six colon twelve P M J page one hundred and fifty six.